I move that we call the meeting of the regular Dearborn Heights City Council today at 6:19 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please take your call?
Yes, Hassan Ahmad.
President.
Mo Beedun.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
Present.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next up, I'm going to have Mr. Farhat lead us on the pledge of allegiance for us today.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next up here, we have... Agenda approval.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the regular meeting of January 28, 2025, as submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I'd like to add a motion on to uphold Resolution 24-232 of Councilman Saab and ensure compliance with fiscal oversight.
All right, well, hang on. Madam Clerk, do you have that resolution?
I don't have it.
He wants to walk on a resolution, he's asking.
Walk on one.
What line item would that be?
I can email it to you. It's in our email backup, I mean, a few days ago.
11E.
11E. 11... what is it?
E. 11E.
Thank you. And if you can speak with Angela in the back, letting her know, make sure that our mics are up. Let's see, you can just tweak them up a little bit. Any other discussion?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman.
I'd like to reinstate a resolution I presented a couple of weeks ago about City Council Motion 24-330.
Okay.
I want to reintroduce it. There was some language that we changed on it, and it was suggested that we wait a couple of weeks on this, and I have the new resolution.
So we'll move that to 11F?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any opposed? Seeing none, all in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the regular meeting of January 14, 2025, as outlined in 4A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Before we begin our public... before we begin, um, before we begin our meeting, I see we have a lot of people in here. I know a lot of people want to voice their concerns. I'm sure a lot of us in this room know what's going on, and, you know, addressing the elephant in the room is a great thing. But what I'd like to keep in mind is that we have to be able to keep the order of business today. We cannot sit here until 2:00 in the morning of listening to an amazing... and I want to listen to everybody's, you know, concerns, but if it is a repetitive thing, and if somebody's already said it seven, eight, nine, 10 times, we don't need to hear it 40 more times. I think the mass that's in here today, that's on Zoom, I mean, we're flooding to the hallways, and we appreciate all your civil duties that are being done tonight. Councilman Ahmad has something written that he just wants to read about just policy and procedure, and then Councilman Ahmad wants to open up the public comments if that's okay.
Thank you, Councilor Chair.
No, Ahmad.
Okay, I'm sorry. I love you both. Either way, doesn't matter.
Councilor Chair.
Yep, Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. Before we begin the public comment section of this meeting, I would like to remind everyone of the guidelines we follow to ensure that all voices are heard respectively and efficiently, in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order. This meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council is held in public for the purpose of conducting city businesses, and is not a public community meeting. This meeting is intended for... is not intended for debate or argument. Please refrain from mentioning any specific individuals by name. Time limit: each speaker will have two minutes to address the council. Unless the council chair by noon grants additional time, please be mindful of the time to allow everyone an opportunity to speak. Address all questions to the council chair. If you have questions or requests, please direct them to the council chair by noon. That chair will acknowledge and address them as appropriate. Respectful dialogue: we ask that all comments be respectful and relevant to the agenda or city matters. Personal attacks or inappropriate language will not be tolerated. One speaker at a time. Please wait until you are recognized before speaking. We want to ensure that all voices are heard without interruption. Stay on topic. Please address issues that fall within the scope of the city council's responsibilities. If you... if your issue is unrelated to the agenda or city matters, you may be asked to take it up with the appropriate department or official after the meeting. No disruptions. Please avoid any disruption during comment... during public comment. If there is any disruption, the individual will be asked to leave to maintain the decorum of the meeting. We appreciate your cooperation and adhering to these guidelines to ensure a productive and respectful meeting for all involved. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman. All we're asking is that everybody be respectful. Ma'am, before you begin, Councilman Saab is going to read, and I said Councilman Saab to make sure that I didn't make the mistake, a quick email that the entire body of the city council had received, and he asked that if he could read it right at the beginning of public comments.
Good evening, everybody.
Speak into the mic.
This email is going publicly, and it's going to be entered officially to the record also. This email was received on 1/27/2025 at 8:18 AM. It was received from Deputy Chief Hussein Farhat. It states, "Dear HR Director Cameron Igley, I am writing this email to inform you that current interim Commissioner of Public Safety Paul D. Vanderplough, who I previously placed on administrative leave for his insubordination while I was Director of Support... while he was Director of Support Services on January 1, 2025, and who was promoted by Mayor Bill Bazey on 2023/2025. After I was demoted, his initial invest... he initiated an investigation against me approximately two days later with Mayor Bill Bazey. I viewed this investigation as a retaliation against me, and I am putting you and an entire city of the City of Dearborn Heights on official notice. He has previously made harassing statements and disrespected me via emails as a way to harass and intimidate me, which resulted in me issuing a leave of absence order. Mr. Vanderplough made threats against members of the Dearborn Heights Police Department to commit physical harm, as well as terminating Sergeant Mohammed Bazey's employment from the City of Dearborn Heights Police Department while in the presence of Mayor Bazey and myself on several occasions. Mr. Vanderplough briefly stated, 'All he needs is five minutes and to catch Sergeant Bazey outside of the Dearborn Heights Police Department to kick his [bleep]. Furthermore..."
On the phone, Councilor Chair.
Councilor Chair, I'm reading this for the record. "Mr. Vanderplough has aggressively harassed and disrespectfully yelled at Lieutenant Sean Paulus while in front of myself and other supervisors, union member of the Dearborn Heights Police Department. Vanderplough's disparaging remarks and conduct concerning duty constitute authority to the extent that his conduct has disrupted the efficiency of the Dearborn Heights Police Department and further subverted the good order, efficiency, and discipline of the Dearborn Heights Police Department as he attempted to discredit most of its members."
Point of order, Roger.
Point of order, Roger.
Just that, I'm just wanting to check for the record, any personnel issues.
Mr. Vanderplough has on numerous occasions violated Section 302.2.10 conduct where he has been discourteous, disrespectful, and displayed discriminatory treatment towards me and Sergeant Bazey while Mayor Bazey further threatened to terminate the employment of Officer Ali Hamud. Director Vanderplough has used obscene and profane language while on duty, further in violation of this policy while witnessed by me, Mayor Bazey, Janet Lucas, and as well as the entire Crestwood School Board members by referring to parents that they needed to belt on that. Mr. Vanderplough further violated Michigan law that dedicates law enforcement members should write citations during their shifts. Mr. Vanderplough further disrespected Sergeant Robert Carles and threatened to discipline him after observing Sergeant Carles' feet on the shift command desk while he has previously displayed the same actions in front of myself and Sergeant Christopher Shugs. Mr. Farina has referred to the Dearborn Heights Police Supervisors as a bunch of racist cops who need to be fired, specifically Sergeant Gondik, Sergeant Derwick, Lieutenant Sean Paulus, Lieutenant Patrick Thomas, Detective Sergeant Kevin Campbell, Detective Sergeant David Mahood, Sergeant Dewey Mitchell, and Captain Jake Hatton. Mr. Farina further refers, see the below email, to me as a white knight, as a way to harass and disrespect me. In reviewing the slang term of white knight, you notice that it will be defined as someone who excessively defends or comes to the rescue of another person, often with the intention of gaining favor, appreciation, or heroic, essentially someone who acts as a savior to gain positive attention, sometimes with urinal motives. Other members of the Dearborn Heights Police Department were signaled out as whiners, as Sergeant Hisham Zren, who is an Arab-American police sergeant. I am asking you to conduct a workplace harassment and hostile work environment investigation, which is required to be investigated, consistent with Michigan law. I interim... I view interim Director of Public Safety's participation in all... in the alleged investigation be retrograded by Mayor Bazey and Vanderplough as a further escalation step in their intimidation and harassment towards me. Vanderplough should not be involved in any investigation that would involve my son since he is retaliating against me for actions that I took against him for being insubordinate. I have attached emails that show insubordination that led to me being punished and demoted instead of then Director Vanderplough being held accountable for his behavior. Signed, Hussein Am Farhat. And attached this email, or as a chain of emails that he included in a PDF file that I would... anybody is welcome to fill you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have public comments and hearings and agenda items only. Ma'am, you asked for an additional minute.
Thank you, sir.
You will be granted your three minutes. As soon as you state your name for the record, we will begin your time.
Sue Kaminsky, Ambrose Street, Dearborn Heights. February will be four years that I've been coming to this podium about Act 78 and the police. I've been coming to the podium on and off since 1977. First and off, has a new deputy chief of patrol been properly vetted for his MCOS? Next, I'd like to read something so I could stay on track. A dying city. First, I stand with and for our police. I stand with Act 78, and I stand with Chief Farhat. Bill Bazey was elected mayor 2021 after being acting mayor subsequent to Mayor Plutko's death. Chief Mark Myers was relieved of duty February 2022. Chief Myers won his Act 78 hearing and was ordered to be reinstated. Bill Bazey ignored the commission. Police began fleeing after Chief Myers was not reinstated. We lost over 35 qualified, good officers. They left because Act 78 was not followed. Promotions were not done in accordance with Act 78. Bill Bazey had a police commissioner, Thomas, who unfortunately passed away. Jared Hart was hired as chief, then he quit. Kevin Swope was hired as chief, then he quit. Hussein Farhat was put in as deputy chief under Kevin Swope. Chief Farhat was promoted to interim chief on January 6. He worked with the command officers. He was liked. He was respected. He was demoted on January 23 to deputy chief of support services. Bill Bazey put out something saying that there was no demotions. Well, when you go from chief, interim chief, to a deputy chief of support services, that's a demotion. Bazey hired Amit Hader, a retired sergeant, as deputy chief of patrol to serve in tandem with now deputy chief Farhat. One of those directors was Kevin Swope, who has left the city. The others, Paul Vanderplough, who has been moved to many made-up, non-approved positions by Bazey. Paul Vanderplough is now overseeing the police department. Paul Vanderplough has been witnessed on multiple occasions to be a bully. Vanderplough has never been a police officer. He does not have MCOS. He has not completed the academy. I have an extra minute.
This is an extra.
He has been on police scenes prior to his new position, controlling the scene, impersonating a police officer while wearing a gun. I witnessed this at Target and recorded it. The police, God bless them, work under a hostile work environment. I'm not going to repeat all the directors that have left. Back to the GPW, they need oversight. We had someone injured January 18. They were not wearing hard hats. Another lawsuit waiting to happen. Everything I have said is fact. It is not conjecture. This is about the health and welfare of our city and the safety of our citizens. Our police remain understaffed on patrol. We have no narcotics unit. We have no undercover unit. We have no traffic bureau. We have no police chief. We have no leadership. We, the citizens, are underserved, not adequately protected. We're paying taxes, and we are not represented. Maybe we need to unite and sue the city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. You asked for an additional minute.
Thank you, Councilor Chair.
You're going to have three minutes to speak.
Tom Wenzel, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Thank you.
First, before my time starts, I'd like to make a statement. Recently, two of our outstanding men associated with the city of Dearborn Heights suffered the loss of their mothers. These wonderful women are Hanina Bazey, mother of Hassan Bazey from the CDG Department, and Doris Rutheford, mother of Paul Rutheford from Priority Waste. Councilor Chair, I'd like to take a moment of silence, please. Thank you so much. Councilor Chair, nearly four years ago, Bill Bazey was a candidate for the mayor of the City of Dearborn Heights. I worked very hard on his campaign on the South End, and was, I think, was the main reason he got elected from the South End. He won the race, and if you voted for him or not, we all wished and hoped that this administration would be very successful. One of the things he ran on was the fact that he was a United States Marine veteran. My brother was a combat Marine veteran in Vietnam. He recently passed away from exposure to Agent Orange and had battled this disease for a while with struggles through the VA. My father was a combat veteran, Marine veteran, a tank driver. His tank was bombed, and he suffered severe injuries, losing one complete lung and part of another lung. He suffered this for his entire life and caused him an early death. My father received many awards, and recently, I was looking at one of the awards, and on the award, it stated, "The Code of Honor for the Marines," and it read, "Honor guides the Marines. They exemplify the ultimate in ethical and moral behaviors. Never lie, never cheat or steal, abide by this uncompromising code of integrity, respect of human dignity, and respect for others." Councilor Chair, because of these violations of this code and the many violations of the city charter, I am asking our fellow residents and the fellow council members to ask Bill Bazey to immediately resign his position of mayor of the City of Dearborn Heights. This will start the healing process and move our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Is he there? No, before the next speaker gets up and speaks, I just want to say for the record, the mayor is an elected official. Whatever you want to say about the mayor, please do that. Anything that you're going to say that is not an elected official, I'm going to have to point of order you and tell you to refrain from doing that because they are still protected under the law, and I'm going to tell you in these chambers, we are not going to allow anybody named to be run through the mud. The mayor, on the other hand... excuse me, please, nothing from the audience. You'll have your three minutes. The mayor, on the other hand, is an elected official. He's not been to any of the city council meetings. He actually hasn't been to a council meeting in about five months. He is also a guest in these meetings, so if he chooses to attend, he's more than welcome. And if he doesn't choose to attend, you know, the residents are seeing it for themselves. So please, sir, I know I... so this is our union police commander, Sergeant Zapko. I'm going to give him a round of applause. Instead of having, you know, the amazing officers that are here, having them all speak for the next 45 to 50 minutes, Mr. Zapko, I told him he has close to about six, seven minutes to be able to speak and read what he has to read. I would love to hear from all the officers, but Zapko said he's going to go ahead and speak on behalf of the command officers at least.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Nick Zapko. I'm the president of the Police Supervisors Union, along with the president...
Just raise your voice a little bit when you're speaking.
Along with the Patrol Union President Brian Snear, next to me, and we also dispatch President Gina Bremen. I want to let the honorable council body, as well as the entire community, know of the continued violations of our contract in Act 78, as well as violations of your council motions that Mayor Bazey is perpetrating. The mayor has caused and continues to cause irreparable harm to the city and the police department. As you know, we filed a grievance and unlawful labor practice claim against Mayor Bazey when he illegally brought in an outside deputy chief late last year. This was not an attack against the individual, but a response to the violation of contract that Mayor Bazey himself signed. When Mr. Farhat was then appointed interim chief of police on January 6, a position that was both legal and within our contract, our union attempted to work with him, but he was told by Corporation Council Farina that he did not have the authority to make decisions. In fact, Mr. Farhat was an extremely positive influence in our department. He had an excellent progressive vision, and his strong community ties would have created a bond between the community and police department that has been lacking. On January 21, then interim chief Farhat placed Director Vanderplough on administrative leave for an internal issue. The following day, we were sent an email from Mayor Bazey stating that this was a miscommunication and that Mr. Vanderplough was on a special detail for the mayor's office. Following that, we were told that Mr. Vanderplough was now being placed in a newly made-up position of director slash interim police commissioner, and that Mr. Farhat was reassigned as deputy chief of patrol of support services. The mayor also pointed yet again another outside individual to the position of deputy chief of patrol operations. All three of these positions violate our contract in Act 78, and we, along with the Patrol Officers Union, immediately filed grievances against the mayor. For the first time in department history, we do not have a chief or acting chief. Removing Mr. Farhat from interim chief also goes against Mayor Bazey's press release from December 11 of last year, where he stated that he was delighted to appoint Mr. Farhat to interim chief of police effective January 6, with a formal swearing-in ceremony to follow later in the month. In addition, this council body passed a motion on May 28 of last year that was unanimously adopted, stating that any movement, reallocation, or distribution of funds for the police department had to be approved by city council. The mayor has disregarded this resolution and continues to frivolously spend taxpayer money by creating new unapproved positions from the outside when we have capable leaders within the police department. He is denying our employees equal employment opportunities for advancement within the department by doing this. Now we are being told by Mayor Bazey that Mayor Bazey is engaging with a national search firm to identify our new police chief. Major cities do nationwide searches, not 12 square mile cities such as ours, and this will cost even more money for the taxpayers. Also, if we are searching for a new police chief, why was Mr. Farhat not allowed to remain as interim chief in the meantime? For once in the past three years, we had a chief who was advocating for us instead of the poor and harmful decisions by the city administration, and he was promptly removed. He was never even given a chance that the others were. Our union is doing everything legally that we can do. We are actually following the rules. In the meantime, Mayor Bazey continues to make appointments and organizational changes, excuse me, with blatant disregard for our contract and the law. The morale of what is left of this department is at an all-time low. I hope that when the injunction against the city council is lifted, you have some power to right the egregious wrongs that the mayor committed. The amount of stress this administration continues to cause members of this department with the constant turnover in police administration and clearly targeted internal investigations in an already stressful career is ridiculous. When Bill Bazey became mayor, we had 80 sworn officers in the department. Under his leadership, 40 of those original 80 left the department through either resignations, termination, or retirement, with 21 of those officers quitting the department before retirement and going to other law enforcement agencies. Currently, we are 18 officers down from where we were in 2020. This is almost a quarter of the department. We no longer have a traffic bureau, directed patrol unit, SWAT team, motorcycle patrol, crime prevention officer, FBI task force officer, and we lost one of our two DEA task force officer spots. We are running a bare minimum, and for the sake of public safety, we cannot afford to lose more officers, let alone have another mass exodus. I also feel it's necessary to address Mayor Bazey's Facebook post from yesterday. Mayor Bazey stated that there have been no recent firings, demotions, or investigations of our PD leadership. This is false. Mr. Farhat was in effect demoted from his position of interim chief back to deputy chief, as I stated earlier, and he was notified Sunday by the mayor that he was being investigated by Mr. Vanderplough for allegations of instructing officers not to write tickets or document traffic stops. Mr. Farhat has never told any officer not to write tickets or document stops. Quite the opposite, in an email he sent on January 17 to police supervisors, he requested that we instruct our officers to conduct strict traffic enforcement and take aggressive actions against any reckless driving behavior. In regards to documenting traffic stops, the same email also instructed officers to log the driver vehicle information and reason for the stop on their daily activity logs. In addition to body worn camera and in-car video, whenever an officer runs a vehicle or person through the computer, the time and date are automatically logged. I assure everybody that traffic stops are thoroughly documented. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. We sincerely appreciate every council member for your dedication to public service and for advocating for us against the false narrative of the city administration that we are racist and corrupt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Farhat, or Mr. Zapko, is he still in here?
Sergeant Zapko, are you still here?
Sergeant Zapko. And Mr. Farhat, I have a question I want to put on the record. You said that you received an email saying that Mr. Farhat would be under investigation by Mr. Vanderplough?
No, I did not receive an email. No, I just...
Mr. Farhat, did you receive an email that you were going to be placed under investigation by the mayor or by Mr. Vanderplough?
I received an email that I was under investigation by the mayor.
For what?
He cited a bunch of things, and I don't know if I'm eligible to say. I do have legal counsel present, but some of the stuff is what the supervisors, sergeants said.
But you were informed that you are under investigation, correct?
Correct. And then I did receive a follow-up email from Mayor Bazey stating that it's going to a third-party investigation. No.
Okay. Mr. Farina, are you aware of any of this investigation?
Investigation? I'm not going to discuss it, please.
Point of order, nothing from the audience.
I know a request was sent out for investigation on this case. That's all we can say. I'm not going to discuss it.
So you're not...
Yeah, you can. I'm just going to say it how I think.
Guys, guys, nothing from the audience.
I'm not going to discuss it.
Roger, is your mic on?
It is.
I'm not discussing it.
Maybe, maybe it's the...
It's a yes or no question. I'm not discussing it.
There's no yes or no answer. I'm not discussing it.
Is there an investigation, or is there not?
You asked me an interesting question. I'm not going to answer.
He said he knew that there was an investigation, Councilman. Let that go.
I didn't say anything that had an effect. Saying yes or no, I'm not giving any effect. He has a lawyer here, so I would advise him not to talk.
I'm asking you as the mayor's attorney.
I'm not the mayor's attorney. I don't...
You are. You're not the Corporation Council either.
Our attorney is city attorney.
No.
Okay, I'm not your attorney.
Guys, okay, come on. We're not doing this back and forth thing today. Let's go.
Thank you. That's all I just want to...
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Sarge. Thank you, guys, for being here today. Ma'am?
Thank you.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. We also have an additional minute here.
Okay, my name is Renee from Annapolis Street, and I made this nice paper PowerPoint because I don't do PowerPoint, so Mr. Vanna White decided to hold that for me. So, just what I respectfully want to address, the city council, you know, you've been doing a really great job, and I hope that's not my phone. That's not mine. Okay, sure. Anyway, just, I wanted to be clear on what, on how the procedures work for this, so I got a feeling that isn't my phone. That's great. Just let it go. Anyway, it's called the City of Dearborn Heights Accountability Chart, and if you'll notice, he's hiding, right here at the top is Mr. Citizen, Mr. and Mrs. Citizen, and then there's the mayor, then there's the city council, and then all the other positions. So I was trying to make a flow chart to, because I'm a picture person, to figure out how things go. So when Mr. or Mrs. Citizen makes a comment or something that goes to the city council, and city council says, "Can you write this down?" And then we never hear where it goes or what's happened since then. And then I found that Ms. Denia will send it to Georgina, and then she'll image it in and then send it to the city council, and maybe other departments.
The administration.
The administration. The administration. Okay, missed that part, because that wasn't in the little flyer. So anyway, I've cut off these from you guys, the Dearborn Heights flyer. This is all your positions, the city positions. So let's say they made a complaint or something about the police department, the fire department or whatever, then you guys will eventually get it. And what happens is, what I'm finding is, that if it gets this far, then it just goes pew in the water, that's it, goes in the swamp, never to be surfaced again, goes in the swamp. But I'm here to tell you, it's a new day. Citizens are awake, people are awake, they're not tolerating what they tolerated before, they're not eyes closed anymore, they're not, oh, it's just me and my house, and as long as we're okay. They're looking out for each other. So what this is, is a dredger. So right now, the dredger is me, because I'm dredging up all this kind of stuff, and it's causing people to come out of the woodwork, but the bottom line is, it starts and ends with the citizen. The citizen has to hold the council responsible, the mayor responsible, the police chief responsible. Every one of these departments need to be held responsible by the citizens. And I'm hoping today to appeal to the citizens to complete the circle, because this doesn't go on anymore. You know, the fights between the mayor and the city council, between the police and the fire, they're trying to distract you from getting their work done. I say, whatever's been put before the council, follow the money. Where'd the money go for all these things that were passed last year but never came to fruition? Follow that money. It's going to lead you to the answer. And Mayor Bazey, I'm sorry that he never shows up for the meetings, I have never seen him in all the meetings that I've been here, but I will tell you, respect the position. If you don't respect the man, you need to respect the position. He is our mayor, and I will continue to pray for him, and whether God chooses to remove him or whatever he does, people better watch their Ps and Qs, make sure that we are all blameless before we come to the city council.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bazey.
I want all the residents here to know that Renee actually brought us all pizza today for the council meeting. She brought us pizza, she brought us Twizzlers, and she brought us M&M's and Pops, so thank you to Renee for that. We really appreciate it.
Grapes.
Why have another grape?
Really good grapes.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. She asked for an additional minute, I will honor that.
Angela Vinegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Sue Kaminsky, I agree with everything you said, so I don't want to repeat a lot of what you said, but over the past four years since Mayor Bazey's been mayor of Dearborn Heights, there's this dark cloud that's just been hanging over our city, and he's taking it down a very dark path. Crime is skyrocketing, we can't keep city comptrollers, department heads, city employees, police chiefs, and our police officers have just exited en masse. He's put our citizens at risk, our officers in danger, and under his watch, our police department has suffered tremendously by all of his poor decisions and his choices. He claims that he cares about our police officers, but his actions interpret something totally different. And Mr. Farhat, I don't know if you remember me?
He's right there.
Oh, here he is. You and I had a conversation this past summer at a summer event. You were a beautiful man to talk to, I have three sons in law enforcement. We had the most wonderful conversation, you were so respectful, down-to-earth, caring, and when I heard you were elected as police chief, I was very proud. I have my sonliest friends who work for the police department, and everybody loves and respects you. Know that if you gave your officers half of the respect and the dignity that you gave me when we talked for those thirty minutes this summer, you have made a police department and people much better just because they met you, and that is something that Mayor Bazey can never, ever take from you. Don't let him take that from you. That being said, I just want to thank all of our officers for their service, know that they're appreciated, and know that we stand with you, and we love you, and we respect you, and commend you for the job that you're doing, and I'm sorry that you guys had to suffer through what this administration has put you through. It's a damn shame, a damn shame. And on another note, let's go to our Airbnb. I think we need to. The short-term rental of eleven C. I think you guys either need to table this or take it to a study session. The resolution that I seen is way too vague, there's no clarification of who's going to do the enforcement, the cost of the fines, the date when it's going to be implemented, and how you're going to notify all the short-term rentals or Airbnb people.
So I give you a pause for time. I gave an opportunity to the administration before they come back and say, well, hey, you're not letting us do nothing, you're throwing everything, especially legal counsel. I actually emailed Roger three, four, or five times, I even emailed him saying, set fines and make sure that it's being enforced by our police department, not just our ordinance. You know, he did, he was very responsive, sending them back and forth to me, but I don't believe it was what we were looking for. Councilman Wanso has one that's also been kind of interpreted in tweets, so we can still have eleven C, and we can just swap out what Roger gave us and what Councilman Wanso has, so that's what my plan is when we get to eleven C.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I know that the mayor is an invited guest, but I don't know how that man lays his head on a pillow and goes to sleep at night knowing that he's ruined the city. That's all I got to say.
How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
San Bazey, Brownstown, Fredericks. Okay, I do a lot of real estate here, Dearborn, Dearborn Heights, local, I got my office over on Telegraph in Dearborn as well, and I'd like to also speak to the mayor, who's probably on Zoom in his boxers, but it is what it is. Mayor Bill Bazey has been a destructive force in our city, driving away former police officers due to his political corruption. He's targeted officers like Sergeant Mohammed Bazey for speaking the truth and initiated baseless investigations for personal gains. Under his leadership, the police department morale has hit an all-time low before Chief Farhat stepped in. Critical units like the Traffic Bureau and Narcotics Division have been dismantled, leaving the city vulnerable. Neighboring cities like LaVonia are seizing millions of dollars in narcotics from our streets because they have the resources that this city lacks. Meanwhile, police officers are overworked with only two patrol cars, two covering each end of the city, two. Mayor Bill Bazey has been accused of political corruption and targeting police officers for speaking out, launching baseless investigations for personal gain, and we've seen this over and over again. His actions have raised serious concerns about his leadership and integrity, causing many former supporters to distance themselves from him, and obviously, he's distancing themselves from us. It's time for accountability and change, and for the mayor to supposedly say he's doing a nationwide search. Think about that. Nationwide search for a new chief of police, for a new chief of police. What's wrong with a citywide search? We have the talent within the city with people who are qualified, like Chief Hussein Farhat, and I'd like to end by saying Bazey sells. Thank you.
How you doing, sir? You asked for an additional minute?
Thank you.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Good evening, Councilman, resident of Dearborn Heights, Ali Faiz, Rosemary Street.
Thank you.
So back in August twenty-sixth, there was a proposal, or a notification put out that the City of Dearborn Heights was looking for a proposal for city-owned property. The initial due date was September twelfth, there were strict guidelines and requirements they were looking for. On the eleventh, the date was extended to the end of September. We had submitted our firm, Real Estate One, Dearborn Heights, we've been in the city since two thousand and six. We had submitted a proposal within the deadline, adhering to all the instructions. In December, there was a study session held December fourth that was in regards to the city-owned property. At this meeting, the four firms selected were to present their proposals in front of the council. It came up that fifty percent of the selected firms were reportedly not present at this meeting, yet this did not seem to be an issue. An email was sent to city council by myself on December fifth questioning why the firm was excluded, what are the current steps within the proposal, and what would they would do in the future to ensure better communication. Councilman Baydoun immediately responded, asking the individual responsible for the bids, engineer Ali Deeb, if I was left out of the process. I followed up on December sixth with no response. Again, on December tenth, a city council meeting took place to discuss the bids and proposals and award the bid. Despite multiple follow-ups, no response was received prior to the meeting. No decision was made during the meeting, however, a recommended brokerage was identified. On December tenth, after repeated emails and phone calls to Mr. Deeb and his associates, a response was finally received. In his response, he had stated that on November twenty-seventh, an email had went out to the four firms selected, ours was one of them, to present on December fourth. The email was never received. He then claimed, "The email was misspelled with the letter Z or an S instead of Z within my email." Mr. Deeb assured me that the city council did not award the contract, and instead referred the matter to a committee for further handling. He claimed the committee would reach out to all the firms involved, and why wait till this meeting? I don't know. He very well could have reached out to me and responded prior to the December tenth meeting. On December seventeenth, December seventeenth, my apologies, another study session took place. It was at this study session I was due to propose our proposal. It was Mr. Deeb's responsibility to reach out to me, and at this study session, you can be see, he can be heard at one hour and fifty-four minutes within the meeting, stating, "Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't reach out to him." That was his sole responsibility. Despite Mr. Deeb's assurances, there was never any further communication from him or the committee. Today is of January twenty-eighth, it's on the agenda to vote and award the bid for the city-owned property. What I ask from the city council, who are the sole persons who can agree to the sale or go ahead and vote and ensure a fair, transparent process moving forward, to avoid voting on this matter today, and I think if the individual who claims that there's four qualified individuals or four qualified parties, they should be a blind selection process, not limited to one party. If there's four parties, split it up equally if they're all qualified based on this individual's findings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience? Go ahead.
Adam Wilberski, resident of Northville, Michigan, and since there's so many members of law enforcement in the room, I would love to say, take the opportunity to say thank you, guys, for what you do, and I know I probably speak for everybody in the room when I say-- I will, I'll be very brief. I had a similar experience, I'll spare the details to what Mr. Faiz just shared, and I would echo both of his recommendations and save my presentation I put together for this evening, that I would support postponing the vote until all four parties have the opportunity to speak, I think that would be great. But I'll also say this, I've been friendly competitors with these great brokerages in this marketplace for my entire career, and for our, we've been in the market for seventy-seven years. I would also support the recommendation of, you have four great companies that you guys have shortlisted, I would be in full support of spreading the opportunities amongst all of them as well, so.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you have two minutes.
Rachel Appoint, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. So kind of changing up what I was planning. With the asset management plan, I'm going to ask this one, you guys send this to the study session, I had so many questions, and there's so many contradictions within it, it's a mess. The mayor and his well-behaved directors have been causing problems since 2022. I supported him in 2021. I thought he did a great job with the flooding, I thought we were looking forward to something new. I just received yesterday a FOIA that shows that in April of 2022, Mayor Bazey directed an employee to find out if I had borrowed money from the city, if I had ever gotten assistance for like rent or water bill or anything, I guess he wanted to see if I was poor or not. He used federal funds for that. In July of 2022, the pride garden was vandalized outside City Hall. This was extremely upsetting to me as a member of that community, and as somebody who would help plant that garden and even helped maintain that garden. I was the sole suspect in that case. I received the police report yesterday. Mayor Bazey wanted me to be charged with destroying the pride garden.
Did you build it?
Yeah, I built it. I helped build it. He wanted me charged, he knew I wasn't the person that needed to be investigated, but he devoted police resources for over a month to investigate me as the sole suspect in that crime. And you know why he did that? Because he perceived me as some sort of political enemy, probably because at that time, I don't know, what were we talking about, the golf course? I don't even remember now. Right? He needs to resign tomorrow.
Or tonight. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you asked for an additional minute.
I did ask you for one extra minute.
One minute? Yeah.
Thank you. Zoe Ha, Rosemary. A couple items I want to talk about. First, there is an item here, nine G, it says Police Chief Farhat. I really want you to be the chief, because you are the best one in the last twenty-five years who can handle that position. And I am very proud that you're going--
Please speak to the mic.
Speak to the mic. I'm saying, for the last twenty-five years, I have been attending this city council, and I have been following our police department and what was going on in the police department. And I've seen several chiefs of police and how they handle things and what they've done, whether it was legal or illegal, it's not the matter. Right now, we have a decent person who's capable, who's resident of the city, and he should be reinstated immediately as a chief of the police, because from what I see, the union doesn't have a problem with that, and they are willing to take that. The second thing, I would politely ask Mr. Vanderplow to resign and leave our city, because really, if I am not liked in the city and nobody wants me there, it's better for everybody if I just take shortcut and leave. So please, politely, this resident asking you to leave. If you don't want to leave, it's up to you. But I'm going to make a promise to the resident, that Mayor Bazey, the same way our group and the people who worked their hearts for him to be mayor, and to be appointed, and he knows how he got appointed. I promise the resident, he will not be your mayor next time. The second thing I want to talk about, the grant H eight H. This grant, three million and some dollars, three million six hundred twenty-six thousand dollars came from FEMA. And the name on it is Mr. Hassan Jamal, and the signature on the back, if you approve it tonight, Hassan Jamal, Hassan Jamal is no longer with the city, how he's going to sign something, you're going to approve tonight. My suggestion to you, as city council, is to table this and have this administration follow the right rules and go back to FEMA and have Mrs. Lael Saad, who I don't know who she is, but definitely, she's a nice lady, from everything I hear about her, that she should be named on this properly, so we don't have any legal problems. So I hope that you table this tonight, you do not approve it, because it's illegal, because the person who's supposed to sign the acceptance of this is no longer with the city, even he was doing a great job for the city, and he was the only one--
Thank you.
--who brought money for the Southside.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you got two minutes.
And acting as the treasurer.
If you're acting, should you act as a treasurer?
Yes, Lisa Ex Clayton, I live on Gully, I'm the city treasurer. First of all, thank you, Sue Kaminsky, for your detailed fact-based timeline, that was very good, I appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Farhat, for all of your work and to all of our police officers. I want to address current claims, item twenty-two through twenty-five, which is Plant Moran, and I've sent you all a letter about this. That issue that was shared and the reason it was removed in the first place last meeting has not been resolved, has not been addressed. You were sent an email by someone, because I told not to name people, right? You said that? But that email that was sent to you all saying it was resolved, it has not been, that has not been discussed with me. I reached out to Plant Moran, and again, I gave you what I'm looking for. It needs to be, what's directly built at the treasurer's office needs to be separated out. out. I do want you to pay that invoice, but I want it done correctly. I want it listed correctly on the invoice. So that's the first thing. The second thing I have for you, very important, is I sent you an email about this as well, just for the residents to know, there is a shortfall for your cash flow for next month and actually by the end of this month. Okay? I gave you all the data. I actually did a six-month cash flow forecast that you all have copies of. When you look at it, right now, we have 2 million in the general fund bank account. You've got a million coming out tomorrow for payroll, puts you down to 1 million. We've got a 600, what is it, 646, 650,000 dollar Blue Cross Blue Shield payment is due by the end of this week. That knocks you down a little bit more, right? To about a half a million. And we have over 1.2 million in checks written for this month alone, for the month of January. And so that, you can just basically do the math there. And it just is not working for us folks. And I just, my question is, what are we prepared to do about that? Because I am flagging it for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am, treasurer. You did a great job. Anyone else from the audience? All right. Yep, ma'am. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You got two minutes.
Danielle Elzayat, Evangeline Street.
Trustee of the Crestwood School Board.
Correct. So I come to you today just to make you aware, some of the council members came to our Crestwood School Board study session yesterday. I just wanted to reiterate that we a while ago made a decision that the tower, the cell tower, would no longer reside on school property. So we actually told AT&amp;T that we were not going to renew their lease. We let city administration know that about a year and a half ago, and back in July, they came to us and asked for an extension because AT&amp;T was not going to be able to move their equipment off of that cell tower. So we granted the extension. The extension was supposed to be good until January 31st of 2025. We have since heard again from AT&amp;T asking for another extension, saying that they can't take their stuff off of the tower in time and that public safety would face delayed responses and that consumers would face delayed cell service because of this issue. So I just want to make it clear, this is not a decision that the Crestwood School Board made lightly. It's not a decision that was made quickly. We gave ample time for the equipment to be removed. I found out yesterday that our city council had no idea what was going on until yesterday. I don't even know if the fire department knows. I know that the police department knows, but I don't know if the fire department knows. To my knowledge, they don't. So I just wanted to kind of come here today in good faith and say, I don't know what plan there is, but as a resident also, as far as public safety, which I'm hearing some issues, and consumers for AT&amp;T, I'd hate for anybody to get delayed service because this wasn't taken care of, but as of January 31st, their equipment will not be on the tower anymore. So just wanted to let you guys know that.
Quickly, thank you. Hang on one second, one second. Councilman Sobstady has a question.
So I know yesterday we attended the meeting.
Ma'am.
So yesterday we did a couple, we attended the meetings. So the administration actually was supposed to be at this meeting yesterday. Nobody showed up. Instead, they sent a sales representative from AT&amp;T.
Correct.
That really, she had no technical background. My thing is, is that we didn't know about this until yesterday, but I don't get why the mayor's office or the police department, I mean, they're not cell tower experts, to delay the process or try to renegotiate with AT&amp;T if it's on school property.
That's correct. And just so you know, T-Mobile and Verizon were notified at the same time, and their equipment has been off the tower. You know, and they're, I believe now, the only fix for this is that the equipment is going to come down. AT&amp;T, to my knowledge, said that they would bring in what's called a COW. It's a cell on wheels. So it's like a cell, cell tower on wheels. But they haven't said definitively or not, but they said that that coverage is not the best coverage itself. So they will, they said that they will give public safety a priority, which makes me feel good. I just don't know what that service looks like.
My second question to you, ma'am, was when was the city made aware of this?
City was made aware of this January of 2024, I believe.
22.
22. No, 23. I think it was 23. I know it's been like a year and a half to two years.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Do you know the date?
So it's not about the date. So we, our Nejah Janoon, Wakefield Street. So we canceled, our contract with Crown was, we decided.
Talk into the mic.
Crown Castle. We had a contract with Crown Castle that we decided not to renew. We had residents coming in since 2018 and even maybe before that. They wanted the tower taken down. It was in their backyard, pretty much. So we decided not to renew Crown Castle's contract. We don't have a contract with AT&amp;T. The city has a contract with AT&amp;T for services. The district, separate from that, may have a contract, but the other two companies that used that tower had two years, and within months, they found other, another location for their towers. For whatever reason, AT&amp;T did not remove or find another location for their tower. Basically, this is not the district's problem in the sense that we did our due diligence to make sure that we gave them ample notice. We, you know, they didn't maybe, we don't know when they notified the city, notified the city, but at the end of the day, like Ms. Elzayat said, maybe the city needs to look into that because we as a citizen, as residents, need to be protected and, but, yeah.
Council chair, I have one more question. Is Mr. Deeb online by any chance?
So Verizon and T-Mobile immediately took action and found another location for their tower.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Deeb?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I know you've come here to talk to us about the cell towers in the city. Were you made aware of this?
Yes, so I received a request from a company representing AT&amp;T to look at a COW, a cell on wheel site location, and we escorted them, I'm going to say June or July, to the site behind the fire station, selected the site, and they worked on placing the equipment, which I believe they already placed.
But just so you know, the only reason you needed that COW is because it was never done on time.
Right. Just one second.
Okay, so that's, that's all I know about the issue. So a representative from the AT&amp;T company requested a cell tower, a temporary COW location, and we cleared that, myself and Rick Wapland and the fire chief. We offered the location and they actually placed the equipment. Now, if the equipment is not in service, I wouldn't know that, but the equipment is on site.
How is that possible when they asked us for a meeting?
One second, please. Mr. Deeb, was, was the city negotiating another location for this tower?
Not to my knowledge. I'm not sure. No.
Thank you.
The only request I received was clear the site for a temporary COW, cell on wheel, and that's what we did.
And when was this?
July, I'm going to say June or July of this past year.
Thank. Council chair. Thank you. In response, we started January 1st of 2024, negotiating with the COW. We did sign the contract you approved in June of 2024. The COW was moved behind a fire station and now in the process of setting up a permanent tower. But we had no other negotiations with Crestwood at that time or any contact about that. But we did negotiate with the COW, got it set up. It's, they pay monthly to us, put a contract that you approved.
So you're putting money over resident's safety?
No, we moved the COW. Moved that, that's all we had.
That information that was shared with us, I'm sorry, I'm going to leave after this, I promise. That's not information that was shared with us, number one. Number two, then I don't understand what the, what the request even was then for the study session that we dedicated yesterday to this. And I encourage everybody to tune in and go watch the study session from yesterday, which is complete opposite story of what I just heard. So thank you. Good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb.
Yes, sir.
Sam Farhat is the best police chief to ever, ever, ever hit you.
All right. Good. From the audience. Go ahead, sir. You have two minutes. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
David Williamson, Gully Road in Dearborn Heights. I just want to reassure everybody that AT&amp;T told us that the city will not be built for the cows. So there will be no extra fees for it, that they're covering all that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Also trustee of the Crestwood School Board. Round of applause to him. Thank you for being here with us.
Council chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Was it approved by the city? Who proved this COW in the movement?
This was in 2018.
And was it approved by planning commissions?
Well, no, they just said it's not building, it's not billing the city.
I mean, they placed the COW on some city property.
It's a temporary move. It's called, obviously, a cell on wheels.
Cell on wheels, yeah.
So it's nothing to the city. They're obviously moving it around so they make sure that you can have satellite and you can have, you can still have your first responder satellite connection.
Mr. Wendell, it's just part of the services that AT&amp;T provides. They won't have, so it's not, there's nothing to, really, they're just trying to make sure that the city and the residents have coverage. You're, the city's not paying anything to have the COW placed, and there's nothing really to approve in the sense that they're just trying to make sure that there's services.
So they could put it anywhere they want?
It's an AT&amp;T line, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's temporary.
I mean, you put it on city property, I know, but I mean, what if I want to build, I want my motor home on, behind the fire station.
It's strictly for.
Emergency services.
I know.
Guys, guys, let's, let's, point of order, guys. Let's continue on this. Thank you so much. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Anything else in the audience on, on public comments? Okay? Anyone on Zoom?
I'm sorry. One last point. They did say it's to be 18 months before a new, a new place could be found.
They needed 18 months. I think you guys denied that yesterday.
No, but I mean, it's going to take them 18 months to find another place.
Yeah.
Not that we, the other thing, I just, no, it'll be 18 months that these cows will be around.
Anyone else in the audience?
Council chair.
Yes.
Before we move on, I have a statement regarding the police issue, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, council chair. As a resident, I stand today in support of our dedicated police officers who risk their safety every day to serve and protect our community. These men and women are essential to maintaining the safety and well-being of Dearborn Heights, and they deserve the respect and fair treatment that their hard work warrants. I'm deeply concerned that the administration has not upheld the terms of the police union contract, a contract that was negotiated and executed in good faith. The police union, as well as the officer they represent, entered into this agreement with the expectation that it would be honored. It is not only a matter of fairness, but of legal and ethical responsibility for the administration to abide by the terms of this contract. As a member of the city council, I urge the city administration to immediately take steps to comply with the contract they executed. Our officers should not have to fight for what was rightfully agreed upon, and the trust between the administration and our office, and our police force must be restored. I call on the mayor to fulfill the obligations of the contract and to demonstrate the same level of commitment to our police officers that they demonstrate to our city every day. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else on Zoom?
I don't have any.
You want to?
Oh, I do have one.
We'd have to suspend the rules.
I have one on Zoom.
You have one on Zoom?
Yes.
Who is chief? Please, I'm sorry.
That's what the name is.
Can you, please, I mean, identify he or she of whomever you are.
Who is chief?
Vince, Vince, you saw my gun.
Oh, no.
Vince did ask for an extra minute, so you have three minutes. State your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Keith Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Okay.
Council, council, how many times is the mayor violated and not gone before you for salaries, positions, or any type of situation like that? How many times?
Lot, lot of times, Vince. Too many.
Okay. Mr. Miyake, or Mackey, in what power does the council have to remove the mayor?
Hang on one second, please.
Please address the council chair.
Please go to the council chair, pause this time.
Mr. Bedouin.
Yes.
What authority, what authority does the council have to remove the mayor?
Why don't you ask all your questions, I'll write them down, and I'll see if we can answer you.
Okay. What authority do you have to remove the mayor? And when was the last time the mayor had a physical and psychiatric evaluation? To, like all of the.
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order, guys, please.
All employees are required at some point to have a psychiatric evaluation that work at the police department, correct?
The mayor, the mayor does not work in the police department.
The mayor runs this city. He still has to have a sound mind and body.
It's under investigation.
Point of order, council chair.
Sorry, I'm sorry, man. It was a, it was a, it was a, it was a free one. I'm sorry. I should, I gotta do better. Forgive me. I'm sorry.
I'm done.
All right, thanks, Vince. Hold on, hold those, I'll ask, well, let me ask Roger, Roger, is there a way of removing the mayor? Can you answer that?
Not the way that you're talking about. You tried, I think, was Zohair Hap that tried to do a recompetition?
They said city council. No, no, he said city council, not Zohair. Zohair's the resident.
On what basis?
I'm just asking, is there anything?
I don't think you have one, but you, I didn't finish, but in terms of your, what's it, 25th Amendment, are you trying to say that, that he's mentally, and you have evidence of that?
Who's me?
Because I, I think, I'm trying, I answer you.
We're not health experts.
I think the, the setup with Vince and the mental arguments is coming forward as the, as the precedent of 25th Amendment has it. But what you're trying to do is attack the mayor.
Who is?
And I get it, I get it, that, that, you know, he's a public official, and you interrupt me, I didn't interrupt you. But if you set up to have Mr. Miyake talk about it, okay, he could try, but you lost in a circuit court, you lost administratively, trying to recall, okay? If you have a basis, because I heard everything today, and of course, we're not going to negotiate contracts, but you remember, Mr. Bay, Mayor Baydoun and myself were the only one.
Mayor, sorry, Mayor Bazey.
You, you, what I was trying to say is you, Mr. Baydoun, was not present when Farhat was sworn in. I was. I helped organize getting him here, and so did the mayor, the only two that stood against people who were opposing his appointment. None of you were there, no disrespect, when he was sworn in.
Thank you, guys.
So I just want you to know, in fact, our clerk wasn't there, our judges here in this court weren't there. So I, I think that how there's another side to the story that you.
I agree. Thank you so much, Roger. Thank you. I will just want to just respond to Mr. Farina. No, I did not attend Mr. Farhat swearing in. I actually called Mr. Farhat and let him know why I wasn't going to attend because at the end of the day, the deputy chief position is an illegal position under Act 78, and the mayor doesn't have the authority to go ahead and promote, regardless of how much I love and respect Mr. Farhat. The position was illegal, and I called Mr. Farhat and told him, "I am sorry, I cannot engage in any of this illegal stuff. I'm representative of the Dearborn Heights City Council. I don't agree with your new position. I, I supported you as the emergency manager. I will support you as a police chief. I can't support you as a deputy chief." And so that's why I didn't attend Chief Farhat's swearing-in ceremony. But I can tell you right now, I'm at the forefront, my feet are close to the ground But I can tell you right now, I'm at the forefront, my feet are close to the ground and to the fire, and saying that I'm going to stand up for Mr. Farhat, where you said it to me last council meeting, hey, the only reason why Mr. Farhat sent us C is because I fought for him. The reality is you didn't fight hard enough, so we're going to continue the fight for Mr. Farhat. Point of order, Roger.
You would have seen the legalization with the conflict bargaining agreement that allowed him to be the deputy chief.
Point of order, Roger.
And not be on that.
Point of order, Roger. Thank you. We talked about this earlier. Mr. Miyaki, there's three questions by Vince Topkowski, or whom he likes to be identified as, who is the chief today?
As I understood, if I may.
Yeah.
One, the council itself does not have the authority to end up removing the mayor per the city charter. Uh, two, the two avenues that could end up being used would either be, one, a recall, and, um, we can get into questions with regard to that, but we don't need to. And two, the governor has the authority to also potentially remove municipal officials. If you recall, uh, the whole Kwame Kilpatrick, uh, issue when Governor Granholm was in office. So those are the two ways in which, uh, he can end up being removed if, if that's what was sought. And of course, I would think that the, uh, city council's input, if it chose to end up, uh, requesting such a thing from the governor would probably be a very important factor. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? Who's the chief? Vince, you've already spoken. I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask the clerk to put your hand down. All right. Seeing none, moving on to next. Next up is six, fund transfer. Did you want to?
Councilor Chair? Yes, I'd like, uh, Councilor Chair, I'm sorry, Councilman Ahmad. I'd like to, uh, add a walk-on emotion if we could suspend the rules.
Okay. Madam Clerk, Councilman Saab would like to suspend the rules during, uh, public comments, and, yeah. Okay. And I made a motion to, can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
Councilor Chair, put a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion made to suspend rules by Councilman Saab.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Now that our rules are suspended, Councilman Saab, what would you like to do?
I'd like to approve special legal counsel for, uh, Deputy Chief Hussein Farhat.
Special legal counsel for Deputy Chief Farhat to be added under 11G?
G, I believe, yes.
Can I hear from our special legal counsel on, on what grounds, if this is doable or possible, Mr. Miyaki?
If this pertains to his official duties, just like when we had it with respect to the city clerk, the city treasurer, um, and it's also been done in the past. If it has to do with the, the performance of the, uh, official duties, uh, of, um, I don't know what to call you, I'm sorry.
Intron chief.
Chief, okay. Uh, Chief Farhat. And, um, however, the scope, particularly given some of the information that was presented, would suggest that, uh, he believes that he may have some legal claims against the city. Uh, those types of services would not be able to be included within the scope, uh, and no city money could end up being used for that purpose. So it'd have to be a limited scope for a special legal counsel to assist him in the investigation, um, as well as to make sure that it would be understood that any sort of payment has to end up being approved by the city council.
Correct.
All right? Um, so yes, it can end up being done. If it pertains to his official duties, including this, um, uh, investigation, uh, then, uh, that would be permissible.
Thank you.
Council Chair, if I may.
Council Chair, if I may.
Hang on one second. Point of order. Can you explain, Mr. Farhat, if you feel the need, if you needing special legal counsel, and if so, why?
Yes, sir. As I stated in my letter, I feel this is a retaliation for me doing my job and, uh, doing what's right. I wore the badge for 30 years, and I, I took an honor to uphold the badge and do what's right. And that means with no political influence whatsoever. So when I, as a detective, I made sure that defendants, if they were found at any point not innocent, that they were found innocent. I did not go for the guilt. So I feel in this case, yes, as I stated to you, and my concern that I'm asking for counsel, because I am, I do feel I'm being retaliated against.
By who?
By Mr. Vanderplow and Mayor Bazey, and as well as, uh, Mr. Roger Farina, as stated in my letter to you, sir.
I mean, Mr. Farhat, I will say, I'm sorry that you feel that you're being retaliated against. You know, this Dearborn Heights is not a hateful city. We've never been a hateful city. You are welcome in this community. You live in this community. And of the three names that you stated, you are more Dearborn Heights than all three of the names that you stated, uh, just before me, so.
I would like to state one thing. During this whole course of investigation, I received calls from Texas. Uh, as a former DEA agent, uh, I do have a lot of friends around, uh, the country, and also I respected many of them, and they're great, a great bunch of people. Uh, they reached out to me, local officers, supervisors, and they all cannot believe what's going on. Uh, so I do, and I, leaving the city of Romulus and coming here, I thought I would be, uh, I would get more support in my community. Unfortunately, so far, it doesn't look that way, guys.
Council?
Council Chair, if I may.
Sir. Point of order, guys. Listen, I've asked all council to call for point of order. I don't want to hear just the two. We are going to slow down for a second. Please hang on, Roger. I mean, you and I have spoken, I mean, I'm going to give you the opportunity to speak. I won't take away your time. I am a just person. I want to hear what you have to say to this real, real quick.
Uh, Council Chair, the, uh, point about Mr. Farina, who, uh, as we've discussed, there's, uh, the, we don't believe what he believes or the mayor believes about his office. But let's just leave it at that. But the point is, is that under these circumstances, where these issues pertain to Mr. Farina, uh, it would be very clear that anyone who's affiliated with the administration would also have a conflict of interest, uh, and therefore, there should be special legal counsel if the, uh, if the police chief needs it for, again, his official duties. Thank you.
Hundred percent. Thank you. This would be strictly official duties on city business. Uh, this couldn't be where we would be supporting legal counsel. We would not support legal counsel where if you said, I want to come back and sue the city, the city council would not approve any of those type of, uh, support for special legal counsel. Is that correct, Gary?
Yes, and that should be clearly understood and put into your motion, so that the special legal counsel would understand the scope of his or her services would be limited in that respect.
Limited to the investigation and to his authority and his position.
And his official duties.
And his official capacity.
Yes.
Thank you. I want to thank the city council, everybody that came and supported me. Um, it is sad, but it is just another sad day, I guess. Hopefully, we'll move on, guys.
Roger?
Thank you, Council Chair. Uh, I think pursuant to 5.13, uh, the duties of the, um, corporation counsel, 5.3, the duties of the mayor. Um, I think that if Mr. Farhat should choose to pursue legal action, um, obviously, our MMRMA attorneys and, and would kick in. I think that how there's not a conflict that, and I disagree wholeheartedly with Mr. Miyaki's characterization of the circumstances and facts in this situation. And I want it on the record that I would oppose any, um, designation by the council to appoint any special counsel. It does not follow 5.13 and the provisions there, therefore. And if Mr. Miyaki brings up anything on the 5.13, 5.14, 5.15, um, and our June 24th letter from, uh, uh, our lawyers on the city, they, uh, explained the, um, the power, the position of the corporation counsel, and it does not expire, and I've explained that to Miyaki repeatedly. Chooses not to listen, and apparently, um, you know, I think that how the special legal, your quote, special legal counsel, does not supersede pursuant to the charter, the position of corporation counsel. Now, you can belittle and demean my position, and it's not me, it's the position of corporation counsel that's being attacked.
Thank you. I just want to add on real quick, Councilman, if that's okay. I 100% wholeheartedly agree with you, Roger. I don't have an issue with you as a person at, at all. I don't want you to think that, uh, but this position currently by this elected body.
We did not concur.
We did not concur with the mayor as you being the.
Corp counsel.
Corp counsel. And so if you're saying that the matter still stands regardless if we agreed, then, and, and we should honor the old contract, and then the administration should honor the old contract of the command officers, and then you should honor the fact that you guys said you weren't going to fill in any vacancies, and you were going to let it follow Act 78. So the reality is, we can't pick and choose what law we want to follow. Hold on, hold on, Roger. I didn't interrupt, and this isn't a debate. This isn't a debate.
No, I was just.
I just want you to know that you, you want us to follow the rules when it comes to you, but you don't want to follow the rules when it comes to the police department. Enough.
That's not true, sir.
Council Chair.
That's not true.
Go ahead, Councilman Saab.
May I respond to you?
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead with your accusation.
To echo Roger's comments, Roger, you're telling us to follow the rules. You don't follow nothing, you nor the mayor. So this is why we're in this position right now. And again, we did not concur with the corp counsel position last year, so technically.
April.
In, in April, I'm sorry. I said last year, in April of last year. So technically, I follow what the charter says, not under section that you want to read and defend for you and the administration. We're speaking on behalf of the city.
Council, Council Chair, is there any need for me to respond to this?
I don't know. Is there? Is there?
I actually don't believe so, because we've gone over this. I've provided, uh, a confidential attorney-client privileged, um, email to you previously about some of these issues. So if you ever want me to do something publicly to respond to the.
No need. I don't, I don't want, I don't want this to look like a debate. We're going back and forth. Thank you so much, Mr. Miyaki.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else on Zoom? Oh, we're still, we still in a.
Suspended rules.
Still in the suspended rules.
So my motion agreed that we'd, uh, pay for special legal counsel for Chief Hussein Farhat, uh, for the scope of his investigation and the duties, limitation to his duties and his official capacity.
And, and let us state that special legal counsel cannot be used, uh, uh, public funds cannot be used to file any type of lawsuits against the city of Dearborn Heights.
Councilor Chair, we're only adding the motion now. We're going to discuss it when it comes to it.
Correct. Okay.
May I, may I help a little bit with that?
Well, we're not adding the resolution now until we get to 11G.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on a motion to be added?
Yes.
We have to, he suspended the rules to add 11G. Do you want to vote on that? To add? Well, no.
Just to add?
We already suspended the rules. We're adding 11G. So motion to add 11G. 11F. I'm sorry. No, 11F is Councilman wants, so this is 11G. I have him written down.
Do we need to vote to add? Or do we need to vote to?
Motion by Councilman Saab on 11G to add special legal counsel for, uh, for Chief Farhat, um, or whatever position he currently holds. Um, who is, who is your special legal counsel currently?
Doesn't matter. He can get his own.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Whomever it is, to be discussed at.
11G.
At 11G.
And who is the second?
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by.
Second.
By Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? We'll save it for when you get there. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? Unanimously, congratulations, Mr. Farhat. We'll discuss that when that gets there. Now, we don't have to vote to get out of the closed session, right? Or the rule suspension. Next up, we have six fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the current claims in ACH Wire Transfer 6-1 through dash 614, and that's, uh, 6-16 through dash 635 as submitted.
Second, motion made, uh, by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair?
Councilman?
With the recommendation of the treasurer, I would like to remove, um, let's see if you can see it here. Yeah, it's not even, they're different here. Am I on the wrong one?
I got it.
Is it 22? That's what she said, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, 22 to 25.
Okay. 22 to 25.
So we're going to remove 22, which is a plumerang gap in the amount of $12,285, $22,963, $25,940, and $29,531. Uh, that is 22 through 25. Is that correct, Councilman?
Correct, yeah. 22 to 25.
Councilman Saab, do you, uh, agree to amend your motion?
Yes.
Councilman Constant, do you agree to second that?
Yes.
Motion made by Councilman Saab to eliminate, uh, 22, 23, 24, 25, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have consideration of bids, ordinance enforcement, animal control, direct addition, bridge award of ordinance vehicle lease agreement.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman? Ahmad?
Yeah.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council.
Did we vote on the claims?
We didn't, we, we excluded the claims, but we didn't vote on all of them.
Yeah, we did.
We did after removal.
Yeah, I did after, you, you amend your motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Come on, guys, this isn't my first, this is.
Let's go on.
Thank you. Good job, Councilman.
Councilor Chair, I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized a 24-month lease agreement for 2024 Ford Bronco Sport from Taylor Ford with a monthly lease payment of $566.97, due at signing for the, for the ordinance enforcement and animal control department. In addition, provided the mayor, that the mayor auto authorizes any such payment as necessary expense. The city council authorizes warrant to be issued from, uh, JAL account 101426818000 for the payment of these services. By doing so, the city council is authorizing any such warrant and payment without prior authorization by the city council for the specific warrant and payment as permitted by and consistent with city charter section 8.9, as outlined in 7-8.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that?
Yes, Councilor Chair?
Yes.
Director? So I know we have escapes. Why are we going to a Bronco?
If you look down to item, uh, I believe it's 9F, we had a vehicle that was in an accident.
Okay.
I'm not sure if anybody's aware of that or not.
Right.
Uh, we submitted MMRMA claim. That money was, uh, sent to the city on, I think it was December 7th. Uh, about $22,000. Uh, the payoff is in 9F for that other vehicle. It's about a $11,000 or $12,000 bucks. So we're just replacing the vehicle that got destroyed.
Why is it a Bronco?
It, it's just what I got a quote for, because it's, the, the escape would be about the same price.
I'd like to send this back, and I'd like to get a bid on, on, uh, on an escape. I'd like our, our vehicles to be uniform, with the same color and everything, as residents know what kind of vehicles we have.
This, uh, this, this Bronco is going to be for me. It's going to be white in color. It's going to be marked as requested.
It doesn't matter who it's for. It's, it says it's for the ordinance department and animal enforcement. Why is it for you directly?
Well, it's not for me directly. It's for the department, but it's, it's just the vehicle's being replaced.
I would like the department's cars to be uniform. I think the council would agree to this in residence, to know what kind of cars are driving up and down our streets, because you have an ordinance.
Okay. Just, just so you're aware, we do have a separate vehicle that, uh, we approved and was paid for before. Um, the, we have a 2017 F-150, which is in the department as well, so it's not the same as the other vehicles, but it's clearly marked as well, so just so you're aware.
That was eight years ago, sir.
Uh, no, we just actually bought that, uh, two years ago.
It's a 2017?
2017, yeah. It was on a five-year lease. We got a really good deal on it.
So it was still rent owned by the city for the five, or leased by the city for the five years, correct?
Yes, and then it was purchased, because it was about $5,500, I believe, so it was a good deal. I'm just telling you that we have a different vehicle as well, so.
So I, I understand what you're saying, but I still believe that our enforcement cars, police vehicles, everything should be uniform.
Do you take your cars home?
I do not.
So it doesn't matter if you're driving a Ford Bronco Sport, or if you're driving.
An Escape.
An Escape. Does it matter to you?
Not really. It just, it was, it's a, it's a nicer vehicle, in my opinion, and it's, it's going to be the same price as the Escape, so.
I mean, Escape, I don't know if an Escape's going to be $600 a month. We might see Escape for a lot cheaper on.
That was my understanding, that the prices vary every single month. You guys know incentives come in different every month, so.
Last I checked, I think when we did our escapes, I think we did five escapes at like $265 a month or something, if I'm not mistaken. I think we even got like, uh, it was the F-150, it was like $260 or something.
If you, if you can get me an, uh, F-150 for $260, I'll take it. All these, all these vehicles are expensive. The money that we're, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So did, uh, how come we only got, uh, estimate just for, uh, um, from one dealership? How come you didn't check?
There's three quotes.
There's three.
I saw three.
Saw three?
Three in the packet.
Uh, Councilor Chair?
Hang on one second. Councilman speaking, Councilman.
Oh, sorry. I thought.
Yeah, hold on.
Hey, I'm a second.
Go ahead.
Again, we're a municipality. We're not here to choose what kind of car we want to drive or not. Cars should be uniform. Same color, same decals, um, same everything. We shouldn't just, because we find a car, just get it.
Let's make a vote on this. I mean, look, I, I agree. I think this is something we can table. Uh, I think Councilman Saab brings some good points here. And, uh, you know, we can, you know, let's go out, let's, let's find other cars other than Broncos, you know?
What, do you want escapes?
Escape, just like the ones the department has.
Obviously, so I'm just trying to find something that's going to be on a two-year, that's going to be consistent with the end of the rest of the escapes that are leased or enterprise.
I think escapes are good on fuel. I think they're good, uh, utility vehicles. They're small. The color of them, the decal on them, the city knows, residents know what cars they are.
If I can get the same color, I can guarantee that.
Okay. Well, send me the color that we have on, or I'll ask our clerk to get us the color that we have, and I'm pretty sure Ford makes some.
Yeah, you, you just talk to Ford. I mean, Catfish is well-known, like Sereni Dearborn. Yeah, we can call them.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, guys? Uh, so what would you like to do here?
I would actually just refer this back.
Councilor Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to, um, table this and refer it back to, uh, to the administration to get us some more quotes.
Thank you.
For the escapes.
All right. Motion made by Councilman Saab. Uh, Councilwoman Breyer, do you second the motion?
I did see three quotes already.
Yeah, but he's saying for other vehicles.
Whatever.
Do you want to, you want to, who do you want to do?
Can we vote on it or no?
You can vote on it. There is a motion on the table. So, would you like to keep your, your second?
Yeah, go ahead with my second.
Okay, so then we're gonna be voting whether this vehicle is to be approved or not to be approved.
No, the table, now I have a different motion.
She doesn't want, she doesn't want to amend her motion.
Well, we can... Somebody else can second it.
I can second it.
Yeah, somebody else can second it.
I'll second it.
You made the motion.
I did.
I mean, Councilman Ahmad, I'm sorry. Councilman Ahmad, Councilman, you do not want to amend your motion, you're saying, correct?
I did amend my motion, Councilman.
I mean, I know, but she doesn't want to second.
Okay, somebody else to second?
I can second.
Correct.
Would you like to second it?
Okay.
Guys, I don't think that's the right rule. I think the rule is if the person that initially seconded it, you must go forward with the vote.
Then go ahead with the vote.
So, you, so now you have to either vote on this because she didn't.
Then you voted down, then you can propose another one.
Current motion is on the table. You want to amend it, she didn't approve to changing her motion. You gotta vote on this current motion.
Doesn't mention it.
We can get another second.
No, you would vote on this right now. You can either deny it or approve it.
No, it's not, they don't use it for...
Guys, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer to approve for a Bronco truck for the ordinance department. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Adam Clerk, please take roll call.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Constant?
Yes.
Tom Winsell?
No.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Denise Malinowski-Maxwell?
No.
Hassan Ahmad?
No.
Inmobi Dun?
No.
Motion is defeated.
Thank you so much. Why don't the just, administration just bring this back to us? Even, even get a, you know, get any type of car. We don't, we don't need a Bronco for $600 a month.
Four by four, yeah.
Yeah, white one too, it's more expensive. Next up is 7B bid award of the sale of the... Yes, sir. Don't we have to make, can we make some kind of recommendation?
No, we did, we told them what we want.
Yeah, just, you know, if they need another car and it's, it's an asset, they'll, they'll come to us. Next up is 7B bid award of city, of sale of city-owned properties.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the sale of city-owned properties by Keller Williams Legacy as outlined in 7B.
Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by... Can we get a second for discussion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Saab.
Councilman, I'm recused for the record.
Thank you. Any discussion on this?
Councilor Chair, I, I, I think all the bidders have come and, and, they've all, all the good realtors we have have provided information. If I recall, Keller Williams Legacy, they were recommended, they, people thought they gave the strongest presentation. I think we have to have this come to a vote and get this, these properties sold.
Okay, so I, I will address a couple of things here. I think that we've had a couple of meetings on here, and I, I want to address a couple of things that are being said. First and foremost, Mr. Fayez was emailed the wrong email. It was verified. Mr. Deeb did send me the thing where it said F-A-Y-Z, where you could think the Z seemed like an S. I don't know, I'm not, you know, discussing about whether Mr. Deeb was able to read the Z or the S. It looked like a Z. I can see it looking like an S. I think that was an honest mistake. But then we went on. We went on and we had a, we had a study session on December 17th, which I know Councilman Ahmad said, hey, let everybody present. And with respect to Mr. Obersky, the reality is, he received an email from the city. The only presenter that didn't receive something from the city was because a mistake was being done by Mr. Deeb, was Mr. Fayez. Mr. Colonel Obersky, who I respect and have so much respect for, did receive an email, but that was also the same day, and I'm not saying that this is what he was doing, but that was also the same day as the Day Board event. You know, and then he came back and referred to us and let us know that, you know, this went to spam. But, you know, that's not something that we can say he did not receive. What I can tell you is, 20 or 30 people that did present, or that did submit, all received some type of email of either saying, thank you so much, you know, you have not been chosen. The top four people, thank you so much, you have been chosen. We are asking you to come in here and present on December 6th. What happened after on December 7th was, Mr. Fayez said, hey, I didn't receive an email. We started to dig deep. I spoke with Mr. Deeb. I spoke with Councilor Chair Ahmad. Sorry that I didn't speak with the rest of the council, but just for, for Open Meetings Act purposes, I communicated with him. I communicated with the administration. I, I've directed Mr. Deeb to go ahead and email Mr. Fayez back and his firm to come back and present on the 17th. We showed up to the city council meeting. We waited, we waited. Then we went into a closed session. We discussed some things. Right at the very end, I just so happened to ask Mr. Deeb, I think you were in Lebanon, I asked Mr. Deeb, Mr. Deeb, did you reach out to Mr. Fayez? Because it's not like him to not show up. And he said, uh, no. So, just to show you, this does not fall on the council. Does not fall on Dearborn Heights City Council. Dearborn Heights City Council has requested multiple times to call these people. And I said this at the last time where none of you guys were watching, Mr. Deeb does a million things in the city, and God bless him. Does a lot of things in the city. He's, you know, maybe he's doing too much. Maybe the administration is asking him to do too much. Maybe he's choosing to do too much. When you start to do too much, and you tend to start forgetting things like, hey, I need to reach out to, to somebody that came out and wanted to present. That does not fall on this council. That falls on the mayor and who, and, and the administration. City council has not here told anybody, you're not allowed to come and present. Granted, with city council was the reason why that this went out, re, back out for, for bids. City council was the reason why, when, when we were gonna use an auctioneer company out of a completely different community, who's gonna charge 20% or whatever the heck it was at the time, we said absolutely not. Reached out to Day Board and said, why don't you guys come take it? And Day Board said, we don't want it. This is causing too much of a problem. And now what I'm starting to see here is, for the fourth or fifth or sixth, 10th time in the last two years, we are bringing this before us to make a vote. I don't care who you, who this is, they choose. The reality is, you guys are here elected to choose to lead. Make a decision and move on. I don't think anybody's here to get upset. The reality is, a decision just needs to be made. Rather, the administration wants Sunflower Realty, a councilman wants Keller Williams, or, or allowing Mr. Fayez to come back and present. All I've been seeing here is those dragging on our feet for almost a year, because we said we wanted transparency. And so what we did was, we adopted a committee. On this committee, we put people from the public, we put two people from the council, we put somebody from the clerk's office, and we allowed somebody from the administration. If, if this isn't a seamless process, I don't know what is. And there's things like, people pointing and saying, you know, Mobi Dun is just trying to rush us. Mobi Dun's not trying to rush nothing. It's been a year and a half. If Mobi Dun was trying to rush it, we would have pushed it again a year and a half ago. But what do you want us to keep doing? We, we had people that wanted to bid on us 10 different times in different aspects, and we keep pushing them away, saying, oh, we don't like what the administration is doing. Currently, we have this administration. People who are not aligned with this administration are bidding on this process. We gotta make a decision. We can't keep telling the guy wants to fix our roads, we're not gonna use you no more. The guy that's gonna fix to do the pavements, we're not gonna use you no more. The, the brokers that wants to come in, we're not gonna use you anymore. And it's becoming so repetitive, and the council looks like they're not leading. Councilor Chair? So, I'm gonna ask that this council needs to make these types of decisions. They're tough decisions, but you have to make them. What, Councilor Chair? Yeah. Councilman? What was the recommendation of the committee? The committee has, the recommendation doesn't come from the committee.
Councilor Chair?
Hang on one second. I'm gonna answer the councilman. The recommendation, the committee hasn't even met. The committee was to, was to hold whomever this council chooses, because the council's gonna make a decision, not the committee. Whomever this council chooses, the committee's gonna make sure that they're being transparent, that there are no nepotism, and things are being equal, like making sure that we're putting, setting aside a few homes for our veterans, and making sure that we're doing the proper, putting it out there for 30 days, and making sure it's on, it's to the public on, on hundreds of up sites, and making sure that whoever bids was, was the highest bidder. And it wasn't somebody's cousin or friend, or whatever that is, that we all said we didn't want to see. That's what that committee was, was associated for. The, the committee from the public, or from the administration or the clerk's office, don't make that decision. This council body makes that decision. You were elected to make that decision. I was under the impression that they're making suggestions. The, the committee will, will decide on when things are being submitted to the clerk's office, or when they're discussing a sale of a property. I mean, I'm no realtor. I don't know. Let them figure that out. That's why I chose the two realtors that are sitting on the city council, who work on the committee.
Former realtor.
Former realtor, one of them.
But, yeah, I have had several calls from residents, and they, for some reason, thought that the committee, since we have to work with them, would be choosing who we wanted to work with, we could work with best. And it does make sense, but it doesn't matter, whatever you guys want to do. But that's just a thought.
Well, the committee, the council is here to make a decision.
We're gonna have to work with them.
I understand why Councilman Ahmad is, is also gonna recuse himself, so I, I completely understand that. But the reality is, no, the committee was not elected by the people to make the decision.
Did you, we got two committee members out there, I think they want to comment.
Yeah, but the, we are, we are speaking here, Councilman.
Councilman, it is including them.
But this committee hasn't even been approved, because we have, we have, we have, this has not been approved yet. The purpose of approving this was to approve it amongst, with a committee. The committee wasn't gonna come and tell you who is gonna be choosing to be working selling properties. Did you want to say something?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and give you 30 seconds.
You don't get anything? Yeah, Zuhair Abdalha, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that this council is elected to do, to make the decision. After you select somebody, we will meet with them to make sure that this will be 30 days on the internet, so the public can view it and have access to all the properties. And we make sure that all the bids comes to the clerk's office, and we will be present when they are open, and we select the highest bidder, so the city can get the maximum money. Thank you.
And, and one of the reasons why, if you notice, after speaking with the clerk, the administration had also made the recommendation. But the council was the one that said they want to make the recommendation. It wasn't the administration. Hang on one second, ma'am, I'm gonna, I'll give you a minute to speak. The reality is, I left this blank, and I said, let the council choose, write down the names of the committee, and you guys can go ahead and make your votes. Yes, ma'am, go ahead, you got 30 seconds.
Good afternoon, Miriam with Sunflower Realty. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit sick. I had addressed Mr. Abdalha before. I said he was unrealistic, and he's still unrealistic. There's no property now in today's market that's gonna sit for 30 days.
You gotta...
You can have transparency, okay, but you gotta let the realtor do their job. Now, I do commend my Adam and Ali. I am very open to you putting all the considerations all over again, making it a very fair process, because I too did not get some of my emails, and I went into my spam, and I followed up, and I kinda showed up. I don't mind that all four of us somehow, like, there's a resolve between all four of us. So, I would like to see a fair process as well.
I appreciate that, thank you so much. And I just want to make it clear to the public too, to those who are also recording, this has been an extremely fair process. It was not a fair process in the past. But it's tough when it comes to your community, and you have to make a decision before your community, and I get that. You have a decision to make. Your decision is to make tough decisions. You were elected to lead. And so, I'm not telling you that Mr. Fayez today does not deserve a righteous, uh, a presentation. That's not what I'm telling you. What I'm telling you is, don't blame the council that the administration failed. That is, that was not our problem. So, sorry, guys, I'm not gonna take anything from the audience anymore. So, whatever this body wants to make, make a decision, but speak on it.
You know, it almost sounds like we need to have one more quick study session and allow all four. They are all in agreement. Nobody's saying, well, I already interviewed, I don't want anybody else, you know. It sounds like everybody wants to.
Okay, I'd like to hear from the rest of the council.
Councilor Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, council.
So, I, I wasn't here for one or two meetings. I was overseas, but...
There was one, nobody showed up anyways, because the administration did it, sent it over.
But I know that Mr. Deeb in an email did, did say that he had misspelled one of the names of the brokers.
Correct.
And I'm not sure if he had reached out to him or not. I was here for the presentation from Sunflower and Keller Williams. And again, I asked for this bid, and it doesn't seem that I said, what about, so we're putting out this bid. We've never put out a bid for title work.
That's what, that's what this committee is also gonna figure out.
So, but how are you gonna sell homes without title work?
You're not, you have 30 days.
I know, but...
That's another, that's a whole nother bid.
Right, but, so technically, we can't put the homes for sale until we have a title company in place.
You, you haven't even chosen a title company, I mean, a, a real estate company for you to choose a title company.
But I mean, wouldn't you think you would want them, uh, concurred with each other? Because if we start the process...
No, because they're not gonna move forward until they choose a title company. So, you know what that means, then you're gonna be delaying the entire bid process as well, on this as well.
Unfortunately, and I don't see how anybody can list a property for sale without title work.
I don't know.
It's cause of a bid.
That's, that's a very good observation.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman.
Yeah, we, we decide a company to list it, like Keller Williams Legacy, they list the property when they get a potential buyer, then they get the title work.
We have to bid out the title work. It's, it's separate from the bid of the realtor.
But, the, the, we're gonna have the realtor suggest a title company that they work with.
No, it's gotta go out for bid.
No, there. I'm gonna give you, Mr. Phillips, I'm gonna give you 30 seconds, since you are raising your hand, and I've let others speak. You have 30 seconds.
Hello, everybody. Thank you very much. I want to thank the council again for your service. One thing that I do want to point out with this discussion of like reopening it back up is, our bids had a deadline to be submitted. Those who honored that deadline and submitted their bids, their bids then later in November got posted publicly. So, what we offered, like for mine in particular, to try to strengthen our community through these sales by offering for veterans, first responders, and teachers the first 10 days availability on the market, that process now can essentially be copied by these other brokers that are saying now like, oh, we'll do that too. So, I do have an issue if we want to talk about fairness and transparence, transparency, I do have an issue with that. Secondly, in working with the, the committee, the committee, of course, has some experience in the real estate field. However, they need to come into partnership with who is gonna be representing the city, so that expert who the city is hiring to say, hey, we have a need for you to lead in selling these properties, work with this, this committee, committee in unison, and lead this committee to do what's best for the city. That's what we're prepared to do. And, and we've proven ourselves, not only with my personal 26 years experience in working with the city, I'll say in our brokerage, in six years, we sold 2,100 units of real estate last year, and 20% of all real estate sold in Dearborn Heights for our citizens is handled by our firm. I believe the people of Dearborn Heights have chosen KW Legacy to take this position and represent the city. And it's, and it's, and it's a And it's, and it's, and it's a task that I would be honored to have. And, and I would, and I would never take for granted to, to do what's best for the people of Dearborn Heights, for you as the City of Council. And, and strengthen our community through the sale of these properties.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips, your time is up. Thank you.
Council Chair, I wasn't done.
Go ahead.
So again, I don't, I don't mind picking a firm, but the problem is, is that I'm not picking a firm without a title company.
Or you just don't move forward with the sale of the properties until you choose a title company?
No.
Right, well, you go off for bid for the title work.
Well, that's, that's, if we're gonna prove somebody right now, nobody's gonna have access to anything but me until there's a title company. Because every firm has their own title company. And I want the process to be fair, we wanna play fair and it's gonna be fair across the board.
Okay, well, there's a motion on the table. Motion by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Sab, you either table this or you vote on this.
We could take it for a vote. I mean, if, if it's dead on arrival, it's dead on arrival, we could table until the title work is out.
So are you, are you asking the administration to go out for bid?
Well, I think you would have to, because you can't sell no home without us bidding out title work.
I agree.
We're just getting a listing agent.
I, I understand, but you can't list them, and how about if I come with a cash offer and a house? How are we gonna close on it?
Then you, we go out for bids for title work.
Then you're delaying me.
He's saying you need to, he wants a title company. You, you can't, you know, yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not a Realtor, but the reality is you can't sell a property without title work. Councilman Sab saying that's a whole nother entity of sales on, on title work.
So you, you write up the deal with contingent on.
Or you don't write up the deal at all, you choose a company, you wait until you have your bids come back, and you figure it out. Now, rightfully so, I mean, I don't, I, I have no idea, but I can tell you that this process has been dragging for almost a year and a half, two years. Daymore is here, they were, how long ago were you here?
No. Just, council chair, let me finish.
How long have you?
Six months ago?
At least.
We were very excited about it, by the way, and you know, we're bored of.
You, you dropped the ball on it.
Council Chair.
Well, no, hold on, I'm gonna let Councilman Sab finish. I get what you're saying.
I, 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 I'm not against Mr. Phillips, I think Mr. Phillips has bright ideas that he's gonna bring forward. But again, as an elected body, you have a duty and an obligation. You can't tell a guy, come paint the street, you know, and he doesn't know where he's getting his, you know, we're bidding out one or telling him he wants to mount instead of ask, well, it doesn't work that way. You gotta have everything.
So what is your recommendation, councilman?
Honestly, go out for bid for title.
Okay, is Mr. Deeb there? Council Chair.
This, and by the way, just for the record, I've asked this administration before I went to Lebanon in December. Are, they'll be out for bid for title. This is not on the council. The last time I believe Mr. Phillips was here, I asked for it to go out for title, they said top, title was a completely separate bid.
Council Chair.
Yes.
Why can't we approve KW Legacy and then also go out for bids for title work?
Well, what's KW Legacy gonna do until we have title work? Nothing. We're not gonna give them access to any property.
We, we, we go out for bid quickly and we, when we get a buyer, then we, you know, then, then we've got the. The buyer is gonna get financing and the buyers, their, their mortgage lender is gonna want.
Well, how about if you go get the financing, I think we're gonna have clear title close.
The, their mortgage lender is gonna want.
You're not gonna be able, you're not gonna be able to close a property without title work, is what.
Right, no, I understand that.
So why would I go get funding or a mortgage if we know the title is cleared now?
Hang on, councilman. Guys, nothing from the audience, please.
Point of order.
Point of order, please.
Do any of these four companies have the same title company that they use?
I don't know, that's irrelevant though, what's the.
It's gotta go off a bid.
What she's saying, he's saying he wants it out for bid.
I understand that, but if they agree on one, it shouldn't be a problem.
It shouldn't agree, it's money, it's gotta go off a bid.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. I just wanted to also clarify, where are we gonna pay the title company from and if the council could make that recommendation? Because again, when we recommended the actual auctioning services, it was an all-inclusive process where they took a fee of the sale of the properties, but they handled the entire situation. So as we are piecing this together, we also need to address where are the costs gonna come from? Is that gonna be part of the sale as well? Do we want to separate a certain amount of money in the budget for that? It needs to be clarified. As well, with regards to the communication, I understand that Mr. Deeb did forget once, but he did also reach out to council on December twenty-ninth and asked if he wanted the companies to be invited back, and I don't believe he received a response. So I apologize for the miscommunication there, but it seems that there was misunderstanding with regards to what the committee was going to do, because he also understood that they were the ones who were gonna make the selection on who the company was going to be.
Council Chair.
So, again.
I have.
We can continue.
Thank you, Council Chair. Chief of Staff, typically when you close a, a property, title company gets paid from the proceeds, so there's nothing we need to budget from before. And I did, to be honest with you, the first time Mr. Deeb sent the bid out, I, after the bid went out, I knew and I asked him to separate the real estate from the title company, to make up two separate bids. But I'm not sure why he didn't proceed with the second bid with title company, because definitely we need to send a bid out to have different, because every title company, they have different expenses.
Okay, so I just wanted to verify.
Yeah, but nothing, nothing to budget for, because everything will, will be paid from the proceeds.
You don't have to budget for that at all.
We'll see, because there might be some work that the title company has to do ahead of time, but we'll.
No.
We'll try to make sure that it's quoted, it's quoted properly in the bid proposals.
I'm no Realtor, but I can tell you that you don't know, title work, you're not gonna have to budget anything for title work. So it's not an expense on the city to say, choose a, choose a real estate company, choose a title company.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
There's one or two underwriters, and then there's different title companies, but I, I don't think we're talking about a big expense. I don't see why that's a big hurdle, so we pick a company, and then, as far as the title work, we, but the, the buyers, whoever their mortgage lender is, is gonna want in particular title companies.
No, no, you're thinking of two different things. Title companies are gonna choose the title company, I mean, I mean, realistically, respo section eight, I believe.
Oh, no, respo section, real estate settlement procedures.
Yeah, respo section nine says that, that they have the right to choose their own title company. So whomever the buyer is, chooses their own company, the seller chooses their own company. What the councilman is also referring to here is, before you could start the process, say you sell a property and you're ready to begin. The title company has to, total has to be ordered on that property to ensure that there's no liens or what, whatnot. So.
If the buyer's paying, if the buyer's paying for the title policy, which they are, then I don't necessarily ask to go out for bid.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
If the, if the buyer is paying as part of the deal for the, the title work and the title policy.
No, well, typically, you can have a split closing, a title company that will present the seller. And the buyer can elect to have his own title company to present them, so this is totally different.
Yeah, no.
So you can, seller has to, has to pick their own title company first. If the buyer elects to work with this title company, then they can, if not, they can pick their own. So it'll be a split closing.
Well, they, they could offer the property where the buyer picks the title company, and it's part, that expense is part of the deal, part of the, the offer from the buyer. But anyway.
No, well, you get, you get the transfer taxes, you get the title insurance, you got the closing, that's all seller expense.
For the next several years.
Is Mr. Deeb on? Is he, I see him.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Deeb, I, I do recall Councilman Sab bringing it up during the study session, and I believe Councilman Ahmad also addressing that. Is there a reason why we have not went out for bids for the title work?
Yes, so two reasons. One, during the presentation, most of the companies had their own title companies, and I wasn't, that they work, that they work with. And then for me, I'm still, even today, confused as to, you just indicated that if the buyer decides to use his own title company and then the, we select the title company by, by bid. How do I close, and I'm sorry, I'm not a real estate person, but how do I come up to close the document? Who's paying for what? I mean, when I go out to bid, what would you like me to put in the scope of services? Am I going to say that a selected title company is going to work with us and then charge the buyer for their services? What if I have issues with the title and, and, and it comes up in the closing? I mean, you see what I. Is, is it something that we're gonna do ahead of time? Clear all the titles and get them all ready for sale? Or is it on case per case basis? And I'm looking for Councilman Protam Ahmad. I think we, we had that discussion partially, because I'm still not clear, as, what do you want me to put in this scope? So if I am to go out today, as, as Councilman Sab indicated, and put out an RFP for a, a title work consultant or company. Am I going to say that you are going to provide the services to the committee when the sales are being prepared or when offers are made? Or are you going to provide that service ahead of time to clear the title, make sure that we have no liens before the sale takes place? I'm just, again, I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking for direction. As I, and, and, you know, I did send a couple requests, I think on the December twenty-ninth was one of them. I'm looking for direction, I'm not a real estate person, I'm an engineer.
Council Chair.
I asked everyone on council to please let me know if you want to re-interview, you know, the selection process. You asked me to provide the top four firms, and I did, based on their bidders. You know, two percent, two and a half, three percent, I provided the top four. The presentation was never part of the RFP. It was a later type presentation that we wanted to come up with. And if you, and, and again, I apologize for that one mistake I made, and that is the, I was confused when the committee was selected that, and I wasn't part of that committee, that the committee was gonna take over the sales. So that was the confusion on my part, but I'm still of the same opinion. What would you like the title company to do? If I was to write the scope of services today, do you want them to clear the titles before or during? Or work with the selected, uh, uh, real estate agent?
Go ahead.
Council Chair.
Thank you, Council Chair. Mr. Deeb, typically, just to explain, typically, there's two, there's salary closing costs and there's buyer's closing costs. So it's seller, they can pick their own, they have to pick their own title company, because the title company gonna charge them title insurance, they're gonna cha, charge them transfer taxes, and they're gonna try to, to charge them, uh, uh, closing fee. If the, if the buyer elects to have a different title company, they can, because they have their own, uh, you know, closing costs, which is not the title insurance if they're going with a mortgage. And, uh, not the expenses if they, you know, they elect to use a different title company as a closing expense. But if you want, we can sit down, me and you in private, and just to help you with the, how to send the bid out. With the verbiage, typically, we're gonna send it out to other title companies, okay, we have like a hundred properties. Are you gonna give us a deal, like what can I, what can I, what can I closing fee you're gonna charge us for a hundred properties? And yes, typically, it would be better to send for title work first, just in case if some of the properties, they're not clear and ready for sale, maybe we can work on them before we have the agent list them, market them. Once we have an offer on the table, then we cannot, uh, sign the offer because the title is not clear. So typically, yeah, I think Councilman Sab brings a good idea, a good point that we do need to send them to clear title first. Especially, I know those properties been sent, and some of them have been bought from the county auction, I believe.
Yes, yes, so the, the, the point is, we will prepare a scope of services from the title company before, and, and you and I can sit down, since you're in the real estate business, or help me write this code.
Okay.
Again, you know, I'd be happy to, but then you want it, and, and then the, the options will be, the real estate agent selling the property will have company A, and the buyer has the right to use company B, if he, if he so chooses, right?
No, 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 I mean, the, as a city, we're gonna have our own title company.
Yes.
They're gonna keep working for us, but once we have an offer from a buyer, either they can use our title company or they can elect to have their own. Then it's called split closing, we still have two title companies.
Perfect, I'll, I'll, I'll call you first thing and, and help me put this.
But, but to clarify about the committee that Council Chair suggested, this is basically, the committee will come after somebody is elected or selected, uh, and so we can just go over the offers once they're received, or the way the profit would be marketed.
Okay, I understand.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
That's the key, it's the, what, what's the scope of the, the different bidders, like for example, KW Legacy, what's their scope of services? Does that, or does that not include the title policy?
No, it doesn't include that.
So that has to be decided.
Okay. I'm asking this body, what do you guys want to do? Councilwoman? Councilman?
Well, I mean.
There's a motion on the table. So do you want to vote on this or do you want to table this? Keller Williams. Why was I gonna vote no on? What is it? So what do you want to do?
I would, I would table it until we have a title company. Yeah, let's table this until a title company put out and we have a bid, so that way it syncs and concurs with it. I think that would be best out of voting on a.
So Councilman Constance, do you wanna, um, do you want to table your motion?
Yes.
Councilman Sab, do you second that?
I'll second that until we have a title company bid out and, uh, a title company that's approved by the city.
And Mr. Deeb, are you going to reach out, uh, um, are you gonna reach out to Mr. Ahmad tomorrow, Councilman Ahmad?
First thing in the morning.
Okay, and then in the meantime, um, you know, we'll, we'll make arrangements, Mr. Deeb, with Mr. Faye's as well. While we're in this process, okay?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Motion to table this until further notice by Councilman Sab, seconded, or by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Sab. All in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
And that's to include getting bids for, you know, the scope of the service.
Yes, well, that's why we're tabling it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, we have AA Board of Reviews reappointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I have, for all these appointments, I have, I have some questions. With your own, uh, request, uh, we said that anybody that's being appointed, reappointed, we wanted the backup about the person or appointments are made, I don't see any backup to any of these, or any information about the individuals.
So I know they gave us the names, I know, uh, the administration sent, sent me a couple, but you know, before we have the discussion, we still have a, we still have to read the motion.
Right, no, but I'm just saying.
I'll do the motion.
Let's, let's review the motion before we do the discussion.
Council Chair.
Motion, yes, Councilman Constance.
I, I move that to Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayor, reappointments of Ali Sharara, Dennis Saboda, and Chastity Townsend to the Board of Review, terms to expire January twenty-twenty-seven is outlined in eight A.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on this?
Council Chair.
Councilman.
We, um, believe last year around this time, we asked on the record, any appointments or reappointments are made. That we have backup with the person's background information, anything like that, and all these appointments have nothing attached to them.
Okay.
Council Chair. I mean, I, I happen to know all three of these peoples, I'm sure a lot of you do, but I agree with Councilman Sab, we should have some background to why they're particularly, well, one of the members, I don't know that they have any background in real estate, real estate values or.
I truly believe that we should know, you're appointing just people based on the name there, um, no background, so. Fortunately, I'm gonna be voting no on every appointment until what was requested by this body be, be brought back from the administration.
I will tell you, I mean, I think if it's a reappointment.
Right.
I don't think we should be shutting them all down.
But we, we're reappointing the same people, the last time we appointed didn't have the backup, and administration still has not some of the.
Well, let me tell you something. Like getting rid of the Board of Reviews.
I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to get rid of it, council. It's not, Council Chair, it's just, you know, you can, you're gonna appoint anybody you want, but you mean, you want at least people that we know what their background is and commissions they're on, not because just we know somebody.
Rather you know somebody or not, I mean, I agree with you, but look, at the end of the day.
That was your recommendation, Council Chair.
It was mine and Councilman Ahmad's, I, I'm, I'm agreeing with you. But I can tell you something, for example, there were a few that he did send us, like Ali Turfes, he sent us Ali Turfes, which we just approved last week.
No, wasn't gonna back up, no?
Before, there were, when he, when he gave him a reappointment, and then the other two that he gave us for the two other individuals that we approved for on the planning commission. He did, he sent them to you, you and I, councilman.
Yeah, I mean, that was last, I think last year.
No, no, he just sent us the last two for the two individuals that wanted to be on the planning commission. He sent us a.
It was a letter that he sent, where they live and what they do. Go ahead.
Hang on, hang on, one second. By the way, when you're saying you want to know all these things about them, yeah, that's what it is, it's a quick, it's a quick, we don't need to, like, overdo this.
No, we're not.
I know, but you're saying it wasn't enough, he's, he gave you.
No, you're saying you got a background, I said, all it was, was they lived in, uh, they lived in Dearborn Heights, what they did.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna check.
I don't know any, anything about, okay, go ahead.
I'm not.
But this was your recommendation, Council Chair.
I, I, councilman, I know what my recommendation was, you said that to me twice, I get that. What I'm trying to tell you is, some of these people gave us one who are being reappointed who already gave us the backup on. Do I know who they all are? I, I mean, do I, do I have them all in front of me? No. So what I'm trying to say is, some of it also has to be fairly understood, also like the Board of Reviews. Like if we keep pushing this back and the administration doesn't give it to us, what are you gonna do with the Board of Reviews? Go ahead, Gary.
Council Chair, just a suggestion, it might be helpful. If there's something pressing, like the Board of Review, which is why I stood up, otherwise I wouldn't say anything. Maybe you should consider re, doing a reappointment, particularly because it's a reappointment, so that you don't end up jeopardizing the process and the city being able to get through it. But maybe in terms of the other ones that don't have that, just table all of those until you end up getting appropriate backup.
That's, that's, that's where I was trying to go with that. My fear is just the Board of Reviews, people are gonna come in, they're gonna, they're gonna look at these different appointments, they're gonna want to speak in front of them, they're gonna say, and you know what the administration's gonna be doing, right? Oh, well, you guys can't come fix your taxes because the council didn't approve you. That's happened to me, it's happened to us one too many times, so I'm trying to avoid that. Maybe, I don't know, the chief of staff can speak up and tell us why we never received the, the backups for these individuals.
Council Chair, while she's walking up there, you know, we, we can't be hypocrites, because we've demanded it on other appointments before, and, uh, we gotta, we gotta stay in line with what we, uh, we believe and what we asked for in the past.
Yep.
Council Chair.
Good afternoon, Council Chair. Again, it was our understanding that the background checks were for new appointees that hadn't been in commissions in the past. Uh, all of the ones that are getting reappointed have been in these commissions for various years. We didn't expect, uh, for a need for background checks with regards to those.
Are any of them being moved around?
No.
None of them?
They're all reappointments, and also in this, you will see a lot of, um, boards and commissions that actually it is the mayor's responsibility. In that case, you would see a receive note on file on the motion. So at that point, again, if there is a new appointment, typically the background check is not required by the council. But if you need clarification or if you want to update that, you can let us know and we will be happy to provide that information.
Council Chair, we're not asking for a background check, we're just asking for a.
Resumes.
Not even a resume, a pre-file. This is all, so I lived in the city for X amount of years, we love to be here, we, we care, but that's it.
Again, we assumed that was only for new appointees, all of the ones that have been there for years, we didn't expect.
Council Chair.
Yeah. Actually, I, I was the one who brought this forward in twenty-twenty-three, but Councilman Sab was not on, uh, council at that time, so. I think just to be fair to him, uh, I guess probably, yeah, we need the bios for all the appointees, whether a appointment or, or a new appointment.
So we're familiar from the get-go.
Yep, I would recommend that you do approve the Board of Review if possible, we will get those to you as soon as possible, but I'm sure that you're familiar with most of the names in there as well.
I'm not.
Okay, well, there's a motion on the table, motion by Councilman Constance. Any other discussion? Okay.
Council chair, can you, uh, read, can you read what the motion is?
Okay. The motion?
Council chair.
Yeah.
Just for everyone's background, I mean, Ali Sharara is a prominent Realtor, uh, Dennis Saboda, I think, has served on commissions in the past, and, um, somebody in that family is a police officer. Uh, Chastity Townsend is with the, uh, Dearborn School Foundation, somewhat active in the Chamber of Commerce. So that's the background I know.
Any other discussion?
Council chair, I, uh, just for the record, I did, uh, serve with, uh, Mr. Saboda on, uh, Board of Review for a few years, and I think he's, he's been on it for, I think, over ten years.
Oh.
Yeah.
Right.
All right. Anyone else? All in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Constance?
Yes.
Moby Dune?
No.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Um, Madam Chair, I'd like to change my vote to no.
Uh, Council chair, just for the record, I voted yes, 'cause I think, uh, the Board of Review coming up in, in early March.
In March.
I mean, if she can bring us something next meeting, I think we can just table it.
Can you bring us something by next meeting? Or can you?
It has to.
We're not asking for the resumes, just a quick, have you a quick brief? You got two weeks. So why don't we just take this to a, to a, uh?
We have one more to.
Table this, before they say the council denied it.
Let's do that and refer it back to the ministry. So we want to amend the motion?
To table it for backup.
So we'll put it on the next agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, Councilman Constance.
If there's no backup, we'll still then make a decision.
Councilman Constance, okay with that?
Councilman Constance, are you okay with amending that?
Yes.
And Councilman?
Councilman Ahmad, are you okay? Motion to amend this by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Look at us, unanimous again. Next up, we have 8B Commission on Business Reappointments.
Council chair.
Can't we just go through and say, 8B, 8C?
We have two, we have three.
Okay, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral, mayoral reappointment of Steve Henry and Wissam Isat at the Commission on Business. Terms to expire January twenty twenty-seven, as outlined in 8-b.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constance.
Nancy Breyer.
Council chair?
Yep.
I'd like to amend my motion and table it for backup, to be brought back in the next meeting, February.
Council chair, are they currently on the commission?
Yeah, but he, he, it looks like we're gonna go ahead, and all of these are gonna be amended to the next city council meeting.
Yep.
Sorry, uh, this ones are the mayor's appointments, so this are the receive note on file. Just wanted to clarify that.
It's not a receive note on file.
Has to be voted in.
Yeah, sorry.
Yep.
Correct. So it's, it's just a receive note on file for the council.
Yeah, but we still have to take action on it. So we're gonna, we're gonna postpone it until you can get us those backups. Thank you. Yeah, the motion to, are you, sorry, is?
I'm ta, I'm tabling this for next meeting until we have back, backup on the motion.
Can't he just read every single one of them as they're tabled, instead of reading in, coming back and then going through it?
Let's just, let's just read the first line, and then just say, refer back for.
If I may, you could have a motion for all of the appointments, items 8, B, C, D, whatever, that you're going to refer all of them back.
Thank you.
Uh, to the administration and tabled until the next meeting.
The, uh, but we're done with 8B, right?
I'm just gonna ask, Mr. Council chair, council chair, I'm just gonna ask.
Point of order, one second, I got it.
Refrain.
I, I, I will, I will, I will answer you, Roger, give me one second, please. What was that, madam clerk? Okay, go ahead, Roger, what was that?
I'm just gonna ask Ms. Miyaki to refrain from coming from the audience, and he has no title or to supersede my authority, and I'm listening to the council, I'm following you, but it's just disrespectful of me.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Roger.
Council chair, I would like to make a motion to table, uh, 8D, 8C, 8D, 8E, 8F, 8G. Okay, so up to 8G, uh, table, table back to the, send them back to the administration for backup, to be added back on, uh, next meeting.
Background on the.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by?
Second.
By Councilman Constance, to refer back all of eight, all the commissions with, to come back with proper documentation.
Background on the.
Just bio.
Just a bio. All in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Unanimous again, there we are. We said 8G as well?
Yes.
Next up, we have 8H FEMA Grant Acceptance Ha, Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant Program four four nine four point two three.
Council chair.
Councilwoman Breyer.
All right, I'd like to recommend a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council motion to accept and approve the agreement for FEMA Michigan State Police Hazard Mitigation Grant Program four four nine four date, or dot two three, CFDA number ninety-seven dot zero three nine dash project number HMGP four four nine four, uh, period two three dash R, in the amount of three million, three, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars, as indicated in paragraph four, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program HMGP, award amount and restrictions. In addition, authorize CEDD Director Saad, is that how I say her name?
Yes.
Okay. She's right there. For those who haven't met her, this, this is her.
Let's read this.
Okay, to sign required award agreement documentations as attached and may be requested by FEMA slash Michigan State Police later. Additionally, authorize the CEDD Director Saad to possess it, to process the necessary documentation to secure the home acquisitions pending council approval of the purchasing offers. Furthermore, authorize the city controller to establish and fund the ten percent match general ledger account five nine two dash five three six dash nine two six, period five nine two, in the amount up to three hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, from the water sewage unbalance. Also establish another general ledger account, five nine two dash five three six dash nine two seven dot five nine two, for the grant expenses, reimbursement, tracking, and record reconciliations, noting that the grant expenditures up to three million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars will be paid temporarily from the water sewage fund pool bank account, and fully reimbursed from FEMA Michigan State Police HMGP fourth, or four four nine four, period two three, grant is outlined in 8H.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on that?
Council chair.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have Councilman Ahmad go first.
Hello, Mrs. Saad, Ms. Saad, or you, it's good to have you, funnily nice to meet you. Uh, do we, I know just a letter I had mentioned, Mr., uh, our previous director, Mr. Jamal, mentioned his name.
Yes.
Do we have a problem? I, I didn't see his name on the contract itself, but do we have a problem with the, or?
No, so initially, he was the one who did sign the grant agreement. He was the one who was doing the deals with FEMA prior to me being appointed. However, because the money was directed to the department itself and not to him, we shouldn't have any issues.
Thank you.
Council chair.
Council chair.
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Roger go next, and then Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell.
Um, it's more of a housekeeping matter. I know with the federal, um, the, um, passing of Mr. Trump's order, that all federal grants are stopped, and in terms of our reimbursement, I know there was a stay, allegedly a stay, a partial stay, but I'm not sure if it, how it affects FEMA or our other grants that currently, and maybe, um, in terms of our reimbursement, are we covered by it? And I think we need to find an answer, and maybe Mariana would know. Just, just make sure that it's on the table.
Good afternoon. Uh, yes.
Hang on, before, before you move forward, or you gonna move forward on that? Roger, are you done?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Next is Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell.
Thank you, Council chair. My understanding is, um, Mr. Jamal is the one that needs to sign off on this, 'cause this grant is in his name, and it's a federal grant. I mean, it, we could send it back and ask him to put it in your name, which would make it more legal. We don't want to get in trouble for doing this incorrectly. Um, because he's the one that applied for it, he would have to sign off. You couldn't sign it, 'cause his name will be on the final grant. So my suggestion is to refer it back, to get it corrected, and then bring it back so we can accept it.
I don't think they can send the grant back.
They can send it back and ask them to correct the paperwork with the right name on it, 'cause she is now in charge.
Yeah, but you know, I'm sure there was many grants that we received where, uh, the former CEDD director received it. I mean, look, guys, we're, we're got grant money here, we're not gonna say no to it, we're not gonna say, okay, it was written under this other person.
Personally, okay, I'm not done speaking, but you're right, but we want to do it correctly so it sticks. We don't want it to be rejected because we made a little technical error that's easy enough to correct at this point in time.
I don't think anybody's gonna say, I mean, that's just my opinion. Again, there's a vote on the table.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's nothing wrong with getting it correct and dotting our i's and crossing our t's to make sure everything is right, 'cause we've got so much else wrong. We don't want, we don't need this coming back at us that we didn't do it correctly.
Thank you.
Council chair in light of.
Hang on, one second, Roger, please. I'm gonna hear from Mariana next. Go ahead.
All right. Um, just to address that, Ms. Malinowski Maxwell, uh, we absolutely have been in communication with MSP. It will not be an issue whatsoever. Again, the department is the one who signs the authority, and it stays within the city. Regardless of who the person that signed that was, it will always belong to the city as a whole. So even if Ms. Layal Saad leaves tomorrow, it will still stay with the department.
All right, do we have that communication as proof that we can see it?
She received the grant agreements directly from MSP, so they know that she's the new appointee for the department, that they're the ones requesting for approval from council.
Do we have that in writing?
Correct. There's email communications.
Yes, there's email communications. If you need that, I can provide that.
I would prefer that to be provided before I vote on it, because I want to make sure that we do, this is a good grant, we don't want to lose it by a technical error. I mean, we still have time. If you went to them and said, look, city council wants you to put my name on it, bring it back in two weeks, and we'll definitely put it through for you, but I just don't want to see us lose it, or take any chances.
Thank you.
Now, with regards to the stay on the grants, that is correct. There is currently a stay on the grants, which means that we will not be able to draw down on any federal grants. Uh, we are hoping that this will be resolved by February tenth, uh, where we will get some clarification with regards to that. Again, this is, um, brand new, it came out today. We are writing to our representatives, asking for clarification with regards to those items, so hopefully it'll be resolved soon, but we will absolutely be cautious with the amount of money we spend.
And the mayor give him a call, he'll, he'll lift them up, listen.
We're, we're all writing to everybody, so all of the communities are on the same page. I was at a DCC meeting today where everybody was facing the same situation.
Thank you.
Council chair, I mean, I, I respect where everybody's coming from, but I only see, uh, Mr. Jamal's name on the letter I had, not on the contract itself, so legally, I don't think it's gonna affect anything.
I agree.
I mean, you can just.
Council chair, we can get their CDPG lawyers to write an opinion on that issue.
Roger, go to the chair, point of order.
I was trying to.
I know what you're doing, go through the chair, that's all.
No, council chair, I'm saying.
I, I under, I agree with you. Councilman Ahmad is speaking though, please.
So I mean, for the time being, I think we should go ahead and just, uh, accept this grant, and say thank you, Uncle Sam, and move on.
Yes.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
Council chair?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yeah, we do have twenty-one to twenty-five houses at, at risk here, and we do need that money.
Thank you. I don't think Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell was saying not to do it. I think she's one hundred percent in support of this, and I think she agrees to this. I think what she's, all she's saying is, and like anybody is, she wants to be proactive and saying, dotting her i's, crossing her t's, clearly, I don't think Ms. Saad is gonna make up a lack of communication. She just wants, you know, assurance, like, hey, I don't want to get this, and then we end up losing the money. That's all Councilwoman Malinowski is saying.
Council chair.
No, that's correct. I, I just want to make sure that everything is written out correctly, that we don't take any chance of losing it, 'cause it is important to the residents, and if we vote on this, and they come back and say, you did it wrong, you lose it, then that's gonna affect our residents.
They're not even giving them out right now, so.
Council chair.
Well, I'm gonna go, Councilman Saab, then Councilman Ahmad.
Can we just, uh, put an amend this to say that if, you know, uh, President Trump's recom, uh, executive order stands, that administration cannot draw down or move anyone from that?
You can't what?
The match, the ten percent. So if his, if his order that, if President Trump's order they put in today for FEMA stays past the time, that the administration cannot move forward on the ledger for the ten percent.
Well, technically, we're putting, we're setting it aside for this, and you can't, and our resolution with, with Mr. Miyaki doesn't technically allow, I mean, doesn't mean they're even gonna follow the directions or the rules, so like, but we already have that put into place early from the start of the fiscal year. And, and we're voting on it again for Councilman Ahmad on eleven E, so it's gonna protect it either way. I mean, it doesn't mean that.
The one that we put forward was for the police department.
No, what we put forward was the entire budget, budget, uh, was that for the entire budget, wasn't that correct?
Right.
When we, when you put in the assurance that you set out to cross budget lines to overspend on different, uh, departments.
Two thirty-two is for the police department.
The language that was put in during the budget was specifically with regard to personnel. Uh, then I believe there was another motion that was offered by Councilman Saab that addressed the issue. I think between those two, no money is supposed to be switched around without council approval.
So already agreeing to move it and put it up, establish the funds of ten percent in the general ledger.
I know, but right now, there's a stay.
I know, Councilman, but you're still setting it aside. We're not, it's sitting in a different ledger, removing it from, from one account number to another account number, from the one ending in nine two, from nine two six five nine two to nine two seven nine five nine two. So it's moving from the one ledger to the other ledger.
On fund balance.
The treasurer's here, Council chair, maybe she can comment on it. Madam treasurer?
I mean, we don't, I don't know if we need all of that. All he wants to say is, is make sure that the administration doesn't use the additional ten percent. I mean.
That's it.
Okay, you can have, you can amend it. You can amend the motion. Uh, Councilwoman Breyer, do you care to amend your motion to say that?
Could we say, subject to the current state?
Yeah, subject to the current state, not to, not to move the ten percent.
All right.
That's set aside. Councilman Ahmad, do you second it?
I second.
Is that good, Councilman Ahmad?
Yes.
Saab?
Yes.
Any other discussion on this? Take it to a vote. All in favor, please stay at aye. Aye. Those oppose?
No.
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
No.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Moby Doon?
Yes.
Motion carries five two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, we have reports from city officials, city clerk, city election security grant.
Council Chair. Council Chair.
Yes, Mr. Deeb, what are you yawning for?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was.
Can you imagine if you farted?
No, don't.
I mean, we all, we all pass gas.
Point of order, Council Chair.
Sorry, Councilman, that's the second time you've had to do that to me. I'm sorry.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the comptroller to set up or modify the appropriate general ledger accounts in the amount of 27,000 to accept the election security grant and provide expenditure as outlined in nine dash eight.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Saab. Any discussion on that? Congratulations. Thank you so much. You're an amazing grant writer and an amazing clerk.
Thank you.
All in favor, please stay at aye. Aye. Those oppose? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up is Treasury's plan request to open bank account. Anyone?
That's a long one to read.
That's a long.
It's either you or me.
It's you.
All right, I'll do it again.
Councilwoman Breyer.
I'd like to recommend the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize and direct the city treasurer to open a depository account with a bank or trust company designated by the city council to be designated 2024 Capital Improvement Bonds Debt Retirement Fund. In parentheses, the debt retirement fund. The money to be deposited into the debt retirement fund to be specifically earmarked and used solely for the purpose of paying principal of and interest on the bonds as they mature. In addition, authorize and direct the city treasurer to open a separate depository account with a bank or trust company designated by the city council to be designated 2024 Capital Improvement Bonds Construction Fund. Proceeds of the bond's less acute interest, if any, which shall be deposited into the debt retirement fund. The monies in the construction fund shall be used to solely pay the cost of the project and the cost of the issuance of the bonds as outlined in nine B.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Saab. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman.
Madam Treasurer, I mean, I hate to, I hate to see opening more accounts, but I know it says here, like, you know, you're authorized and directed, but is it like a must or?
Yes, it is actually part of the bond language.
Yeah.
I gave you.
I mean, I read it, but.
From, and I quoted it, the third paragraph.
I'm looking at it, and you, thank you for highlighting.
This is like the 21 bond as well, where it's part of the bond language. However, if it's not done, they could actually come back and say, we want the full repayment at one time versus pacing it out like we have according to the amortization schedule. So again, this is directly from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Program. Closing language found on page three, section three and four. And I included the attachment for backup and highlighted it. So it's directly from there. But again, if, if you decide not to do that, then they could come back and ask for it directly, those funds.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on this? I will say, after going through so many different meetings, we've heard so many different times, we're going to close accounts, we're going to close accounts, we have too many accounts. The experts of Plumber and Gap, the experts of our treasurer, the experts of all those who have said, close accounts, close accounts, close accounts. I hate to see they're trying to open more accounts. My question is to you, how many accounts do we have currently?
Are you counting investment accounts? Because there's one investment account with Morgan Stanley, but I have several investments, you know, for water, for tax, for.
How many accounts do we have?
So, and if you count savings.
Yes, bank accounts.
Which are pool with the checking, Comerica, there's about 13, 10 to 13. But then there's like the pool count which earns interest where checking does not.
Tell me how many.
Well, 13.
How many bank accounts?
And then 10 or so from, about 10 from Chase. So, yeah. And the thing is, you need to remember, we, we've gone down this road and we dissected everything. And a lot of those accounts, like water, Act 345, those are restricted funds, and thank goodness we've kept them restricted. Because if they had gone into pool account and if the general ledger is not accurate or up to date, you could easily spend down restricted funds through general fund spending. As you can see, our general fund is already in a insolvent situation. We're awfully close to that. Can you imagine if all your Act 345 monies that we collected under that millage was sitting in the general fund and something was incorrect, you start spending down that money, which you cannot do. So I do not regret that whatsoever. In fact, by closing some of the accounts that were closed, it became a real big problem for us because then a former police chief Hart came back and said, oh, we got to have those open after it was voted to be closed. So I closed them based on the council, but then they had to come back and be reopened. And it was kind of a lot of back and forth, which was unnecessary, like the federal forfeiture, for example, those accounts. So just my opinion.
Any discussion, anyone else? All right, let's take this to a vote. All in favor, please stay at aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it. Next up, we have City Engineer Deeb, transportation of pavement asset management plans.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the transportation and pavement asset management plan as outlined in nine dash C.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor, please stay at aye. Aye. Those oppose?
No.
All right. Madam Clerk, please take your call.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Moby Doon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're moving on to nine D, IT Director Cooper, Microsoft M365 renewal. Do I have a motion?
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Councilor Tom, sorry. I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized our agreement with SHI to continue to provide three years of guaranteed pricing, license, various additions, and products of Microsoft O365 dash M365 with a yearly cost of $72,534.20. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary documents and the treasurer to issue payment from account number 101258728 for $67,137.38. Account number 130960918024 for $1,581.48. Account number 592593728592536782 for 2,000. Nancy?
All right.
Point of order, please.
Account number 592 dash 536 dash 728 for the amount of $2,204.23. Account number 101809981001 for $1,611.11 as outlined in nine D.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Saab, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion? I see none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Moving on. Any opposed? I heard, I heard everybody say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to nine E. Library Director, McCavrey, Library Advisory Board Appointments.
Councilor Tom?
Please go ahead, Councilwoman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the reappointment of John Zadikian to the Library Advisory Board, term to expire February 2027. In addition, concur with the appointment of Christine Dobrovich.
Dobrovich.
Dobrovich, to fill the vacancy left by Emmy Peck, term to expire February 2027 as outlined in nine E.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell and seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion? I see. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to nine F, Ordnance Enforcement and Animal Control Director Dishroom, Enterprise Vehicle Purchase.
Councilor Tom?
Councilwoman.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of 2022 Ford Escape SE four-door, front-wheel-drive from Enterprise Fleet Management for a cost of $10,969.29. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account 101-426-981.000 is outlined in nine F.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilwoman Nancy Breyer. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Saab?
Council Chair, Councilor Tom. So we had this discussion on an item before this for the ordinance department. Clearly, they're buying Ford Escapes that we own, but I don't know why we're trying to lease a Bronco then. Is the director here?
He's here. Director? I believe this is the one he was talking about that got into a car accident, and they're trying to sell it. Go ahead, Director, please.
That is the one that was crashed. We filed an MMRMA claim. We're trying to pay the claim out and the vehicle's done. So we did net about $12,000 from that. That's what I was going to use to pay for the lease. So just a matter of paperwork is all it is.
Okay.
Councilman, you're done?
Yep.
So Director, so what happens? We buy the vehicle for this much, then we sell it, or how does it work?
It's salvage. A salvage company was interested in taking it, so.
Okay, so do we get money for that too, or?
I, I'm not sure exactly. I think there's some net proceeds from that, but I'm not exactly sure how that works. But we got the MMRMA claim that is already paid out. It's already been put in the account.
So I'm just trying to understand, since it was a lease and we got the money, how come they didn't pay Enterprise and?
They should have paid it directly. I, I, there was a little bit of confusion about how that was supposed to go. I tried to reach out to Enterprise to get that resolved. That would have been easier that way. But since the money came in.
So they gave us the money and you tried to pay.
MMRMA, yeah, MMRMA paid us the money. And the difference is about $12,000 that we will get from that. The difference between the payoff and the, the lease, that's all.
Thank you, Director. Any more discussion?
No.
We'll take it for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Council Chair, nine G.
Was that nine G or we're going?
No, we're moving to nine.
Police Chief Farhat. Purchase and payment, Police Department Dell Rugged Laptop.
Council Chair.
Still have Police Chief Farhat on here.
I believe you might want to consider calling Director of Public Safety Paul Vanderplu.
Sure. I mean, okay.
Well, then.
It doesn't matter. I'm just reading what was presented to us.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I'm not calling on you, actually. I'm actually just reading the motion. Okay. I'm sorry.
Council Chair.
Yeah, yeah. Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell.
Thank you. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of Dell Pro Rugged RB14250XTCO from Dell for $2,075.6. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account 101-300-728.000 as outlined in nine G.
Second.
Council Chair.
Motion made by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell, seconded by?
Second.
Coniston.
Seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I have a few items with the police department, actually, I want to discuss, but we'll leave those done, but this. So why are we purchasing one laptop?
You'd have to ask him now because he's no longer.
I don't know who to ask. I don't know what leadership it is. Whoever, you want to speak?
Let me be the one to ask.
I know, I'm just asking. I asked who the motion is for.
Please, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What was the question, sir?
Why do we need one Dell laptop? Or is this a laptop or tablet? I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, so they got anything here?
I said, I'm not sure if it's actually a laptop or a tablet, so.
So it is a laptop. Currently, all of our laptops and all of our squad cars are at end of life. To upgrade them and, and update them, we have to buy one unit. We're going to work with what's called Clemis, our report writing system that we contract with as a city, a lot of cities do. And we're going to send that device over to Clemis so they can test their image on it, make sure it works before we have to invest in 30.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
So my question is that we're buying new laptops, but our fleet is so outdated. Why aren't we updating our fleet first before we update our laptops? Why are we moving, why are we working backwards?
So I would love to do both, but the computers are going to go end of life in October. So those have to be done before anything can be done. I'd love to replace our cars. I'd be more than happy to, but the computers are actually probably four years out of date and should have probably been replaced quite a few years ago, but here we are. So they're going to go end of life in October. It's better to start working on this now before I have to slam Director Cooper with a overnight thing. And we still have to work with a third-party entity with Clemis because we don't control that.
Council Chair.
Council, I'm not done yet. So my other question is that the account that's coming out of, what account is this?
I'm sorry, sir.
What account is this coming out of?
Federal forfeiture, sir. It's a one-time expense. We don't like to do reoccurring expenditures out of forfeiture. This is a perfect opportunity to utilize those funds at a reduced issue to taxpayers.
And is this laptop going to be issued in a patrol vehicle? Or is it going to be on a desk?
Can I ask you one favor, sir? Can you please speak up? I just can't hear you.
I'm saying, is this going to be put in one of the patrol vehicles? Is it going to be inside the police department?
It'll have to go in a patrol vehicle because we have to work on antennas, connectivity, make sure it interfaces right with the electrical system and the, and the platen that it sits on. It's all kind of one unit.
Do we know what car this is going in?
What car would you like it to go in?
I mean, since we got new.
I mean, honestly, probably car 37 is my, is my goal. 37 is our crown jewel of our fleet, and it's also in memoris of Officer Mikowski, so probably 37.
So is that a Tahoe?
No, it's a Ford Explorer.
Is it a new Ford Explorer?
Yeah, it's one of the newest ones we have.
I don't want to put the equipment into an older vehicle.
It's one of the newest Fords we have.
Any other discussion?
That's it, thank you.
Council Chair, thank you, Council Chair. So my question is, how come this is came from the police department and not from the IT Director?
We do it in tandem. It was bought through him. I mean, it would be unfair to ask him to come up here and answer questions about Clemis and, and where the car is going in.
Is IT Director, he's going to oversee the testing for this computer in the vehicle, or they do it?
It's, again, it's a tandem, it's a team effort between us, Director Cooper, and Clemis.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Also, Council Chair.
This is a beta, this is like a pilot to see if this, how this machine operates. If it does, we'll get them for all the other cars. That's correct, sir. And then we would obviously come back with a much larger ask, you know, the whole slew. We would do a presentation of what that would look like.
So I'm sorry, I have one more question. So would the printers and everything work with this laptop, or that would all have to be replaced also?
That's what we have to test as well because the printers are at end of life too.
Any other discussion?
To be honest with you, Council Chair, since we have this open, I would like to also add whatever technology, because this is going to go into a car, then if the officer can't print a ticket, it's useless to have.
Well, let's hear from our IT Director. That's, I mean, you make a good point.
I mean, I'd rather have them purchase the printer also with it, so that it's.
This is a testing computer, Councilman.
Well, again, it comes down to, we'd have to put the image on, see if it does work with our current ones. And then if we do need to buy a printer and work with Clemis, we can do that as well. The printers, if we order one, I think they're seven, six, $700. We can order one and then have it tested pretty quick. I, I, sir, I'd love to go through, because really, the whole.
No, all I'm saying is, not to interrupt you, is what I'm saying is that if we're going to get a laptop, and we're going to put it in a new vehicle to test new technology, we might as well just go ahead and get the printer. I demanded and add the printer to it.
If the printer works.
Yeah. The printer, the director just said, the printers are end of life or beyond life.
I mean, let, let the professional do their work. He's going to test the computer, he's going to test the printer. If it doesn't work, they can come back and add more money. If it doesn't work, they can come back and add more money.
I want to put you right, so a lot of the testing actually is going to be done with Clemis. They already, this is all, all the recommended parts and products from them. They have the printer already with it, so that we can test it. It's not going to be, you know, one of our older printers, it's going to be the ones that they're saying, along with the ID scanner also. So, we're already working towards that.
So, that's all included in this?
No, it, it's not. We're not, we're not looking to make all that purchase, because again, Clemis already has that. That's our coordination with Clemis to go there. This is actually a brand spanking new laptop that literally just came out a couple of months ago. We're going to be one of the first agencies to work with Clemis to move forward with it. And again, to stress it, that all of our prior, all of our laptops or MDCs that are in the cars right now, definitely are end of life by October, and this is a good couple-month process. Because just to make sure we know that this works correctly, to put that order in, it could take, you know, a couple of months to go through and receive them, and then the whole entire stall process. If we don't have these in place by October, actually, our C just will be out of compliance.
Right, so what I'm, I'm not disputing the laptops. What I'm saying is that if we need a car greeter, it's going to take months and a printer. Just amend this motion, you're saying it's six, $700, it's coming from forfeiture fund. Just include the printer and the reader, so that way the car is fully equipped.
We already have the printer. Again, we're using the printer and the ID from Clemis already. This is their recommendation to go...
So, you guys have one already testing?
With, with Clemis, yes, we have it. Like I said, we're going to be with Clemis to do it, sir. Yeah.
All right, okay. Just trying to make it, the car is equipped, synced together, that's all it is.
Councilman Sob feels like spending some money today.
Well, I mean, if it's going to improve the police officer's job, why not? Just as why buy half of a product and you can buy the full product and test it out at once, instead of waiting on parts coming in, is what I'm saying. But since you guys are testing the printer...
We're in coordination with Clemis, they already have all the other parts to help us save this initial cost. And like, like was said, we will be coming back with a larger purchase for all the vehicles later on.
Thank you. Let me go over to Councilman, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, let me go over to Councilman Winslow.
Thank you, Counselor Chair. He answered one of my questions. I asked him, why didn't they, don't they have experience with this laptop already, Clemis? But I guess it's new and they don't, so who are we buying the computer from?
This is due to the Clemis pricing and everything, this is their, this is their computer. So, again, when it comes to this kind of stuff, we are very, very restricted, okay? And I understand you're not seeing the three-quarters. There's really not a way, because again, this is Clemis saying to utilize this, this is what you got to use.
Well, can't they give us, I mean, they're, they know we're going to be buying a lot more, like, you know, 20 of them or 30 or whatever?
This is like a $3,600 laptop that we're getting for like $2,000, sir.
Yeah, well, I mean, still, can't they say, hey, we'll give you this one to test, and we're going to hope and it's going to, everything's going to work and, you know, or give us a, you know, a trial one to use? I mean, make us pay that much just to test it, then we're going to buy a bunch more from them?
Well, no, you don't have to buy that one, but you have to buy something before October.
Yeah, we have, I know.
It's going to be end of life.
We have to buy this one.
Yeah, we're going to buy it.
We're going to have to buy them all.
You're going to have to buy them all.
I know, we have to buy them all, but I'm saying, they know we're going to buy dozens of...
I don't think a Fortune 500 company is going to say, hey, Dearborn Heights, I like you, just take this laptop for free. As great as it sounds.
We're giving it to them to test.
No, they're going to, we're testing them on our cars.
We're coordinating with, we're coordinating with them and everything.
Right, and they're going to test it.
Yes, we are coordinating with them with the testing.
What happens if it doesn't compare, you know, it's not compatible?
Clemis will all, will update their software to make sure it's all compatible.
So, then, then why test it?
Because it's a new product.
It's what you, it's what you do.
They're going to update it anyway, regardless if it works or not, they're going to update it.
Yeah, but they want to understand the system, the new officers want to learn it, they have to test it.
Oh, I know that part, that's not the officers. This ain't nothing to do with the officers using it, it's just to see if it's compatible with Clemis.
No, it has to do with the officers to use this, right?
Very much, this is, this is a computer in the car.
This thing here is only to find out if it's compatible with Clemis.
No, he said it is compatible. This is to learn the new system, so they're testing to learn this.
This is a new, this is from Clemis Director.
In October, you're going to have a brand-new system. And if you're not prepared and being proactive by ordering it by now here in January, February, come October, if you don't have anything planned...
I'm working within the next, I'm hoping, cross my fingers, within the next month, to say, hey, here's our large order with this, because this is a high priority, because this could be turned into a couple-month project to get it all installed. We don't have time to wait.
One of you said they got tests to see if it's compatible.
So...
Yeah.
So, yes, test compatibility, but if it's not, then they will have to reconfigure. It's a partnership between what the agencies that will have, plus what they have. So, it's almost we all have to meet in the middle.
Okay, I'm just, you know...
I get what you're thinking, Councilman. I know you're thinking, let's get it in, let them test it. If it works and everything we like, then we'll pay for it. Let them, just let us, I get what you're thinking. But I don't think, I don't think they're going to give you an Xbox or a Playstation, see if you like it, and then they're going to tell you, all right, go ahead. Counselor Chair? Counselor Chair? If you don't, Councilmen, so the way they're going to do it, they're going to buy this laptop, they're going to try to configure it to work with our vehicles. If it doesn't work, they have to work on the software. So, when they work on the software, the price might change. So, for now, it's only, we're buying one unit, so we can test it.
I understand exactly what they're going to do with it.
Director Cooper?
Correct, sir. I'm just saying, we should get it for free, ourselves. We're going to buy dozens of them.
They're a government entity as well, they're not allowed to just buy things and let us use it.
All right, guys, I'm going to take this to a vote. Motion made by Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilman Constable. Seeing no other discussion, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No. Is that a no?
Yeah.
Nancy Brier?
Yes.
Robert Constable?
Yes.
Denise Menalowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Tom Winslow?
No.
Hassan Amad?
Yes.
Moby Doan?
Yes.
Motion carries, six one.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have ordinances and resolutions. City Engineer Deeb, resolution for abandonment of water main along Warren Avenue.
Counselor Chair?
Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell.
I just want to hear you say that. You got it. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the resolution for the abatement of water main along Warren Avenue for water system improvements, and utilize the Director of Engineering in planning to execute the construction permit as outlined in 11A.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilman Constable. All right, any discussion on this?
Um, hold on a second.
So, Mr. Deeb, are you on? You're in your room?
Yes, sir, I'm on.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb. Can you give us a breakdown of what's going on here?
So, part of the drinking water state revolving fund, the project whereby we're replacing five critical locations that exhibited high water main breaks. The first section, we have five sections that are taking place starting next week, actually, on Tuesday. One section, the water main goes under a county road, and that water main is being abandoned. It's a standard requirement that when you abandon water main, we're going to empty the water, the water main, and actually put flowable fill. So, basically, it's a dead pipe, as opposed to digging up Warren Avenue and removing it. The county is okay with that, the county owns Warren Avenue. However, they expect that municipalities that are abandoning utility sign this kind of an agreement, and this is not no different. And just for the record, this particular section is on Warren, just east of Talagraft, next to my favorite burger store, burger truck. So, yes, you're getting a new water main, sir.
All right, finally, there you go, let's go, Mr. Deeb. See what happens when you, you see what happens when you stay away from bits? Look what happens, great things start happening. You see that?
See, sir.
Little bit of pressure on you, look what you do.
I wanted, I wanted to say, this was the first section we're doing, so...
All right, Mr. Deeb, thank you so much. Motion made by, so, so, any other discussion, I'm sorry.
Counselor Chair, real quick question?
Yes, sir, real quick.
How big's that water main?
Mr. Deeb, probably yawning.
He's muted.
I'm muted again. Sorry. So, there are three different kinds, eight, 10, and 12. This particular one is eight.
Eight inches.
It's an old, old galvanized metal pipe.
Okay, that's all right, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion? Good job, Mr. Deeb, thank you. This is great stuff for the city of Dearborn Heights. The name must be praying for us. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Councilman Sob, resolution regarding in-person work requirement.
Counselor Chair?
Let you read it, Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the following resolution regarding in-person work requirements. Whereas the city of Dearborn Heights is committed to provide an acceptable service to its residents in ensuring the highest level of operational efficiency across all departments. And whereas a consistent policy requiring in-person work for all employees, regardless of department and position, will enhance, enhance organizational performance and transparency. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Dearborn Heights City Council and the city of Dearborn Heights that, one, effective immediately, all city employees of the city of Dearborn Heights, regardless of department or position, shall return to in-person work and shall no longer work remotely or in a semi-remotely capacity. Two, department directors are hereby directed to notify the city council of all positions currently designated as remote or semi-remote and ensure compliance with this resolution. Three, this resolution shall take out, take effect immediately upon adoption, and all department heads are expected to implement and enforce this policy without delay. Four, any expectations to this resolutions must be presented to and approved by city council in writing is outlined in 11B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob on his own resolution, seconded by Councilman Amada, Councilman Sob's resolution, any discussion?
Counselor Chair?
Yep.
Do we have the facilities to accommodate everybody coming back to work?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah. It's just, I don't believe, oh, for discussion, I just don't believe it's fair for some people in some departments or agencies that we have, people go off, if nobody's in the office, they're working out of home. So, I believe that if there's a spa for any department that needs an exception, write in writing, and the council will decide, and I believe there will be some expectation, some expectations coming from certain departments that we'll make exceptions on. But I believe certain people should be working in person, effective immediately.
Agreed. Counselor Chair?
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. I'm not sure if we have so many employees that work remotely, is the HR Director on?
He may be in his office. Want to call him? Mariana? I think he's in his office. Mariana's like Mr. Deeb, everything.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Sorry, good evening, yes.
How was the baby?
The baby's one-year-old. We do not have that many employees that work remote, but we do have a few, and we do not have offices for them. So, that is one of the concerns that we have with regards to this request. But in addition, honestly, this is part of the administration's responsibility, not the council's. I don't know if there can be some clarification with regards to, to who is the authority with regards to authorizing that type of work. So, that would just be my recommendation, is it's really not that many people, but we do not have offices for them. If you do stop that, does that include the council? Because you all are technically working remote. And does that mean that we take out access for everybody to remote in, what happens with emergencies? There are a lot of consequences with regards to, to this motion that need to be considered. So, I would request that we postpone this request and have a conversation with regards to what the concerns are, and we can move forward from there.
And can you give us an examples, like who's working remotely, what department?
Cable.
Cable?
Counselor Chair?
Hang on, let him finish.
Just a cable, just a cable department?
Again, there's a few here and there. I can discuss that further with you, if you want me to provide a list. But for the most part, again, editing takes an extensive amount of time. So, a lot of our cable department works remotely, a lot of our communications department works remotely. A lot of people that are in different departments log in to do things off their houses, myself included. Again, there's a lot of work that I need to do off work hours that I do at home. But I'm here most of the time, right?
You can stop you from working from home, you can still work from home, it's just, you can't have people that are working from home in this resolution. I think he's saying it's four days out of the week, you're only working, you're only going to be here four days out of the week. So, if you're at home three days out of the week, and you're here one day out of the week, that's...
So, again, there are some employees that would be affected for that.
Like who?
I just gave you examples.
Hang on, I got a question for you. I got a question for you.
Yes.
This is my question. And I think you can answer this, because this is where it's stemming from, and I'm just going to address the elephant. All right, is there anybody that works in somewhat shape or form in the Police Department, working from home remotely?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not one? Not even our four-year coordinator? Not working from home?
Nobody. Again, do they take work home? Absolutely, but...
Yeah, that's, that's normal. I take work home.
Exactly, that's just part of the way things are. But again, that's a conversation that we can address, preferably in private. I would recommend, based on the conversations that were taken today, that... Today, there were a lot of conversations with regards to personnel. If you have concerns about the Police Department, Open Meetings Act does provide an exemption for personnel discussions to be taken in a closed session, rather than in a public forum, that protects the city, and I recommend that you take advantage of that opportunity in order to not put the city in any liability.
Counselor Chair?
Yes, I did.
Hang on, hang on, you didn't, stop. You spoke, he spoke.
I did not speak yet.
You did.
No, I read my own resolution.
Okay, Councilman, I might jump in.
Counselor Chair? Let Council, Councilman Sob go, and I'll go after him.
No, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. You know, my thing is, if you're a first-line employee, you should be in City Hall. We're not first-line employees, the customers, I mean, not customers. The residents know how to get ahold of us, and actually, if I had an office, I would go to it. But I, you know, I know Justice Center has openings, but we've never been offered an office to go to. IT, I know that you travel to wherever he's at, go to different places, and so, that's not really working remotely, that's moving around to where you're needed. So, I think if you're a frontline employee, you know, as normally, at City Hall, you should be at City Hall. City Hall should be there and fully functioning, and not just reachable by phone remotely.
But I, you know, my, my, okay, I'm going to have a little Councilman Sob next, before I...
Just to clarify, so, with Mariana, you're saying, well, council doesn't have offices? We're, we're part-time employees, we're not full-time, that's number one. Number two, you might want to check, as the Chief of Staff, on behalf of the administration, there are employees in the Police Department that work directly from home. And if we hire them and don't have an office, then that's poor, that's poor management on the administration, not on the council. That's number one. Number two, when somebody files a request for something and nobody's there, or goes there and nobody's there, that's a problem. Are you going to provide that person's address where they're staying at home to go knock on that person? If we're paying them as a full-time employee, I don't know, when you say decision-making, the decision-making falls on positions on council. If we approve a position, we expect that person to be working in the city, not from another city, not remotely. Unless, unless you say, when you bring a position, that this position's remote. These positions that we are talking about are not remote positions.
Again, this is the first we're hearing about this. If you have any concerns, please bring it to our attention. We'd be happy to respond to any concerns, and I would again recommend that you have this conversation in private.
Number, no, no, this is public information.
Personnel items are not public.
This is not, I'm, 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 I'm not naming people by name. This is not personnel, these are positions.
Point of order.
Counselor Chair? I'm not done.
I know you're not done, hang on. I'm just saying, point of order. You're speaking. Let him finish speaking, let him finish speaking. Let me be able to say that you're speaking, please. Thank you. Hear me out, now go ahead.
Number two of this resolution says, department directors are hereby directed to notify city council of all positions currently designated as remote or semi-remote to ensure compliance with this resolution.
I would seek legal advice with regards to the authority that the council has to make that request.
Agreed.
Okay, but here's my response to you. If these positions are remotely, and they're not working in the city, the next resolution I'm bringing is to defund these positions. That's the authority the council has.
Counselor Chair?
Hang on, let Councilman Sob finish.
Because now you're trying to argue with me, telling me, we don't have offices, so why are we hiring people, overstaffing the city, but not providing service to residents?
Counselor Chair?
Counselor Chair?
I, I, please. That's, that's my question.
So, most of the positions that I'm referring to have been in existence for decades. Again, if you have additional positions that you're concerned about, we would be happy to address them.
This is across the city. This is not targeting one person, like you're saying, personnel file. We're not targeting individuals. I'm going after positions that we approved to be full-time city employees, not to work out of a different state, or a different, or a different part of the state, to work here in the city of Dearborn Heights. And if we have to get IP addresses where the laptops are being logged in on a daily basis, that's easily available also.
Again, Counselor Chair, I have no idea what you're talking about. If you want to clarify that, please have a conversation with me.
This resolution is put on the table for a vote, I'd like to take it a vote and make this resolution.
Counselor Chair.
I know, I know. Roger, calm down. I got it, I'm here. He's saying that there's a vote on the table, I'm still going to allow discussions to continue.
I appreciate it, thank you, Counselor Chair.
Before I get to you.
All I was going to say is, before COVID, everybody was in the office, there was nobody working remotely that I was aware of, and I was on council back then. Were you aware of it? Councilman Constant, did you know of anybody working remotely? I didn't either, that didn't even exist till COVID. Now we need to bring everybody back where they belong.
Counselor Chair.
I'm going to go to Roger first, and I'm going to go to Lynn, and I'm going to go to you.
Counselor Chair, I appreciate Mr. Sab, his concern for the, and Councilwoman Maxwell. However, I think it's vague. I think what I'm hearing is, I know a lot of, because I work, I work my full time, I work 50 hours, I put about another 20, 2, 3 in the morning when I'm reviewing things, and other people, other directors and stuff work in addition. So if you're saying they can't work remotely, you're shutting them down. They, some of them come in on Friday, but they're still working, they're not getting, they're checking things.
That's what we're saying.
So, I know, I know, but the way it's worded, it's, it's, it's like a punishment or a negative infraction towards the clerk's office that does a lot of work outside in addition to what they do there. The ordinance department, they do a lot of work outside. The foyer you mentioned, yeah, she's there, I'm there with her, office is next door, but she's sometimes doing the discovery 11, 12, 2:00 in the morning sometimes, I get emails. She's working remotely in addition to working. So I think the resolution is very, it's vague, it's not, and the Chief of Staff was correct, it needs to be, what evidence are we pointing to, who are we pointing to? Let's, let's bring it to administration's attention. Individuals that you've identified, I don't know anybody in the police department, I agree with the Chief of Staff, I don't know anyone in the buildings, but, you know, I've only been here two and a half years, but I do see our workers diligently at all the windows, buildings, water, treasurer, the clerk's office, the buildings department, they are there, and some may be out on leave. There are unions considerations that we have to factor in, because some work Tuesday to Friday, some work Monday through Thursday. I, I don't know what you're actually asking to stop or punish, but I don't think the workers, there's 300, all the unions we've dealt with, they are diligent, and they are hard workers, and they want to work, they come in to work. On Tuesdays, some were complaining they had the day off because of the cold, and they came back in on Wednesday. You know, I was, I was so impressed, you know, and I think that how we, and his intention is excellent, I just think that how it needs to be looked at a little bit more and more specifically.
Counselor Chair.
Thank you, Roger, you done?
I am, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Chair, so Mr. Farinha, Councilman Sab, he's not saying, he's basically saying you can work remotely, but if you have to, but he wants all the employees that are supposed to have in-person jobs to be in person. And you just said, you said whoever you named before or the employee is working in person at the police department?
I don't know anyone in particular who's not working, doing their jobs at the police department. However, what I am saying is.
So you're not aware of any employees in the police department that are working 100% remotely?
I don't know anybody working 100% remotely in the police department. I don't know how you can do your job remotely in the police department, because I have to deal with all their issues in the police department. I deal with their foyer requests, I deal with their evidence issues, I deal with stop and risks, I deal with the court as well, and the 20th District Court, and that's packed five days a week now, we increased it three days, the workload for me. So I think that how, I think it's vague and it's confusing how it's worded, because even when people go on vacation, they work, and I don't want it to be read that way, and the impression is that, no, you can't work remotely.
No, no, I mean, that's not what he's saying, he's saying like everybody in any position that has to be in person, it has to be in person, but if they have to do extra work, work remotely, whatever, that's not, you know, they can, but that's not what he's saying. He's saying you have to report to work from 9:00 to 5:00, there's actual stuff they have to do remotely, then they have to do remotely.
The administration is accountable for it, that's the, that's the function of administration, make sure those people come to work.
Thank you very much.
And if they don't, HR steps in.
Thank you, Mr. Farinha. Mr. Farinha, can I ask you the same question? Are you aware of any positions in the police department that they're working remotely? I mean, you stayed there for about a month, have you noticed anything?
Fully remotely?
Fully remotely?
No, not fully remotely.
Okay.
Okay, semi-remotely?
Semi-remotely.
Who?
Objection. I don't want any names. You can talk about it afterwards, but I don't, I don't know who it is, you can tell us, but.
First of all, point of order, Roger.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to stop that.
Roger, I do appreciate, I'm a 50-year-old man, I've been a detective for 30 years, I was not going to bring up names, so you need to give me a chance.
I'm a lawyer 39 years.
You're a lawyer, but I got ethics too.
Address us, please.
I am not going to bring up the person's name, but there is a person that doesn't work fully, semi-remotely, he works semi-remotely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farinha.
Okay, I, I would like to speak on this a little bit. I agree, wholeheartedly, employee by the city, you're taking, you know, you're getting paid to the taxpayers, help to work. If you don't like your 9:00 job, you want to find a remote job, go find a different job. I'm sure somebody is willing and able, but I also think that there are certain things and certain powers of this administration that need to have control of. There are certain things that the clerk should have its control on, certain things the treasurer should have control on, and there's certain things that the mayor should have control on. I also don't think that we can, you know, but I also don't think we can have somebody in the police department that works semi-remotely. Not okay. I'm 100% in supporting this, but even when it says, any exception of the resolution must be presented to and approved by the City Council in writing, I, you know, there's a few things that I think needs to be adjusted, I think this needs to be tightened up a little bit, in my personal opinion, because we're also not here to micromanage. We're also not going to say, you can come work for the city of Dearborn Heights and you can, you know, work remotely, that might be in somebody's contract, we don't know that. HR maybe may have agreed to that, now they come back and, you know, come at us. We don't know, because after, and the reality is, the residents at home probably don't know, and those who are watching in person, contracts are given all the time, paid for and given to, given to employees without our approval. We never approved that contract. And then when we do get a contract, it's like seven, eight, nine, 10, 12 months after it, kind of sound like David Bello when I'm talking, but you know, seven, eight, nine, 10 months after that, you know, we look at it, we're like, wow, this guy's got a severance, this guy, this guy was making, this position was like $60,000, they're not making $150,000. You know, so it's all crazy, but the reality is, I think, you know, maybe we can, you know, start it off by saying, hey, if you work in the police department, you should be able to, and you have a position in the police department, you need to work fully from, you need to work fully from the police department, or you need to be at work. I think that's what this resolution can say, that we can start kind of going over and seeing where it's at. Certain people in the water department are, I mean, again, I don't know who works from home and who doesn't. I know that there were a few people that reached out to me at City Hall and were like, hey, this resolution, like, I think even some in the clerk's office, like, hey, I work from home, you know, I need to come get a written letter from the City Council that Mike is not show for two weeks to get this thing approved, and you guys might deny me? You know, there's certain things that like we have to be able to give and take on things, and I'm not saying that, oh, we're going to favor the clerk's department, we're not going to favor the police department. What we're saying is, we need to be able to look at this little by little, and I think we're escaping from Councilman Sab, because him and I had a conversation. He said, an anonymous, he got an anonymous text that said, hey, a certain person works in the police department, works remotely from home, not even in the same state, they're in a completely different state. And maybe, Mariana, you don't know, maybe Roger doesn't know, but I mean, honestly, you're not in your head, but the reality is, this information was given to us. We are just trying to protect the residents, we're trying to make sure the taxpayer dollars are going far enough, you know? We're not saying that this person is not, we're just saying, we want to make sure we're putting our best foot forward. I'm, I'm just kind of thinking out loud, like, we don't want to micromanage, but we also don't want people to take advantage of our, of our city.
Just three points.
Counsel, Counselor Chair, I'm going to raise my objection to him being interfering with me as Corporation Counsel.
Roger.
On everything, Debbie.
Thank you.
Grant speech to whoever gets it.
Okay. One, the only thing that I would want to remind you of is that if a special accommodation has ended up being granted because of a person's disability, remote work may be something that is required under state and federal disability law, and there should be some exception with respect to that. Two, there was a comment made that you do not have the authority to potentially direct stuff, you have the authority under the charter to direct the mayor to do certain things and thus the administration to do those things. And the other thing that you need to be mindful of is whether or not the individuals are employees, traditional employees, you know, W-2 employees as opposed to independent contractors, because if they are independent contractors, then that won't necessarily apply. So hopefully that's helpful.
Counselor Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, we already work, the city works 40 weeks only, and to say that somebody comes in one day to have a three-day week and a four-day week at home, no. And if I understand American Disability Act, and if anybody's disabled and everything, but also our police department is ADA compliant also, so I understand unless it's, it's, I'm not a doctor or health professional to make such a decision, but I'm not, there's no way in shape or form, if you get us a letter or some kind of disability, HR says, we're not going to, we're not going to hold that person against their disability.
There is one issue, though. When it comes to FMLA and ADA issues, this, these things are generally on a need-to-know basis. Some people may remember there are issues between the council and Mayor Plutko with regard to certain things, and that certain accommodations had to be made in terms of providing the information, because a need-to-know basis doesn't mean that, like, to find out that someone has a disabled son or whatever who needs to end up having special things done with regard to the FMLA. And that shouldn't really come to the council, that should stay with the administration.
HR, administration, but my thing also, at the federal level, it was just an executive order that all federal employees have to go back to work in person immediately.
Sure, and I'm sure Mr., you know, President Trump would recognize and receive from any legal counsel, you know, direction or advice that essentially you need to take into account the disability status of people in any sort of request.
This is, this is, this resolution is not an attack on anybody disabled, anybody with health issues. This is that we pay, residents pay somebody for, to do a job, do a service here in the city.
Maybe just adjust the language a little bit.
Yeah, we can, and I'm fully for that, but I just, yeah, but I fully believe that if, especially if you have a laptop that has sensitive information on it, it shouldn't be work done from home, God knows who Joe and Bob are around it, you know? It's just that I believe certain positions got to be done out of the city, because last I remember is that we weren't allowed to walk through the police department, because if we looked at a laptop the wrong way, we'd be violating state and federal law, but yet we can take a laptop home, and how do I know you're not having a party of 50 people around it?
Good point.
Good point.
Yeah, okay, so look, I think I agree, I think Councilman Sab, I believe Councilman Sab makes some very valid points on this. I think this is something that we can table, maybe I have our special legal counsel kind of fix it up, word it up a little bit better for us, bring it back onto the next city council meeting. Cool? Would you like to do that, refer that back?
But, Council Chair.
Yeah.
I'd like to table this, but I'd like to talk on Monday, I'd want every department had to tell us how many personnel in that department.
But we can, you can email, or no, you can email HR and figure that out.
Okay.
Thank you. So motion, do you care to refer this back to Councilman Sab, and then bring it back after it's been worded properly?
I'll refer it back and bring it back.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Sab, seconded by.
Second?
Seconded by Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please stay at aye to refer.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion taken. Next up, we have 11C, Council Chairman Baydoun, incorporation council resolution regarding short-term rentals.
Counselor Chair.
Councilwoman.
I'd like to make the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approves the resolution regarding short-term rentals, resolving to enforce ordinance violations on existing Airbnb's currently existing in the city of Dearborn Heights is outlined in 11C.
Support.
Motion made by Councilwoman Nancy, seconded by Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell. Any discussion? I will have a few quick discussions on this, Roger, I know you and I kind of went back and forth, and I want to give, you know, the administration the opportunity to work on these things when requested on. But I'll tell you, I was not happy with this resolution. You know, and every time I kind of like reached out, you said it's still being worked on, you know, Mr., I think it was like a Mr. Hashem, he's working on it. I looked about it, I looked, I looked at it a little bit, you know, we don't give any like hard slap tickets, we don't say who's enforcing this, we don't come back and say, hey, you know what, to the residents that showed up talking and complaining, you know, Barb Renner and Angela Vanegas who's been, you know, bleeding of emotions, not sarcasm, I say emotion, I say things like, we need this to be resolved, you know, we're tired of this, we don't want this anymore, we don't want commercial renters in our community, we're not a destination place, we're a small bedroom community. And I really feel like I gave the opportunity for the administration to work on this resolution, to be able to enforce a hefty fine, to go after all those that were illegally soliciting Airbnb rentals in Dearborn Heights, illegal, because the council never approved it. And I don't care what Airbnb, what laws they have, bull crap, get them out of here, I'm willing to take that lawsuit. And mayors put us through more lawsuits than any city has ever seen in just this four years. I'll take out the lawsuit, I'll, I, you, I will say, sue me personally, don't sue the city. But I will tell you.
May I respond?
The, it's, what is happening with this Airbnb resolution, the fact that we didn't come back and tackle this, and I emailed you three, four, five times on this, and anytime you emailed me, I emailed, I responded back instantly. I mean, granted, the treasurer sent me like 30 emails, so I was, I was looking through those, and then when I would see Rogers, I responded instantly. Not that I didn't respond to the treasurer's instantly, I did, but I want you to know this is something that's extremely important, not just to myself, but to a lot of residents, and I feel like we really dropped the ball on this, and I, and you kind of squint like that a little bit, but, so do you see sometimes why when we give the opportunity to the administration, we feel like they don't take us serious enough? I would have sent this to special legal counsel, I promise you, this would have been ratified, forwarded, and been done with today.
You know, Counselor Chair, if I may speak.
Let me finish.
You know, I, I, I.
Yeah, go ahead.
With some of the insults, but they're rude, but you're wrong, and I'm going to say why, okay? First of all, I, with, with the residents, I took the time to look at the neighbors that they claimed, and some of those deeds on those properties have Airbnbs not allowed in the city of Dearborn Heights. I pulled those properties and cannot be used as an Airbnb. So I took the time to look and see what those deeds and what those restrictions are. I looked at us avoiding a lawsuit by saying, I'm not going to try to do an ordinance with his ordinances already existing that need to be enforced. Now, when you come and say $1,500, we just slammed them on that, you have ordinance that have penalties currently, like we did in 2008, 2023, when we amended all the traffic, sorry, the ordinances that the city had that had not been amended in 28, 20 years, we made an amendment to the ordinance and of those existing ordinances to raise the fees, and we put the prices, and did it so it can go into the municipal code properly. So this is a process that you were avoiding and not listening to me when I'm trying to get across to you. Now, when I put in the resolution, it was a question whether you have the authority to force the administration to force this enforcement. In any case, I'm saying you have an existing ordinances that you can use. Now, Airbnbs, what about VRBOs? I did check on those, there's at least three or four of those. I went on November 12th, looked at the, at the council, when I put together a 16-page short-term rental ordinance that I brought to the planning commission three times, that got approved, and went through the details of how to regulate these short-term rentals. I say, short-term rentals, it's Airbnbs, VRBOs, other places, and what if someone rents part of their house and goes down to Florida and rents it out? And there's some people in there that are crazy, there's a lot of considerations that we have to look at and consider, and some people have, they live in the house, but they rent out part of it to other people there. Those are all going to be affected. When I said 304, we got it from Mr. Sab, there's more. And when you have a resolution in Lansing looking at putting Airbnbs in cities, we're going to eventually may have to have a short-term rental ordinance ready to go. We do, we have one approved by a planning commission that has to go back if we look at it again, but when you talk about, and you look at my ordinance, it talked about the advertising, it talked about them not living in the place, I pulled out properties to show that some of our deeds have restrictions already in there. Now, how are you going to have your ordinance department go after at least 304 houses, pulling all the records, title, identifying the ownership of it, verifying the addresses? That's a lot of work and a lot of money that has to be done. So therefore, ordinance has to be prepared. You can't just spontaneously irresponsibly say, I want to get rid of 304 because two people complained. You have to be able to, Counsel Chair, you have to be able to articulate a plan and a process, and that's what I'm trying to get across to you. Yes, this resolution that you have in front of you, it says, Dearborn Heights City Council's Resolution to Enforce Ordinance Violations on Existing Airbnbs Currently Existing in the City of Dearborn Heights, Airbnbs and VRBOs, whereas certificate of occupants issued by our buildings department are only issued to owner-occupied dwellings, therefore, all owners of these Airbnbs are in violation and misrepresented in their applications the intended use of their properties and tickets, to such effect shall be issued. Well, that puts you legally in standing to go after them and to stop immediately the process by even getting a court hearing on that. Whereas mandated in our current rental ordinances, any party renting any property in the city of Dearborn Heights has to obtain a rental certificate for a three-year period identifying each and every renter with their information. So every time they rent, if they get rid of this person, they have to go back and follow the ordinance that exists and get the information, pay the permit fees, and are subject to the pains and penalties associated as landlords to all our ordinance violations. Any owner living 30 miles outside of the city of Dearborn Heights pursuant to Section 7.620A has to designate an individual responsible for overseeing the rental property. Now, whereas our existing Dearborn Heights ordinance supersedes any contractual arrangement between the owners and Corporation Airbnb or VRBOs, this ordinance trumps that, and that's what we have in here. And then whereas the city of Dearborn Heights was not notified of any current contractual application of the individual owners, that gives us further standing to bring the lawsuit and to stop the existing business without putting an ordinance that gets overturned, like the Sky Lounge ordinance that we passed that was rejected by the Third Circuit Court.
No, but it's a pass.
Now, now, when I put forward this, and, and I didn't interrupt you, sir, I think what I'm trying to say is, you have a 16-page short-term ordinance that's actually, the lawyers recommend we use that one, you don't want to use it, so I've come up with a tentative plan for you to go forward. I looked at Mr. Wenzel's, and I thank him for writing his, but I think this is more to the point. You can reject it. All I can do is bring it forward to you and ask you to see it. And when you ask me to do things, I respond, and every one of those people that called in and spoke up, I took the time to meet with ordinance, pull those properties, and check out what the, what the standing is, if they're actually renters, Airbnb's. And I think that how that's part of what you, you expect me to do, and I even took and went back over that November 12th meeting where Angela stood up with that, oh, we have a short-term rental ordinance. I checked with the assessors' office, I checked with the clerk's office, I checked with the buildings department, we don't have one. There are four cities that have one in, in the state of Michigan. So when I'm saying to you that how you say, oh, you didn't do your work, or administration didn't respond, that's a false statement, sir, and it's an insulting statement, no disrespect to you. But I'm trying to say that how I take what you say seriously, I act on it right away, there's a lot of work that went into this, and there's still a lot of work to do.
Thank you. I want to. Thank you so much. I do want to tell you, all I said was I gave you the opportunity. I let you talk, and you notice I didn't say a word. I don't think anybody interrupted you. I just want you to know, I gave you the opportunity, and I didn't feel like you put your best foot forward, is all I said. I didn't say you didn't do the job. I just said, resolution isn't to, to what we, we asked you to do was, we don't want Airbnb's, plain and simple. We don't want Airbnb's, hit them with a big enforcement, to sit there and say, well, you're going to have to call ordinance, you're going to have to pull out all these documents. Good news is Airbnb already did the work for you. They gave you all the addresses that's Airbnb.
Council Chair.
Right about, send everybody else 300 to swap. That's 300 homes? We just made $300,000 right there, bam, we enforce it properly. Then we don't want to look at it like that. Now we're holding people feet to the ground, to the fire. It's okay.
Councilwoman, go ahead.
Okay, whether it's an Airbnb, VRBO, or any other short-term rental through the internet, we all know what it's about. It's all the same. Dearborn Heights is not a vacation destination. There are plenty of hotels, motels, and extended-stay hotels in the area to meet the needs of the public. Airbnb rentals have proven to be a problem in our community, a bad problem. It's, it's more a party destination for the local communities because they would obviously get kicked out of a normal hotel doing what they do in these homes. It's our time to challenge the state law. I'm sure there are other communities that feel the same as us, but maybe we need to be a leader and see how it goes. You know, it's hard enough trying to keep track of our regular rentals, but to keep track of a short-term rental that's, we're already overworked, that department. We, we need to do something. It's just not good for our community, it's not good for our kids to see what some of these Airbnb's are doing. And I have been in touch with residents that, it's, it's pretty bad. I wouldn't want it next door to me, and I feel for them.
Council Chair.
Council Chair.
Are you also here, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Council Chair. I'm going to go to Councilman Sob.
So, Council Chair, we've had this discussion over and over and over about this. The residents have spoke. The residents are angry. Airbnb has reached out multiple times to us via email, right or wrong?
Yeah.
And every time I've emailed them back, I said, give me stats. Give me this, they, they don't take the time to send it back, so, so truly, what I would like to put, is a resolution banning Airbnb, period, in the city.
Yes.
That's it. I'm not going to, I know, I know.
That's what we requested from Roger.
But since they keep dragging their feet on it, I say that we amend this, flat-out say it, and clarify, and like Councilwoman Denise Maxwell said.
Menelowski Maxwell.
Menelowski Maxwell said, I think we, we can challenge this in court because honestly, number one, public safety, we don't have enough officers, you got drug dealers coming into the city selling drugs out of these homes, you got people throwing weekend parties and drug parties over the weekends, and if the city's going to say, no, you're profiling, no, we're not profiling, because if I was that person that lived next door to an Airbnb that they were having party and they had kids and they're finding needles outside and everything, that's a concern.
Hazard to society.
Hazard to society. And these, these homeowners are making a profit off of it, great, and so is Airbnb. What's the city benefiting? And no disrespect to Roger, Roger did put an effort in it, but I don't think he put his best effort in it. But I was reading on one of them, you cannot throw one of his comments into one of the resolutions they put, you cannot flush toilet paper down toilets. Who's going to supervise the toilets flushing in these Airbnb? Like, it doesn't make sense. It's either we enforce it, what, what the residents want, and that's what you're here for, and let them challenge us in court. Well, we'll be the city, time to put on our big shoes. We've done it before, we'll do it again. It's just, the police officers themselves tell you, they're disastrous. People calling about parking, people parking in people's driveways, beer cans, liquor bottles on the streets, every two days it's something different. Every single meeting, I gotta, I mean, Barb is on here, we're going to have to hear her in about 10 minutes. I mean.
She's not speaking tonight. She said she's going to hold off.
Honestly, I, I truly believe the only thing they should go forward on to Airbnb is a flat-out no.
Yeah, like I said, it could be any of us that could have it next door to us tomorrow.
Thank you, hold on, Councilwoman.
That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Councilman Ahmad is next.
Thank you, Council Chair. I mean, I just wanted to mention, like, I prefer if we can refrain from mentioning all these businesses and just call them short-term rentals. Don't call, don't mention those names. I mean, like I said before, it's been a double-edged sword for myself, because I'm a real estate broker, and I've been an advocate for, for homeowners' right, that the homeowner can rent their property, but I do understand, and I'm with you guys, that I think our city is not made for short-term rentals. At the same time, I was going to push for maybe, for restriction, maybe for a three-month rent minimum, but the thing is, I don't think we have the manpower to enforce those restrictions. So, I mean, I, I do, I mean, I, I wish there was a solution, but I think either we do that, like, put our restriction for three months rent minimum, this is what keep the right for the homeowner to maybe lease their property for three months, or just like you guys said, or, or recommend it just to, put our resolution just to ban it completely from the city.
Just Council Chair, one question.
Council Chair. Hang on, guys. Just, 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 just real quick, just real quick.
Councilman, one source next, and then you can ask your question.
Thank you. First of all, I wrote a resolution, we waited for something for a long time. I wrote something overnight, it's not completely filled where it should be, but I left enough in there for conversation for us to tweak it and make fines, adjustments for fines and things of that nature, and my resolution is a resolution to stop Airbnb's, and there's, this is an ordinance for Airbnb's or an ordinance to outlaw them, and obviously, everybody read my, my resolution because they've been making comments about it. Let me read really quickly my read, it says, "The city of Dearborn Heights is known as a bedroom community. In our wonderful city, we have families raising children in neighborhoods that they expect to be safe for them to raise their children. A neighborhood where you know your neighbors and can trust them and count on them for their support when needed. However, in many cases, our neighborhoods are becoming saturated with for-profit short-term rentals, Airbnb's, homes bought by investors. Because of the growing concern of many of our residents, I am introducing the following resolution." It says, "Whereas many of our homes in Dearborn Heights are being bought by investors and not homeowners for the purpose of renting them short-term. Whereas many of these short-term rentals, renters use the property for illegal and illicit activities. Whereas maintenance and upkeep on many of these short-term renters of these properties fall short of acceptable according to our city ordinances. Whereas parking becomes an issue due to short-term renters hosting parties and in some cases, drug trafficking. Whereas there is no ordinance in the city of Dearborn Heights allowing short-term rentals of residential properties. Let it be resolved immediately on approval of this resolution by the city of Dearborn Heights City Council. It will become illegal to operate short-term rental properties in the city of Dearborn Heights. Let it be resolved that immediately on approval of this resolution by the city of Dearborn Heights City Council, a moratorium of short-term rental properties take effect immediately. Let it be resolved that the city of Dearborn Heights City Council recommends that our ordinance department, police department, and residents work together to identify these homes and stop this unlawful action." And that's, that's to stop it right now. I mean, today, it's illegal to stop it? We, we made a, we made a motion over a year ago to hire three new ordinance officers, and I specified, I wanted two of them just for rental properties. And over the last, over a year, how many ordinance officers did the administration hire? One. And it, and it's, and they're not specified for rental properties at all. So this, the, the problem is, oh, we can't identify this, it's because no one's following our, 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 our rules. We made, we said hire three, they hired one. I mean, that's a start. Two more, two more ordinance officers right now, now, one person here could say that, that wouldn't help.
We're about to start budget season again. You know what's going to happen with that money you budgeted? It's going to go back in the general fund.
What happened to it last year?
Council Chair.
You know, I mean, this is.
The mayor created illegal positions with it.
Yeah, I mean, this, I mean, this, my resolution is not to have an ordinance, I mean, that's something, I don't even want an ordinance on short-term rental. I, I want to have zero short-term rental. I don't care, you know, renting a property, and we can set the, the limits for not, not less than three months, not less than six months. I don't care about people coming in from Greenfield Village that want a place to stay, or people who have, you know, hospitals, there's, there's plenty of places all around they, they can stay at, the hospitals will provide for them.
I got a quick question before, actually, Councilman Sob, you were next, and then Councilman Conson, and then I'll ask my question.
So I was referring to Councilman Ahmad's three, three-month term. I can give you a contract for three months and say, hey, you're moving out in two weeks. I'll sign another contract with Tom, say, you want to move in in two weeks.
I agree.
I mean, no, no.
No, that's not the way to do it. I mean, definitely, every three months you need to have the city inspected again, but I don't think we have the manpower to do it and enforce it, that's why I was saying it's not going to work.
Airbnb is going to provide you with the information, the software of where these are going to be, you're just going to, we're going to, we're going to make ordinance go out to these properties that we find online, if the city's not going to do it, and issue the tickets.
I don't know if we can make, I don't think we can make ordinance do it. I don't, I mean, they want to.
It'd be a direction to do it.
This guy, where's this guy been the last year and a half?
Awesome.
This is what I will say, actually, I'm sorry. Councilman Conson, you were next.
Thank you, Council Chair. And I don't want to see these short-term rentals, especially in the South End, it's, they're a problem, no question about it. However, however, anytime you pass anything that interferes with a property owner's right to do what they want to do with their property, you've got to do it correctly. And, and Councilman Ahmad and the other Realtors will tell us, there's looming in Lansing, these are for homeowners that have cottage properties and so forth, that want to all make them into timeshares, legislation to prohibit cities from regulating at all short-term rentals. I, I read over the ordinance, and it has all the bells and whistles, and they, it does have to go to the planning commission. It's, it's easy to say, well, we should just pass an ordinance that says, you know, no short-term rentals, it's a felony to have a short-term rental in the city of Dearborn Heights, it's, it's just not going to hold up, and I hate to use it, but like, the, the Sky Lounge ordinance was an example.
We, we never, this city council body here, maybe one or two, did not approve that. There was actually a resolution by the mayor on that, that was the mayor, right? Was that right, clerk?
It was Amir Macklet.
I said, but it was Bill Basie at the time, I'm counsel. Correct, and you know, we're going to, we're going to use his calls to learn from, but I, I would like to, if that's okay with the council, I'd like to ask, especially with council, what are your thoughts on this?
Unfortunately, I haven't reviewed any of this stuff, so my thoughts would be very limited. You very well might have existing ordinances that address these issues. I'd be very careful in terms of what Councilman Wenzel ended up saying, because there are things that are potentially residential property that may indeed permit this under existing ordinances, and anything that ends up making a change in a land use resolution or has to end up going to the planning commission first, and then ends up coming back or comes to the council. And it should be done by, by an ordinance, not just by a resolution. I would also note one other thing, Mr. Farina indicated that the fine schedule was changed, that their ordinance was, was adopted to do that. City clerk, I don't believe that happened. As a matter of fact, when I worked on the Veterans Affairs ordinance, I noted that it actually wasn't done. Yeah, I think it was just a motion. You actually have to have an ordinance change, so.
There was an ordinance change, Council Chair.
There, there, there wasn't, there wasn't actually.
There was Mr. Dishrun.
Hold on, hold on, I'll give you a moment.
Point of order.
Yeah, I mean, if, 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 if the city clerk could clarify, but I don't think that there was. So hopefully, that was, that's helpful, but if you wanted me to look at something, I could, but then again, that's all I know based on my limited knowledge of what's going on. Thank you.
Council Chair.
I was next. Okay, no, I just wanted to say, you know, the little bit that I know about these short-term rentals, nobody said anything positive, nothing positive, and it is coming possibly to a home next to any one of us. We've got residents out here, next week, somebody else might have it. I mean, if, if, it needs to be nipped right now and stopped so it doesn't get any worse now, it's out of hand already.
300, 300 homes in Dearborn Heights.
That's a lot.
That's actually me, 600 residents, because it's adjacent to left and right, unless.
And behind you.
And behind you.
And in front.
900.
Parking in the whole street.
1,800. A million. Lou told me to stop, cut it.
Council Chair, as a, as a housekeeping matter, I would ask, and again, I said to Mr. Wenzel beforehand, with all due respect to him, not to target renters as opposed to everyone in the city, because they're renters doesn't mean they're bad people, or because they're renters doesn't mean that they're not going to keep up their properties. And I'm not talking short-term, but I, I think that, I've heard that a lot, I just want to refrain and just warn for us not to separate and, and target one group of, of people within the city. War versus city of East Cleveland.
I mean, look, I, I mean.
It's illegal, you can't sell drugs out of.
Point of order, guys, point of order. Council Chair. Council Chair. Councilman Conson, were you done?
I was done.
Okay.
What, you know, what's the ordinance on operating a business out of your home? There's got to be something like that.
Yeah, this probably would not fit an appropriate home occupation. There's probably existing ordinances that address this, you could potentially tweak those and update the fine schedule to actually put more teeth into it, and then it would be a matter of directing the administration to actually follow up on this, which again, you have the authority to do.
Council Chair. I'd like to make a recommendation for the special legal counsel to look at this further before we make a vote on this, just to be on the safe side.
Council Chair.
Yeah. Council Chair, I, I had one more thing, it, I mean. We have, we have a motion on the table, let's, let's Nancy.
Would you like to table it and refer it to the special legal counsel to look further into it?
Yeah, let's go ahead and table it.
Well, no, table it to, to especially, okay, yeah, table it, and then we'll, and direct special legal counsel to come up with some type of ordinance that's basically, even if it has to go in front of the planning commission, that's fine, but we basically want to abandon, kind of like what Councilman Wenzel said, short-term rental, I don't want to name the company, and I'm willing to take the personal law, let them come in.
I am too.
Can we put a, 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 immediate moratorium on it? I mean, can we pass?
That's a good idea, next meeting.
Let's get this, so how are you going to, Council Chair, Council Chair.
So I wouldn't want to.
Point of order.
Council Chair. I'm addressing the Council Chair.
Thank you.
Again, I've asked him not to go around my position.
Yep.
Whoever is sitting here, but are, are you saying you want to designate immediate enforcement on the buildings and the ordinances? Are we prepared to do that? And have we talked with ordinance and done any kind of research? And then the other thing I would like to ask.
The audience, please.
Councilwoman Maxwell, and I understand what you're saying, do we have any, I have not seen any, any empirical evidence, police reports, or any documentation that these 304 businesses are causing havoc in the city, other than two people calling in?
You know, if there was half a person.
But, but, you know what? And, 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 I didn't finish.
If there was half a person, it would still be enough.
I didn't finish, Council, Council Chair, because when I was in, before the planning commission, and Councilman Sob was there, the, 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 the building that was going up prior to me speaking on the rental, short-term rental ordinance, had about 60 people present. Not one stayed and objected to the short-term rental, rental ordinance before the planning commission. All left. Only Mr. Sob and Angela were the only two that objected.
Thank you, thank you. I was there, actually, I objected as well, so it was three.
Well, the three of you, not the 60 that were there prior.
Thank you, thank you.
But you can take on the lawsuit.
My question is Nancy said she's here to, Councilwoman Breyer, I don't know, I wrote names, I usually write Breyer, so forgive me, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Breyer wants to go ahead and table this, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Do you second the table?
Yes, who is Denise?
No. Oh, it was Maxwell. I'm sorry. I don't know why I'm, I'm reading my eyes. Guys, I've been fasting all day. We broke our fastings today on some pizza, but I am starving, can't wait to go home. Haven't eaten since last night. So, so do you, do you second it?
I sure do.
Can we also, when we do that, refer special legal counsel to work on this for us?
Yeah.
Okay, is everybody on board with that?
Yes.
No? Any other discussion hearing none? All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Please, Gary, we want this to be done and over with. Next up, we have the first reading for ordinance.
D or E?
Yeah, 11D, guys, 11D.
D, D, I'm sorry.
Council Chair.
First reading of the proposed ordinance of H-2501 Veteran Affairs Commission.
Council Chair.
I'll give back.
Councilwoman Breyer.
I'd like to recommend a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council move the proposed ordinance H-25-01, an ordinance of the City of Dearborn Heights establishing the Veteran Affairs Commission, providing for its composition, terms, and administrative support, defining its purpose, duties, and responsibilities, and regulating its meetings. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Dearborn Heights, that the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn Heights, Michigan is hereby amended by adding Division Nine under Chapter Two, Article Six, as well as by adding a section to be number two-dash-595. Be considered read for the first time as outlined in 11D.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constance. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Yes, sir, Councilman. First of all, thank you for, you know, having this.
Done properly.
Done properly, and the fact that this was done in one week, my, I'd like to applaud the, the, Special Legal Counsel for getting it done, and it's pretty thorough. I, at first I was gonna say, let's, let's make this a, you know, first and a second reading, or, but I think there's some other things that, some people that called me today and they said, well, hey, I wish this would happen. Some people are involved with Veterans Affairs throughout the city.
This is the first reading.
Yeah, I know, I'm saying, so, like I said, I wasn't gonna say let's make it the first and second reading, you know, and pass it tonight, but after hearing the different comments, it's very, for the short amount of time that this was done in, it's very thorough.
Did you read the backup? Because that is great.
Yeah.
It is thorough.
Yeah.
I said, there he is.
Yeah.
You know?
My hat goes off, and that's the kind of, you know, that's what, when we ask for something, then, you know, any, any department or anybody, that's what we like to see, you know, something that, when we ask for it. We, we ask for it for January 21st, and we got it January 21st.
Yeah, you know what's crazy, Councilman? You oppose special legal counsel. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold, I'm gonna hold you to that.
I didn't oppose him, I opposed the salary, the pay, the 100,000, I wanted, see, I have a good memory, I have a great memory.
Yes, you've got a great memory, yeah, I can't believe you forgot that you opposed it. I may even put it in the video, but I went back and I watched it. He said, I wasn't at the study session, I would have opposed it. Yeah, I was, I watched it, I went back and I played, I replayed it.
What I said was, I don't, I didn't approve of the 100,000, I wanted it reduced to 50,000.
You want me to lose the 50,000, we're in federal court right now, what are you talking about? You need to go up another 100,000. Your resolution alone was like 10 grand. I'm just joking. I am completely kidding, it's 10, it's 10 o'clock.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Council Chair.
All right, thank you so much.
I'm sorry for opposing the corporate, corporate special counsel.
No, you don't gotta apologize.
That's fine.
I'm just bothering you.
I see this bothers you, I know that, so I'm sorry.
Motion made by the Honorable Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by the Honorable Councilman Constance. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Next up, we have walked on, Council Number 11E, which is Councilman Ahmad, who I think, believe it's just a received footnote and file, or it is a. Councilman Wenzel, you wanna see where he's at?
Uh, no, not really. You know, while, while we're waiting for him, I, I, you know, I just wanna say we have some veterans out here in the audience, and, you know. Phil Smith, I know Phil, and I don't know the other gentlemen, what, what's your name? What's your name?
Alexander James, Appleton Street.
Okay, and are, are you, are you, are you one of the pointies for the commission?
I don't know who's on the commission.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Phil Smith has, has been nominated for the.
He's, that's him.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think he knows.
And just the fact that we have, you know, we have these gentlemen here, and Phil is, is a valuable asset to this commission, he knows a lot. What, what was your position you had with veterans?
I was the director for Vietnam Veterans of America, Veterans Benefits for the State of New York.
Couldn't ask for a better person on the commission.
We did appeals, I mean, everything, so it didn't cost a better sum.
And Phil also runs, runs Toys for Tots.
He's seven years in the Marine Corps.
Yeah, God bless you, Phil.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks to both these gentlemen for coming and staying the whole evening. It's not over yet, though. We have 11E resolution to reaffirm by Councilman Ahmad, who's gonna read it?
Council Chair, one second. Seems like I lost it.
There it is.
No way.
No?
You emailed it. Yeah, I did. Let me see if it's here. What the heck happened here? Okay, just let me go to the email. Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I, so it's a motion to uphold Resolution 24-232 of Councilman Saab and ensure compliance or fiscal oversight. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council reaffirms its commitment to Resolution 24-232 passed on May 28, 2024, which mandates that all budgeted funds are to be used strictly for their designated purposes and that any reallocation of these funds undergoes proper oversight and prior approval by city council. In order to ensure that the fiduciary duties of the administration, treasurer, and comptroller are upheld, I request that these individuals follow the stipulation outlined in Resolution 24-232. Specifically, no fund shall be relocated from one department, project, or position to another without the express approval of the city council in accordance with the resolution. Any proposal for the reallocation of funds must be submitted to city council for review and receive a majority vote before being enacted. I ask that the administration, treasurer, and comptroller comply with this resolution and ensure that any such reallocations are brought before the city council for proper review and approval moving forward.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad on 11E, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion?
Well, Council Chair, well, like, like the motion says, basically, this is just reaffirm, whatever was passed on before, back in May of 2024, that no, no funds can be relocated from one position to another without council approval, just to be fiscally responsible.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have 11F, Councilman Wenzel, walking on for reaffirmant of 24330, regarding Hassan Jamal.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
We don't have anything written up here, but I, I just want the Honorable Council Chair and members to kindly, I'm kindly requesting your support and approval of the resolution that I presented a few weeks ago, and there were a couple little minor issues in it, and I'm just re-submitting it now with a couple alterations.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman, you wanna read it?
Yeah, sure.
Councilman, well, let's read it first.
Okay. A, a motion to refer the City Council Resolution 24-330, stated below in this resol, in this document, to the Special Counsel for the City Council Attorney Gary Miyaki, and authorize him to take all necessary actions, including court procedures, to enforce its terms for the back pay from 7/1/2023 to 6/30/2024, suit to, to the CDBG staff, to all CDBG staff accordingly. And in that motion, Motion 24-330, there's a motion by Councilman Wenzel, seconded by Councilman Ahmad, to approve and distribute raises that were voted on at several prior meetings to the CDBG Department as follows. Director raised a 90,000 in annual salary, rent coordinator, $30, $38 an hour, part-time position, project coordinator, $35 part-time position, program director, $25 an hour, part-time position. And this also would include that this pay be retroactive from July 1st, 2023, when it was originally approved by city council. Now, this is something, I'm not asking something new to, for us to approve, this was approved by city council, and to the best of my knowledge, and I've talked to people that are involved, they had, have never received this benefit that city council approved.
I agree, Councilman, thank you so much for reaffirming this and sending it and updating it properly. This motion was already voted on, this is just simply, you know, with, with its fixes and changes, so.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Wenzel, seconded by Councilman Saab.
Council Chair.
Any discussion on this?
Yes, Council Chair, but basically, Councilman Wenzel is asking us to hire special legal counsel Gary to go after the administration for such.
If, if they don't do it, if they don't follow and comply.
Oh, I, I still, I still stand, like last time, I have some issues with this. I mean, if I wanna go ahead and hire a special legal counsel, I would hire him for all the resolution and the motion we passed before that the administration did not implement. But I do have a question, if you don't mind, Council Chair, to Mr. Miyaki. Is it true Section 4.9 of the City Charter says that the administration can overrule when it comes to salaries increase, whatever the council.
Not overrule, but the mayor has the authority to end up setting the compensation for employees within budgeted amounts. So just because you appropriate something does not necessarily mean that it has to end up being spent. So part of it is a question of what that language specifically says that Councilman Wenzel has ended up indicating, and I, I wouldn't want to mislead you to say that potentially, you know, the mayor doesn't have a legitimate basis, even though he very well might have misled this honorable body, but he may have a legal defense under the City Charter to not have increased compensation. In which case, if indeed that appears to be the case, then I would have to come back before you and indicate to you what my findings were under the circumstances.
Thank you, sir.
Council Chair.
Council Chair, I would like to recommend maybe tabling this motion for the time being and refer it to special legal counsel to look further into it before we can make a vote on it.
Council Chair.
I'm, hang on, I'm gonna go to Roger, and I'm gonna go to Councilman Constance, and I'm gonna let Councilman Ahmad know that we still have a motion on the table.
Your resolution asks for the mayor's office administration to give you a summary, which the mayor did in a timely fashion, it was due today, and it says additionally, Resolution 24330 was the provision that such raises be applied retroactively from July 1st, 2023 going forward. As you are well aware, Section 4.9 of the City of Dearborn Heights Charter deserves the right to approve salary increases proposed by the city's legislative body, the council, to the appointing body, the mayor's office. As you know, such increases were never approved, the mayor has the final decision, that was not allowed or approved. And if you want to, I think this was further, should the city retroactively apply a raise to your position, to his position, Mr. Jamal's, and not to other department head positions? And I get that you're saying to all of them, but the same argument prevails, the mayor has the final decision, it's within the budget. The city could be subjected to liability for other discrimination, for showing favoritism, because Mr. Jamal took this position, this proposal to the pension board last Tuesday, which was rejected or sent to their lawyers to give another opinion on giving him this money as it affects a pension that he's claiming. So I think it, it is complicated. I do object to you constantly marginalizing me and avoiding using me by the charter, I'm not, not personal, I know you're not, it's not personal, but the position of, of this, on the 15 point, 5.13 of the charter, says the city council, corporation council, has the, the right to do all of this work, and you're avoiding it, especially as a city employee. So I just want to make sure it's on the record, we will be opposing it, obviously, the administration will oppose it because you're out of your lane and you're not following the directions.
Thank you, Mr. For, any more discussion on this?
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Chair, Porton. Thank you. And I think a lot of us know Hassan Jamal and love him and the job he did, we just have to be cautious appointing us and having city funds possibly paying for a now unfortunately former employee bringing any action against the city. I, it's, and I've known Hassan Jamal for a long time, and he's, in, in any event, it's, it may, in my mind, be incumbent upon him to take, you know, his private causes of action.
Correct.
And I, I don't know that, you know, we, we could pass a resolution or something that says, you know, we want him hired back, or he never should have been fired, or something like that, but as far as appointing somebody, special legal counsel for him, I think we're, we're getting into murky waters. Go ahead, Gary.
Thank you, Council Chair. Thank you, Councilman Wenzel.
Okay, yeah, I was just gonna, gonna comment. I would not do anything that would be considered to be representing Mr. Jamal under any circumstances.
Correct, that's not why, yeah, that's not why I recommended, recommended looking at him.
It's purely a matter of enforcing what it is that the council did.
Correct.
Nothing beyond that.
Correct.
So just, just to clarify.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Council Chair. And I, I think that may be allowable, in other words, to, for him to get his back pay or whatever else.
Yeah, and if, if I make an, an assessment, maybe he's not entitled to this, I am not going to end up doing anything except if it appears to be legally required, and would, would raise the issue with your honorable body and a privileged communication.
Mr. Miyaki, the only thing I recommend, my recommendation was just to look to see if the mayor has the final say whether to give that bonus or not. That's all.
Yeah, and I, and I would.
Not to represent anybody.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's all, you know, what I recommended, going to you, it's basically just to see if the mayor has the final say in, in, you know, on giving that bonuses or not, or that, or that salary increase.
Yeah, that level of compensation.
Correct. Councilman Saab?
Yes, I, and I respect Mr. Jamal's time while he was at city and everything, but honestly, that would fall on Mr. Jamal to get his own legal counsel, and if he sues the city and he wins his position, he can also go for legal fees too. I don't think we, as a council body, should be hiring an attorney on his behalf to get his pay, that's something between him and the city, and honestly, I believe it's a conflict for us to get involved with an attorney for him on his behalf. So I truly believe that Mr. Jamal should obtain legal representation, and if, if, if he's owed the money and he sues the city, and his legal fees will be included in his lawsuit. Other than that, I just don't think we should be, that would open, you know, the Pandora Box to every resolution, every employee getting removed, that's, it's, it's just not right.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman Constance, I mean, Councilman Wenzel.
Thank you. A couple things, you know, I don't know if Mr. Miyaki said there might be something in the charter, but if, if, if this being HUD money has anything to do with it, you know, this is HUD money, it's not taxpayer, Dearborn Heights City taxpayer money, so that might be something to look into. And every, every, last time we brought this up, this is not, we're not asking for someone to represent a certain person or a position, we're asking Gary Miyaki to, to defend us for passing a motion that was ignored. And we talked about this so much in the past years, and what can we do when, when the administration refuses to follow our orders, when we pass a motion? And, you know, no, a way we do this, we do this, is I'm doing this, this, I'm, I'm trying something here, I'm trying something. This has nothing to do with a person or this, you know, this particular motion that was passed, this is, I want someone to defend me and these other six people here and saying, hey, we passed this motion, we need it enforced. Forget about the, the money, the, the people, the positions, we were ignored, we passed a motion, we were ignored, we need representation, make sure that this motion and every motion from now on gets taken care of the way we directed it to be taken care of.
Council Chair.
Yep.
Council, Councilman Wenzel, I, like I said, I would support a motion, a broad motion that would cover everything we, we pass to be enforced and implemented, but not to name any department, any employees, or any previous employees. But otherwise, I won't be in support of naming anybody or any department.
Well, this is a start.
Councilman Saab said, we're not here to just hire attorneys for previous, you know, they have to, I guess, take their own battle, but, I mean, I, I would support a motion that would, you know, enforce all the resolution that we passed before to be implemented by administration.
Okay, well, name them. Which ones are they? I got one right here.
We have, no, I mean, all of them.
Like, which ones are they? I've got one, I named that, it's right here, 24-330.
So why don't we do this, if that's okay? Why don't we just have a special legal counsel look into it and bring it back to us? That's it? We're not saying no to it. We're not saying yes. We can table this. Gary, this is just me saying, another thing, it looks like we're just throwing everything on your table.
Yeah. And I appreciate the confidence, but at the same time, you know, it's a shame that we're at this point.
Yes, exactly.
Council chair.
Yeah.
So we have a motion on the table, which is the resolution. And it sounded like there was some discussion to amend that motion.
And refer it to special legal counsel.
To table and refer it to special legal counsel.
Correct.
Okay, so what I would.
Council, do you want to, you want to amend your motion?
I'll amend my motion to stay, say that.
And then, Councilman.
Councilman Saab, do you second that?
Yes.
And then the request from Councilman Wenzel that he provide us with that resolution. So that we can put it in the motion.
Okay, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
You guys have it. Motion carries.
Unanimous. Next up, final one to go. 11G, Councilman Saab, setting aside funds for special legal counsel for director, chief, interim chief Farhat. Actually, I'm going to listen to Gary read it for us first.
Okay, I've come up with some proposed language while we're sitting here. It would be motion by whoever, seconded by whoever, to prove the retention of special legal counsel to represent interim police chief Hussein Farhat related to an investigation being undertaken of him by the city administration with the legal services performed to pertain to any and all official capacities in which Mr. Farhat has been employed or is employed, or has acted or is acting in the City of Dearborn Heights Police Department. Additionally, the scope of legal services provided by this special legal counsel shall not include any legal services related to any possible claim against the city or anyone affiliated with the city. Further, the rate to be paid to this special legal counsel shall not exceed blank dollars per hour, and payment for such service shall be subject to approval by the city council. Maybe like 250 would probably, because it's kind of for a limited scope, would probably not be an unreasonable rate. But whatever he says, or whatever you come up with.
Our rate is 170.
And I can give this, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to give it to you.
Our rate, our rate that we approve by city council is 175. So as much as I love Mr. Farhat and who he chooses, that is our city across the board rate.
I'll write it in.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by.
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? I have some things to say. I didn't say much because I knew we had a lot of people in the room earlier, and I wasn't looking for a whole show. But I can tell you my thoughts and understanding of what took place. Reality is, the last city council meeting, myself, Councilman Saab, Councilman Ahmad, Councilman Wenzel, Councilwoman Minalowski Maxwell, Councilwoman Breyer, and Councilman Conson, including our treasurer, Lisa Exclayen, our treasurer, our clerk, Lencina, respected people from the community, Sue Kaminsky, Angela Vanegas, Justine Janoon, and I'm sure other people. And Vince, all said great things about Mr. Farhat. And what is the common denominator with all these people? The mayor don't like him. Less than, less than, before our next city council meeting, this man was demoted. He was put under investigation. You know what Mr. Farhat was really doing? Was trying to unite. You know how many times he picked up the phone and called me and said to me, you need to make right, you need to put our differences aside? I told him he was blind. And he said, no, I'm not. I said, okay. Well, he went through the crossfires.
He had the crashing.
Yeah, he was blind and he crashed. But the reality is, this man was really looking to do the right thing. He saw that there was a lot of distress in our police department. Saw a lot of distress. And he said, you know what? I realized, I'm not going to play the game of going to get somebody from outside. I'm going to go in, I'm going to, I'm going to try to fight and help the command officers, bring morale. I'm going to try to point and bring a couple of guys up there with me to help me out and make them feel like, yes, you're going to grow in this police department again. Still, he got slapped in the head. And he was told, you're under investigation. He was told, why did you do that? He was told, why are you doing ticket fixing? The same thing that was said about this council. I can tell you right now, and anybody that wants to FOIA me, go ahead. I was sent an email for ticket fixing from our administration. I was, me. They said, hey, I watched the news, this was a year ago. One year ago, officer emailed me and said, this was the ticket fix that I did for the mayor. You want to talk about ticket fixing? That's where the ticket fixing was being done. Stop, 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 stop with the bull. This council's not corrupt. This council's not doing things illegal. For five years, we've heard our police department is corrupt, it's under investigation, I can't talk about it. Stop it, Councilman. We're not making, we're not making a joke. The reality is, people's lives, people's families, people's children are watching these meetings. And you know what they're saying? What did my dad do? What did my mother do? Why were they let go? Why were they here for 15 years and went out to Auburn Hills, or they went out to Trenton, or they went out to all these other cities? Dearborn Heights is a destination place. We still are. I'm not going to allow one man to destroy our community. And I'm going to tell you right now how it is. I don't care who I'm bothering. I don't care who doesn't like to hear it. Mr. Farhat was going to be the change for Dearborn Heights. He really was. This man, and not to say that the other police chiefs in the past weren't, but I can tell you that at least, I've received at least 30 phone calls, 3-0, from police officers, the regular patrol and command, who said, man, I liked this guy. I had residents call me and tell me, shame on you for not coming to his swearing in. I felt like crap. Lynn and I, we had, we shed tears how we weren't going to go. Denise almost went. I called her and I told her, what are you doing? You can't go. Yet, you know, the reality is, the position stands against what we are currently in court for. The position currently stands against the morale of our police department. As much as I respected him, and as soon as he became the police chief, interim police chief, I call him police chief, and I still think he's our police chief. Because that's what Dearborn Heights wanted. That's what the residents, the council, the mayor, and the command officers and regular officers. So standing before you today, I'm always going to stand for you whenever you're doing right, whether it's you or anybody else. Today, your standing is a man that's being oppressed and injustice, and I'm going to stand by you, Mr. Farhat. So I hope this passes tonight.
Council chair.
Councilman.
So first of all, thanks, thank you, Mr. Mayaki, for writing this out. So I want to say a few things about Mr. Farhat, too. So we wrote an email that Mr. Farhat sent, but that was not the only email we received. Received other emails from other employees, same thing. The threats against employees to harm them, same playbook that was used against a sergeant we have in the city a few years ago, said, oh, he's ticket fixing. We had over 25 officers, the mayor said, the DOJ is investigating them. Not one single charge or complaint has ever been bought forward. We asked the mayor, bring us these millions of dollars the city's lost in ticket fixing. Nothing was ever bought up. We asked the mayor, that these racist cops, who are they? He's never brung one person forward. But the fact that Mayor Bazey used Mr. Farhat, and that's the word I'm going to use, used him as a PR stunt in 2024, to get him to leave his job, Roger said last week, oh, I fought, I fought for him. And to demote him because he stood up for what's right and would not be the yes man, like a lot of these, a lot of people in this administration are. He stood for what's right. He stood against the status quo. He stood for uniting the city together. That went against the mayor's agenda. And I know the circumstances he's put under, he got a legal counsel. For the mayor to put out a statement that he's not under investigation, the mayor is a liar. That's all he is. He doesn't, he can't even show up to a meeting to face his residents. Not us, the residents. And it's a shame. Every, every meeting, it's an excuse after excuse. But this year, what happened to Mr. Farhat was a, it's retaliation. Mr. Farhat got thrown into an investigation. I've asked the mayor, the administration, to investigate people impersonating police officers, people pulling, somebody that's not a police officer that's pulling residents over, somebody that's responding to scenes with lights and sirens that's not unco certified, a person doing investigations against elected officials and city officials that has no investigative authority in the state of Michigan. Where are those investigations? The mayor's an email says I'm going to bring a third party like he did a couple of years ago. He brought his private investigator friend. That was detailed and thorough. Where's that investigation? No. The FBI, MSP, Wayne County Prosecutor's Office, their integrity unit, the AG's office, that's who's going to be looking into this. And then I'm only going to be looking into the mayor. Because I'll tell you one thing, and I'm going to put this on the record for you, Mr. Farhat, there is a police officer in this city that's assigned, that has an assigned duty, that knew about what was going to happen to you a month in advance. It went against his union, it went against the process, knowing what was going to happen to you, and he played along for somebody else to come in. And just know, eventually that person would come in, and I don't care who that person is. But he's the mayor's go-to guy. And the mayor hired a new deputy chief. We've never met him. He's never made a press release. He's never emailed us about him. I want to know where this person's salary is coming from, who's paying him, because we never approved it, the union never approved it, I guess Roger approved it. I mean, where's the checks and balance? Because this man was put in a position that, in a, in a position that we support, the mayor has the authority to put in. And the unions came and said, hey, we're willing to work with this guy. We think he's, he's a change for the city. The mayor all of a sudden said, hey, no, that's not going to happen. He demotes him. And I told Mr. Farhat from day one, and he called, Mr. Farhat, as deputy chief, I can't support you. It's a position that goes against our charter, against the union contracts, and the mayor did not go through the process. I will never say it's the individual. We're against the process. But Mayor Bazey put out a statement saying that interim chief Farhat came in, his exact press release, a swearing in would happen later on in the month.
February 6.
And what happened? We go get two new positions, two new positions created that don't exist. And secondly, actually, an officer just walked in right there. And I'm going to put something on the record, and I've reached out to HR about this. This man was investigated for something over two years ago, as a supervisor. The police that was in the incident was cleared of all charges by a jury. And he got suspended, and it's on his record, and to this day, they have not removed it. Another sergeant Bazey came to Act 78, it was in his favor. But this man right here, apparently, he took the hit for it because the mayor asked him to. And I just want to know, why wasn't there an investigation into targeting him? Everybody goes silent when investigations into the administration are asked, come up. The mayor wants to bring his own third or private investigators. To get to our point, I believe, Mr. Farhat, you were targeted because you were trying to do right and not follow the mayor's agenda. And that's it. And that's the bottom line of it.
Council chair.
Yep.
Thank you. Just really quick, I would like to read a social media post by the mayor, where he says, to clarify any false narratives and misinformation, there has been no recent firing, demotion, or investigation of our PD leadership, including the interim chief, deputy chief, or director, which is totally untrue. We just heard from interim chief Farhat that he's under investigation.
He received it through an email.
And he received it through an email. And he goes on to say, after a two-year invited partnership with the Department of Justice cops program in collaboration with our Dearborn Heights PD transition team, what happened of being under investigation from the DOJ? Now it's partnership? Well, enough is enough, Mr. Mayor. Enough is enough. Thank you, Council chair.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad, to support legal counsel not to exceed $170 an hour, $175 an hour, for special legal counsel whom he uses, based on what Gary said. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? You guys have it. You have been granted. Thank you, Mr. Farhat. See, there you need a whole army here. All right, next up, business license renewal for Boneyard.
Council chair.
Councilwoman Minalowski Maxwell.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the business license renewal for Boneyard located at 7010 North Telegraph, as outlined in 13A.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Minalowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we're going to have comments from council members. I think we've heard a lot, so let's make this one quick, simple, short, 1043. Seeing none.
Council chair, just only one announcement. I failed last time to mention about disabled veterans exemption, tax exemption. For any real, real estate property used and owned as a homestead by disabled veteran who was discharged from the Armed Forces of the United States under honorable conditions, or his or her unmarried survivor spouse, they can apply for tax exemption for their real estate property. So you could do that anytime in the year, but I suggest do it ASAP before the martial board of review. And have a nice evening, everyone. Thank you, Council chair.
Thank you so much.
Council chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
I think tomorrow is payday.
Well, the money's taken out tomorrow.
Money's taken out tomorrow.
Hang on, hang on, Councilor, I'll let you speak.
You can step up here for a second.
Hang on, Councilman, I want you to speak first. I know what's going on here, but just go to the chair.
Yeah.
What would you like to be done here?
I was just wondering if the treasurer got the breakdown or the backup on the payroll instead of just the lump sum request. That's one thing I wanted to.
You want to ask her a question? Go ahead.
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, please.
Okay, no, I did not get that today.
Thank you.
So I'm still waiting on the warrant. It would come with the warrant, but I was not provided that today. But I will tell you that Paycom, who provides our payroll services, will take those funds out of the account tomorrow morning. So that's why I need the warrant today, and I did not get it.
So what, sorry.
I don't even have a signed warrant.
Okay, Councilman Wenzel, what's your next question?
Yeah, okay, I mean, I mean, what do we do? Is this another thing we got to get Gary Mayaki involved in? You know, what's this going to stop? I mean, this is, they're asking her to transfer money or basically write a check for a million dollars plus and not know where the money's going. It's going to payroll, but you don't know if employee A is getting this.
Mariana, can you speak to, can you speak to that a little bit?
I mean, we asked, we asked for this several times.
Is the controller on?
We need a comptroller. That's her job.
I know.
Not anybody else.
The administration.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Again, this is currently being looked into with our Paycom system to see if we can produce that report for the comptroller, because it's not a simple report. Again, like each department head approves their department and reviews those employees there. It's all an online system. So it's not something that is easy to print with the information that she's requiring. So I know that it was being looked at by HR to see if we can make that separation by the departments and pull the information.
Before you leave out of here, real quick, Councilman Wenzel, if that's okay with you, I can just say something.
Yeah, sure. I asked a couple of my friends, I called Kevin Coleman from Westland, I said, hey, I got a question for you. He said, yeah. I said, when you guys send over payroll, when you guys send over payroll to your, like, finance person, how do they get it? I said, what do you mean? They get it. They do it. I said, no, no, like, I mean, you redact all the private information, but like, you show like, hey, we're paying the treasurer, we're paying the clerk, we're paying this person, we're paying that person. He said, yeah, absolutely. What are you talking about? I go, is it unusual to just get one lump sum? He said, I worked in the state, in the state house. He said, we have hundreds and thousands of employees, and they get all breakdowns going through property being disposed. So for us to go in as a one lump sum and say, here, write a check for a million dollars? Let me tell you what's going on here, Mariana. And I mean this with the utmost respect, not towards you. You're doing, I know you're just here to answer and really do what's being asked from the administration. This council body is not taking any more of this hidden agenda bull crap that is trying to be ran on us anymore. Those days are like two years ago. If you got the memo, the mayor hasn't been to a meeting because we're not taking the bull anymore. So the reality is, this is what we need to do. If you want us to pay, excuse my language, by the way, I'm so sorry, I'm not swearing at you, I'm just saying like, we're not taking it. But if you want us to pay the money for people's payroll, give the treasurer, the elected treasurer, the right information. And forget if you don't want to respect the elected treasurer. Give this body that voted unanimously, including Councilwoman Breyer and Councilman Conson, that specifically saying, we want to see what we're paying for. Because we know in the past, HR director got a $2,500 bonus. We know in the past, a $5,000 bonus. We know in the past, certain people in the police department got raises where they weren't supposed to receive without the approval of this body. What we're saying is just stop. I even asked Joe Musalem, I said, hey, how do you guys pay everybody in the school district? He said, you're joking with me. I said, we get one lump sum. By the way, I ask these questions. I ask them in different, in different various places. The state house does it. I mean, you know, the different municipalities do it. The school district does it. Why is Dearborn Heights think that like, everything's so secretive? Like, everybody's so paranoid, who sees who gets paid what? It's not that serious. The reality is, you work for a government entity. Everything is public record. I can today pick up the phone, call my attorney and say, FOIA all the pays for everybody. And you're going to charge the FOIA. And you're gonna charge the FOIA, you're gonna charge me into the FOIA coordinator to do all this stuff? Then you're gonna have to give all that information to the public because you must give the information to the public at the end of the year. Everybody's gonna find out. That's how we know how, you know, one of the officers made $276,000. Granted, he had time to be able to do overtime and nobody wanted to work. Great for him. So just.
Again, as you recall, when we provided that information, it is a lengthy process to gather all that information. What is happening is not that this information is not being provided. There's a duplication of efforts. And the financial person responsible in the city to authorize all of those payments is the comptroller, who does have access to the payroll system and reviews it. You're asking for a duplication of those efforts, which we are trying to accommodate. Now, again, with regards to the salaries and bonuses that you keep referring to, it is up to the mayor to provide salaries as long as it is within the budget allocated by the council.
No, it's not.
So I do not understand why this continues to be an issue.
The $5,000 was.
That is exactly the item that we refer to today and the authority that is in question with regards to Mr. Jamal. So again, I believe that perhaps you need clarity with regards to that item. The way that the council interprets it is different than the way that administration is interpreted and the way that it is written in the charter. So I think that, again, that perhaps needs clarification. And until we get that, I believe that there's going to continue to be an impasse with regards to who has authority over salaries and who doesn't.
Counselor Chair, that's a different subject.
She's right. I love you, Roger.
Love you.
I love you so much.
Wait, wait, wait. Miyaki.
Point of order, guys, hold on.
Wait, wait, Miyaki.
Hold on, point of order, point of order. I just want you to know, Roger, if she's right, you're the most loyal person I've ever met in my life. And I wish I had you as a friend to be loyal to me like that, I swear.
I'm a loyal brother. I don't.
You're a very good man, Roger.
I'm just trying to do the best I can for you.
I'm gonna take two seconds.
But you can talk. Yes, I just wanted to note that what Ms. Hernandez said with regard to staying within the budgets and retroactive pay, that three individuals in the police department ended up receiving pay beyond their budgeted amounts above, over and above their budgeted amounts by over $20,000.
Counselor Chair, I'm gonna object. If he's doing anything to violate this injunction, he's putting the city further at risk and damn it.
Which is probably what he's doing.
I know, I want to make sure that you're not, I mean, you would know best.
Oh, I do know. And basically, everything that I'm saying right now, you are absolutely entitled to and it can end up being said. These things were done retroactively per the terms of agreements that were obtained under FOIA before there was any litigation.
Did not approve.
And you did not approve. $90,000, $90,000, 104,800 or $600 increases to 117, 117, and I believe 125, 128. Yeah.
116, 116, 127.
Yeah, so I mean. Yeah, so, you know, I mean, it 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 doesn't seem that the administration is being consistent on this point. Thank you.
Counselor Chair.
So let, I'm gonna let Councilman Wansel kind of finish. But you know, you're gonna, you're just giving your briefing everybody.
I said one thing and I was. But you know, I'm just, you know, I'm assuming that every pay period is not exactly the same depending. So what they do is they go A plus B plus C plus D, and A is this. They know it's on the computer someplace and they they could break that down like that. All this computer stuff that we bought and paid for? I mean, either that or we get rid of that stuff. We need something better than what we've got. But that being.
Mariana's laughing, I think she's agreeing with you there, Counselor.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, somebody should.
Nothing, point of order, nothing from the audience.
I can call them right now and say, hey, give 10 minutes, give me a printout. There should be a printout of everybody's pay for that thing. I mean, what are we paying for? Just all this elaborate equipment and people? But anyway, okay, next. You know, in 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 church.
Guys, nothing from the audience, please.
One of the scripture readings this past week was scripture where they say, there's a time to live, a time to die, a time to reap, a time to sow, a time to be quiet, a time to speak out. And that hit me, and that's why I was so vocal at the beginning of the meeting today. Because several things have been coming my way that I just said, you know what? I've bitten my tongue for years and years. Things have happened in this administration. Mariana witnesses one big one in her office about a year or so ago that I'll never forget. Roger was on the phone at that time. He witnessed that, I never brought it up. This was so, this this blew my mind, what this administration was saying to me. And he witnessed it too. And I, if we need to, we'd take him to court. We'd reduce the word on the Bible about it. So I I just said, you know what? They said, God told me, he said, Tom, it's time to speak. So I did speak on that. And that's why I was so vocal about asking for the mayor's recognition. Because not only that, that it's dozens and dozens, if not hundreds of things that he has done to me personally, to my nonprofit, things, lies that he spread about me. Speaking of my nonprofit, Jamie's Kids, we have several things. We do a thing called Family Fun, where we put on events for families, totally free, food, games, everything. We do neighbor labor, where we do yard work, rake leaves, shovel snow. We put on events for employees, picnics. Not one time did the administration say, hey, Tom, you guys are doing something really nice for the community. How can we help you? Can we do something for you? Maybe I can turn you on to a vendor that can help you out? Not one time. On the contrary, they tried to sabotage one of my events by sending an email out to every city employee when I, when this this body here sponsored an employee company picnic, they sent out an email saying, this is not a city sponsored event, almost threatening employees. If you show up, you're in trouble. Because of all the employees, you know, the 400 employees or whatever we have, 40 showed up. And then I was talking to, right afterwards, I was talking to a high ranking police official. And I said, hey, why didn't you show up? He goes, are you effing kidding me? After, I'm gonna bring my family to a function that you support and you are defunding us? And I said, what are you talking about? But anyway, that being said, this past couple of weeks, we start shoveling snow for senior citizens, veterans, and disabled members of our community. There was one Facebook post put on that day, there's several of them. But the first one, I got a call a half hour later after it was posted. This guy says, hey, when do you need me? I I'm willing to shovel. You tell me where to go, what to do, I'll do it. And that, and that was Hussein Farhat. I mean, the whole, for years and years, this administration didn't offer a penny for any of these activities. The second he heard about it, I'm there, Tom. Where do you need me? You know, and he was very sincere about it. So I mean, that that that's what we're dealing with here. And speaking of snowshoe, if anybody wants to volunteer for shoveling snow, get a hold of me. I'll put you on the list. So but anyway, you know, I I just, I just had to, you know, I just had to.
Can you put my house on the list?
Yeah, sure.
This is gonna be a good list this time.
But we do have quite a few. We do have quite a few on the list.
All right, any other council members? Councilman, are you done?
Um, let's see.
11 o'clock.
It's 11 o'clock, time. Come on. I've been up since 5:00 AM.
Are you done, Councilman?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, for coming, this big audience.
Any, anybody else have a.
Counsel. All right, we're gonna move it over to the administration. I'm gonna, I was gonna let Mr. McCaffrey go because I feel like he's been here waiting. But go ahead.
Doesn't matter. One of you.
Mr. McCaffrey. I just want to talk about a couple of items. First off, Wednesday, February 12th, from 4:00 to 5:00 PM, will be a Valentine's Day crowd at Carolyn Kennedy Library. Made out of paper, stickers, and glitter, we'll be making a wreath of hearts. Open to ages five to nine, but children ages 12 and younger must be accompanied by a parent or caregiver. Next Saturday, February 15th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, will be our family movie night. This month, we'll be showing Wild Robot. So come on out for a raffle, fresh popcorn, and a good family tie. Finally, Saturday, March 15th, from 2:00 to 3:00 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Junior Library will be a program, program, sorry, I'm talking too fast, tackling chronic illness. Join former U of M football player Mark Ramirez to learn how to beat type 2 diabetes through a plant-based diet. Learn tricks and what to shop for and how to prepare food while transitioning to a plant-based lifestyle. A couple of the things I wanted to mention as well. As part of the library's outreach efforts, library's been doing some library tech time every other Tuesday at Burwen, every Thursday at Eaton from 12:00 to 1:30 PM. So come on out if you're having any questions and need some training. Thanks to our staff member Sean Gibson and David Cooper for helping facilitate this. As a partnership with Wayne County, we offer Narcan at both libraries. Our fire, our fire department recommends getting one of these in your home because like a fire extinguisher, no one knows when it could be needed. They are very safe and may save a life. So come on, pick one up. On another note, we also offer some emergency hygiene kits and supplies at both buildings for those in need. And per suggestion from council at the budget meeting a while ago, and Roger, we've had these for some time, but we added vending machines at both libraries for light snacks. These have been well received, well by patrons, and certainly kids alike. And lastly, both libraries will be closed for President's Day for a staff and service day. That same week at JFK, we will be closed for carpet installation. So residents that normally use JFK, please make plans accordingly. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Mr. McCaffrey, I got a quick question for you. And it's a little off, I'm sorry. Do we have like an update of how many residents or people, not even residents, but just individuals that we're seeing at the library at both locations? I've always wondered, and I didn't know if you ever tracked that or there was a way of tracking it, maybe like.
Oh, yes, libraries track, are very data centric. So there was about 170,000 this past year checkouts. Our, our computer use is around 30,000 to 35,000 logins per year. Per capita, we're probably one of the highest in the state. So our residents use computers quite a bit. Our program numbers are are way, way up with some of the deliveries we've been doing. The houses, we're going and dropping stuff off to those, to residents there. I haven't tabulated that completely. We're still rolling some numbers in, but it's gonna be probably over around 10,000 at least, so.
I know you guys, Counselor Chair, I know you guys rent rooms too. I know you guys rent the rooms in the library too.
Yeah, we more, we more are, we more allow community groups to use our rooms and our spaces. We don't rent them. We just let people use them. Unless it's a, unless it's a business that's not local, that's the only people I.
So they use them for free or?
Yeah, they use them for free.
We, we use them. The Washington Store Commission every month.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's for any community group or any group that wants to meet and talk. And we get quite a bit of use up.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Treasurer.
It's okay. It's good for me to stand for a bit. So real quick, just to let you all know, I'm speaking as treasurer. So this whole thing with the backup to the payroll began, my first request was back in January of 2023. So it's been lots of time. And you, this honorable body, adopted the resolution two weeks ago. So again, we're two weeks past that. And I think there's plenty of time because we know that everybody else, you talked about school districts and the state, the Senate is able to do that, you know, with the technology and through Paycom or Paylosty, whoever you use, right? It's relatively simple. But I wanted to build on that. First of all, Councilman Sob and Councilman Winsell, thank you for addressing this, this piece. I'm still seeking clarification on some direction. And I want to know if there's a legal opinion received that has been received, you know, filed by the council and formally through the correct procedure, gone through our madam clerk who numbers legal opinions. Regarding the additional positions, we've heard of a couple of different positions that you have honestly said, we didn't approve it, it's not in the budget. Am I paying those? Because I have to prove the payroll with that. And I do not know your direction or where we are. Again, I'm looking for a legal opinion on that, seeking clarification. But I also have, and again, this is not about a person, folks. This is about the position with the procedure is, okay? We have a position that per the city charter says requires concurrence by this honorable body. And I don't believe you've done that either. So again, I'm seeking that clarification. If we have to have a special meeting to address this, we need to be doing this and getting it done. So I'm very concerned about that because I need that clarification. I need that direction so I can execute my job correctly. Okay? The last thing I want to leave you with is one thing, a saying, or you've heard it before, truth to power. Have you heard that before? Truth to power? I'm gonna say this is your label tonight. It's to speak out against injustice or wrongdoing by directly confronting people in positions of authority.
Counselor Chair.
And I thank you.
Absolutely. Madam Treasurer, I know earlier in the evening, you mentioned something about the cash flow and about.
I have an answer for the cash flow. I really do. Because what's happening is that, and this is, the city's done this forever. They they pay for everything out of general fund. Okay? And then what happens is, well, library owes money and major and local streets owe money and water owes money and all these other accounts that are restricted, by the way, they owe the general fund money now. They gotta pay it back. The problem is, we actually haven't done that except for water, which was urgent emergency a week ago, hasn't been done since August. So therefore, if we actually did direct pay from those accounts versus doing it out of general fund and doing it in a fund later, Act 345 alone for healthcare, you got $2.5 million that's owed to the general fund. Why are we not doing direct pay? We could avoid this whole cash flow crunch. Because quite frankly, I'm looking at these numbers and I'm extremely nervous about it. I have to sit on checks. Okay, I said I'm paying payroll. Payroll's priority, getting our staff paid. But I got checks. I can't do it all because it's not enough money to do it. And I'm being real, and I've been talking about this probably for, I don't even know how many years.
I'm sorry, say that again, so pay direct like.
Direct pay. So for example, um, again, Act 345 healthcare. And I know they're gonna say, well, you know, we, we get a better discount when it's a bulk kinda thing, you know, it's like that when you bulk purchase stuff. But thing is, you could actually cut their percent, what they pay for healthcare, for Act 345, Police and Fire, that you could pay it directly from that account versus paying it in general, out of general fund, because you have to pay it back. It has to get paid back to general fund. That's a lot of money, folks. It's a lot of inter funds. And the fact that we cannot get to where we even have, I mean, I thought, well, maybe we could do a regular pattern of quarterly or something, and that hasn't happened either. I've been asking, but it hasn't. I'm not putting anybody.
So the way you do it now, you move it from like 345 to gen, to a general fund.
Because general fund paid for the healthcare for them. Yeah. And so it owes them the money, it owes the general fund money. Same thing with, I mean, we've got things like, you know, um, some salaries or whatever expenditures that all get paid out of general fund first. There was one time, there was a, a federal forfeiture check. And I said, why, or expense invoice, I said, why are we paying it out of general fund? Well, I was told that's what we were told to do. Well, why? We have an account for that, why don't you direct pay it? Because now, that account owes the general fund for that money, why would you do that? It creates to me extra steps as well. And it does contribute, or is it major tributary, to the cash flow issue. So now I'm sitting here coming to all of you and saying, hey, we're, we're kinda short, we're short.
Council chair.
And it should be avoided.
Is that something the controller needs to do or?
I, you know, I don't wanna speak for anybody, but I think, um, it, it goes through accounts payable, that's all I'm gonna, I'll say that. And, you know, those accounts are set up to do that. So I mean, there is some, like, work we have to lay out.
Once you move the money to the general funds, the controller does the payment out, correct?
That is correct. So instead of taking it out of general fund checking account, take it out of the direct accounts, it's just called direct pay.
Madam clerk, what were you saying?
I was, you know, I worked in the treasurer's office for, it's been a while, and I know things have changed. Um, but I know we did it once a month. We would get the information from the comptroller's office on how to do the inter funds and what to transfer from the water department to general fund, what to transfer from TIFA, if you wrote checks out of there. And I know things have changed, but it used to be more on a monthly basis.
She's talking about something different now, she's talking about direct pay.
It's the same thing, because the inter funds aren't being done. I think what she's trying to say is that it, take it directly out of the account instead of taking it out of general fund.
So they're wait, yes, and so they're waiting for most of them. There was a water inter fund done last week of, uh, 2.5 million, only because I couldn't pay bills. And that had to be done.
Okay, well, we're gonna have to figure something out. Thank you so much, Madam Treasurer.
Anybody else?
That's not public comment yet.
Guys, guys, I'm down. I need, I know you're tired and you're frustrated, just gotta, we gotta calm down for a second. Smile, thank you. Anyone else from administration?
Vince already talked.
Thank you. Now we're gonna move it over to public comments, we're gonna start off on Zoom first. You got three minutes, state your name, the city residing and the street that you live on.
Call the governor.
Call the governor, please speak. Vince.
Call the governor. Stop with this crap.
Thank you.
That's all I got to say. Goodnight, ladies and gentlemen.
Goodnight. I thought I saw later on my wife freeze her hand.
That was a mistake. She's like, get home now.
Yeah, she's like, oh, you better not go, you would, Councilman Ahmad.
He already had eaten here.
Um, anyone else on Zoom, seeing none, anyone on the audience? All right, I see Phil scratching his head.
I was gonna say something.
You're a veteran, we're here for you.
Been here all night. Didn't even fall asleep.
State your name, the city residing and the street that you live on.
Not gonna go over everything, we all know how we feel about the administration. However, my life is boring. Saturday, Friday nights, I frequently listen to the police radio. I'm sure the police department can get you a report much better than the comptroller regarding payroll. And you can find out how many calls they get for cars blocking driveways. And I would like to see if those, at least two calls on night, on Friday and Saturdays for that are related to Airbnbs.
Thank you.
Changed my mind.
Okay, go for it, Phil.
First of all, let me thank, Phil Smith, Cornell Street. Dearborn Heights. Dearborn Heights. Thank you for the Veterans Committee. The other thing I was, I go to a state meeting with the commanders group, it's all the state commanders and, uh, veterans organizations. They just announced a few things. Number one, how many veterans do you think die a day with suicide?
20.
It went from 22 a day, and that's just not veterans, to 40. You can't stop it. I mean, you can, if you get help. And also, the population is doing the same thing. Right now, if you look at the economy, what's going on, they'll give up. The other thing is, um, next year, 2026, they have a, they have a Medal of Honor Society. It will be in Detroit. And they'll be all veteran, whatever's left, there's 61 left living. Uh, will be roaming around the state of Michigan in different locations. So if you want them to come there, just, I got the information, I get them, get you, get it to you.
Did you say from World War II?
I'm sorry?
Are you gonna bring them to a council meeting?
I didn't understand you.
Are you, are you gonna bring them to the council meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
What war was that from?
I'll try to get one down here, but yeah. If it's, if they're here and that, it's supposed to be like a week or something, or two, they're gonna be here. Yes.
What war was that, you said, the veterans from where?
The Medal of Honor Society, nationwide, there's only 61 left.
You're one of them.
That, no, I'm not one of them, no. Um, there used to be a lot more, but they've all passed on, World War II, Korea and so forth.
So, I'm sorry, so can you explain how do they get that Medal of Honor?
The president.
The president gives it on over and beyond what you're supposed to do. There's two from Korea, both have passed already, jumped on a hand grenade to save the other, their friends' lives, okay? They survived. I don't know how, but they did. But they do over and beyond and they protect their own military personnel in a combat zone.
Wow, fantastic.
Thank you very much.
God bless them.
Thank you so much and thank you for your services, Mr. Smith. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Uh, Sam Saka, Dearborn Heights Plainfield. Um, I first wanna thank everybody here. I know it's late, I'm gonna make this quick. Um, I'm not gonna get into the details of, uh, what, you know, we witnessed today and about Farhand, the administration, what's going on in the city. But I, I do wanna piggyback on that, uh, whole, uh, Airbnb issue.
Short rentals.
What's that?
Short rentals.
So I'm an advocate of property rights, you know, I'm, I'm the president of the Dearborn Area Board of Realtors as well. And I would be careful, I don't feel that government should dictate what a homeowner, um, can or cannot do as far as property rentals. Um, but there are ways where this can be solved. And I've seen it by speaking to a lot of people through the National Association of Realtors, Michigan Association of Realtors, um, where you can have an option of associations, where if people, if neighborhoods wanna create associations and create bylaws to, through membership, and they could go ahead and legislate that on their own, and they could police it on their own. So there, where you, the, uh, the, the body here don't have to deal with that, okay? Or, I mean, another option, if it's something you wanna take on, you could say, okay, there is a minimum stay and you, you regulate it to a minimum stay, plus, you know, like you can regulate, say, noise can't, you, you gotta end noise by eight o'clock, nine o'clock, however you wanna do it. But I think that's, that's, and you know, how I would, that's just my opinion on how you should or probably take that approach, because it, I think it'll be a violation of property rights to say, hey, no, you can't have that at all.
Thank you. Okay? We'll leave that to our special legal counsel to figure it out for us, Mr. Saka. Thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience? See, anyone else in the audience?
Yes.
Yes, guys, guys.
I did a lot of work on my poster, I gotta show it again.
Yeah, let's see that. Gary, you're gonna hold it up again.
That's all right. You don't, you don't have to. I'm Renee and I live on Annapolis in Dearborn Heights. All right, so back to the poster. So I'm gonna tell you, so I've been praying for the city, all right? Ah, thank you. All right. Cause, so I just wanna point out a couple of things.
This way, councilman, this way.
Yeah, they, they gotta see it too. I just wanna point out a couple of things. I have the citizen at the top and the citizen at the bottom. The citizen is responsible for closing the circle on all business of city to find out where their complaints went and how far they went and where they ended up. Uh, right now, today, I am so happy, because my prayers are being answered, because this here is considered a dredger. This is the, this is the swamp where all the, all those things go that don't, that get passed and then they don't, they don't come to fruition. And so this dredger here, this is the, this is also the citizen, but I'm, I'm like, you know, I'm providing the equipment here. So the dredger, the job of the dredger is to dredge up all the junk that's down there and bring it to the surface, so that now the citizen can address it, bring it back up here and go around. So anyway, I'm good, I'm good with this now. So this is called the City of Dearborn Heights Accountability Chart. And, um, if anybody wants, wants to take a picture or they can. However, I just wanna say, this meeting went exactly according to how it was supposed to go, because I was praying that the, that the citizens would, would actually stand up and rise up and make their voices heard, that they would finally take accountability for themselves, you know, with the city and, and support you guys and do whatever they have to do, you know? And a lot of things came out. When people talk and you allow them to just ramble on and ramble on and ramble on, they locate themselves. And it tells you, like me rambling now, it tells you where their passions are or where they're off base, you know? I appreciated all the legal counsel from, from Mr. Roger over there. I appreciate listening to all your stuff, because I like listening to, what's the rule?[1689.61]